Mr. Jones, would you lead us in a prayer?
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we're so grateful for the opportunity that we have to be part of an amazing community. We thank you, Lord, for our mayor and our city council and the privilege we have to be able to join together as a city and community to make this a better place for all families. I pray today your blessings upon this evening, upon all the decisions that are made. I pray, God, that we'll work together in unity. Thank you for your blessings. We ask it all in the name of Jesus Christ and His sake. Amen.
Tina, would you lead us?
Do we get the sound?
Zoom. We've got to zoom in for the first portion. See if my new...
You think so? Yeah.
Okay. We have a very, very large agenda for tonight. We have four public hearings. First public hearing and proposed ordinance is to approve the annexation and assignment of zoning to a portion of Old Wire Road. Tom?
All right. Yes, we have a request for a voluntary annexation into the city limits of Ralla. Been waiting on this for quite a while. So this is a property over off of Old St. James Road, which is outer road to I-44, kind of the west side of town. So it's kind of near Old St. James and Sally Road. The property, right at the corner of Old St. James and Sally Road, about a little over a year ago, was actually annexed into the city. The anticipation at that time for that property was for a hotel development. Obviously, that hasn't quite happened yet. But the remainder of the property now is being requested to be annexed into the city. This is in preparation for a proposed Veterans Administration clinic. Might have heard about that. They've been looking for a piece of property here in the Ralla area for more than a year and finally decided on this piece of property. So the request is to, it's right adjacent to the city limits line. The city limits is this green, there's my mouse, kind of green line along I-44. And then this property here is in the city limits and then goes along Sally Road. So this is green line you see. And so it's adjacent to the city limits. Property used to be a manufactured home sales lot. I don't believe they've been using it for anything for the last couple of years. So the zoning, as part of this annexation ordinance, is also a request to zone the property. The requested zoning is the C-2 general commercial zoning district. So as you can see, kind of a long old wire road and I-44, all the properties that front on that are already zoned C-2 general commercial. And so the request is to zone this property to that also. This is a street view from the corner of Sally Road and Old Wire Road, kind of looking toward the westish. As I said, the property right at the corner, so in the foreground of this picture, is already in the city limits, not part of this property, but a little bit kind of back behind and wrapping around it into the, sorry, my mouse, back kind of behind and wrapping around and coming again over to Sally Road is the property in question. As I said, it used to be a manufactured home sales. And the only other thing to see on the property is there is some good amount of slope from the I-44 side down to the, there's a creek at the bottom of the hill there. This is a survey showing the boundary of the property. I just put that in there just so you can see exactly what the boundary lines look like. On the area map, I kind of simplified it just a little bit, so I just wanted to show you exactly what it looks like. Basically, they're wanting to follow the sewer line on the north side of the property up in here. And the remainder of the property, they're proposing to sell to this adjacent property that would remain outside the city limits. So there is something that came up just recently. Normally, it isn't an issue really, but there is something in the Missouri state statutes that basically requires that fire protection districts be reimbursed for any lost tax levy due to annexations. And so, like I said, usually we have very small properties being annexed, so it doesn't really factor. This is a bigger property. And so what the statute says is basically for five years, it's kind of a little bit of an amortization to allow them to not see a sudden drop in revenues. So for the, basically for the first year, they would be reimbursed for 100% of what they would have gotten otherwise, and then it starts dropping down by 20% each year until it goes back to zero. This property happens to be in the Ralla Rural Fire Protection District and reached out to the fire district, and they are requesting to be reimbursed for this. The levy each year is about $560, and so for these five years, that would total about So I'm bringing this up because we'll need, we'll want some direction from you all as to what to do with that. The... Using my computer on me for at least a second to see if I can... All right, come on. All right, come on. Let me do it again. All right. There we go. So just to summarize, this is a voluntary annexation. The owner of the property is requesting that the city annex it. It's not, you may have heard of involuntary annexation. That's where the city goes in and annexes property in the cities. This is a voluntary one. The utilities in this area do have capacity for this proposed development of the property. There will be a need to extend some water lines for this to happen. That'll be the developer's cost. The comprehensive plan designates this area as being appropriate for mixed commercial uses. And the Ralla West master plan, which is an element of the comprehensive plan, designates it being appropriate for lifestyle center. What those tend to mean is, if you read the text, it's basically kind of a mixture of uses. It'd be kind of more regional in focus and scope. And certainly, a clinic that serves a regional area would kind of fall into that. Although lifestyle center, they're usually also aiming for things like restaurants and things like that also. This is within the urban growth area of the city. What that means is that it's properties that, when they did the comprehensive plan, that's areas that the city should be able to serve if it was to come into the city. So like, that's where utilities and would be within a reasonable area for existing fire and police and things like that. It is adjacent to city limits. That's important because state statutes require it to be adjacent to city limits if you're going to annex the property. And it is located on I-44, which has a mixture of commercial uses along I-44, and it is adjacent to properties that are zoned C-2 general commercial, which is, again, is the requested zoning district. The Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at this, and they did recommend approval of it with a vote of six to zero. Do you have any questions for me?
Hey, Tom, on the tax that you mentioned, Missouri statute, so who normally is liable for that $1,685? It's not a huge amount, but just...
Yeah. So what it says is that the city will reimburse the fire district. So that's kind of the conversation is, should the city do that, or should we turn around and ask for it to be reimbursed by this property owner through some mechanism?
Yeah, and we shared this with the developer through their representation, and they've taken an advisement, and I think maybe in the open session comment, public hearing, they can offer their comments on it. But I think we can address this easily.
There's nothing about it as a deal breaker. I just didn't know how it normally works.
And Tom, can you tell me again, too, how long will that be? How long will that levy?
It's a five-year scale.
Okay. Thank you.
Tom, just to clarify, this information became known after the planned zoning hearing? Is that correct about the tax levy? Because that wasn't presented to me.
I think it was about that day, to be honest.
In that range, but even if I'd known before, I wouldn't have presented it to the Planning and Zoning Commission because this is more of a city council-type question.
Okay. Well, I only mention because of the six to zero approval. I'm just saying that that wasn't a part of it, not that that necessarily would make a difference to them.
Okay, we'll come back to Tom. Like to officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone owning property within 185 feet that would like to speak in favor of approving the annexation and assignment of zoning to 13063 Old Wire Road?
The owners couldn't speak at this point.
They could. I assume they heard me.
I don't own the property, but I'll speak.
It does. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm J.K. Robinson. I'm here representing the developer, Specialized Engineering Solutions. This is a private development that is going to be leased to the federal government. It is a 20-year lease. It is a 75,000 square foot facility that is going to service our veterans. It will bring business into the community in a lot of different ways. It was pursuant to competitive bidding. There were several sites within the city of Ralla that were in the vey for this particular project. It is fully funded by the federal government, so we don't have to worry about it not being funded. Expected completion date is somewhere around mid-2027. That's when they expect occupancy. Could be a little later in that year, but 2027 is the target date. With respect to the issue about the rural fire department, I've spoken with the developer, and the developer has indicated that they are willing to make a lump sum contribution to the city to pass that expense along. So that would not be an additional expense to the city. Would be roughly $1,600 in any event. So if someone, I think, said it shouldn't be a deal killer on a project this size. But nonetheless, the developer is here, Matt Conley, representative of the developer, and he is willing to answer any other questions that you may have regarding the project, assuming there aren't any people here to speak in opposition or in favor of it that are residents within the area required.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other speakers within 185 feet that would like to speak for? Is there anyone owning property within 185 feet that would like to speak against the annexation and assignment of zoning? Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak for the proposed annexation and zoning? And finally, is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak against the proposed annexation and zoning? Not will close the public hearing. Any council discussion or questions?
No questions. Just pleased to see this coming to Ralla as someone who has to travel up and down 63 corridor to make it to the VA clinic in Columbia. It means a lot to have this in our community and to have the support of veterans, so looking forward to seeing this. Hopefully, this will go through, and we'll see a clinic in our community pursue.
I have one question for Mr. Robinson. The services, if you know, what services would be left in St. James, if any?
I am not sure, but I think probably housing will still be available, and there should be self-clinic services provided there.
I don't want to speak for VA, but I believe St. James will still have their clinic with the same services they have.
All right. Just checking. Thank you.
There's no other council questions? First reading, please.
An ordinance to approve the annexation of a portion of 13063 Old Wire Outer Road into the corporate limits of the city of Ralla and assigning zoning of said property as C-2 general commercial district.
Mayor, I suggested for the next meeting, for final reading, we'll talk with the developers before that, but we may add that language about the fire district fee in this ordinance. It'd be a good record to have this down the road if this issue surfaces again.
Next item is a public hearing and ordinance to approve the vacation of alleys in Cowans Addition.
All right. Got this split up into two reports and whatnot, but I have it in the same PowerPoint, so just to make you aware, I did advertise it at the same time with the same number and the same newspaper ad, and then presented it as one case at the Planning and Zoning Commission because both these locations are in the same subdivision. But however, the Planning and Zoning Commission, they ended up making a split decision on it. So they voted on one and then voted on the other one separately and had different recommendations on them. So I've split up the reports for you all in your packets and presenting them separately, so you'll completely vote on these things separately. So the first one, I believe, in the packet is the one on the north side. And so this is the one, it's kind of located north of Black Street, between Black and the railroad right of way, and then between Walker and Spillman Avenue. This is a, it's a platted alleyway, but it's not built. There's no road going through there, but there are some utilities going through this alley. I have spoken with one, at least, property owner in the area who has plans of developing her property and had talked about, you know, how the alley, if it were vacated, would add some more property to their, at least reduce the setbacks, anyway, for the development and things like that. But anyway, so this is a street view looking kind of the north from Black Street. As I said, it's kind of grown up, and there's no actual roadway going through this alleyway. This is a excerpt from the plat for when this was platted, so I've circled the area that we're talking about in the plat. It's just one of the alleys of many in this old plat. So just to summarize, there are some communications and sewer line in the part of this alley, and the easement will be retained for this alleyway. We didn't receive any objections from the utility providers, especially since easement will be retained, so nothing really changes for them. And just in general, these preemptive vacations are intended to save time and effort for the properties in the area, so people don't have to come in separately and don't have to come in when it's an emergency to get these things done. Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at this one, and they recommended approval of this one with a vote of six to zero. Do you have any questions for me?
Yeah, that's number C, I'm pretty sure, isn't it?
Yeah. I think we're out of, would you go back to the red?
We did C first.
All right. I'll just go ahead and talk about the other one then now and try to remember what I said on the first.
That's the one we have on our packet on B, Highway 72, one.
All right. I thought this would make it less confusing, but we're not. All right, so the other one is...
Yeah, why don't you just, why don't we stay with it?
Okay.
Why don't we have the public hearing on C?
Okay.
Okay, like to officially open the public hearing. Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of the proposed vacation of alleys in Cowans would like to speak for? Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of these proposed vacation that would like to speak against? Is there anyone that owns property outside of 185 feet that would like to speak for the vacation? And finally, is there anyone that owns property outside of 185 feet that would like to speak against the vacation? If not, public hearing is closed. Council questions or comments?
I just want to clarify that we're discussing for the record for Lori for one C1 because there was dispute over that. So I just want to make sure that, as we go forward with the motion, that we understand which one that we are making a motion on.
Anything? Would you have the first reading?
Yes, sir. An ordinance approving the vacation of an alley in Cowans Addition to the city of Ralla, generally bounded by Black Street, Spillman Avenue, Walker Avenue, and the railroad right of way.
The next item is a public hearing ordinance to approve the vacation of alleys bounded by 72 and Spillman.
All right. So this one is the, the other one, this is on the south side of Highway 72, is kind of bounded by Strobock 72, Spillman and Walker. It's the north, 220 or so feet of this alleyway is what we're asking for about. So this is the street view of looking on Highway 72. It's the alleys over here, kind of going to the, basically to the south. So this is, the street view is kind of looking toward the west. Of note, notice that as we go from Highway 72 to this alley, there's a bit of a downhill section and a bit of some gravel right in here. And then it's right, notice on Highway 72, there's a curve and a hill. So this alleyway, part of the reason why this is requested to be vacated, even though there is an alleyway there that is used, is because Highway 72 has been installed. Since there, it didn't use to be there, there used to be just a residential street there. And now that Highway 72 is here, this exit onto this major road, it doesn't meet site distance requirements for, say, if somebody was to put in a driveway on here for a commercial or a street or something like that. Doesn't meet the site distance needed for that, so it's really not a very safe place to have an access point onto Highway 72. And then back on the area map, this particular, notice on this, the property is adjacent to this area, requested to be vacated. It's undeveloped pieces of property and commercial pieces of property. Seem like this could be an opportunity for, to increase the economic development possibilities for these properties if this alley wasn't there and wasn't a factor. So that if it came to be that somebody were to buy both properties, they are currently under separate ownership, but if they were to be bought by the same property owner, then the alley would be not in the way. So that opens up possibilities there. And for that reason, it's also, this one is not proposed to have a utility easement put in place. Normally, when we've been vacating, these rights of ways have been replacing with utility easements, just so utilities aren't really a question. However, I've gone through and verified that there are no utilities inside this alleyway. And again, if there's no easement in this area, then that should also keep that area unencumbered so that, to improve the economic development possibilities. The south half of the alley is proposed to remain because there are some houses and business that do utilize the alley and they would like to get to remain. So this is that same plat, and then I've circled the area of that plat where this alley is located. Notice the, where the north end of that, it says it's Bland Streets. That was what it was named at that time, then it became Ridgeview Road, and then now it's Highway 72. So just to summarize, there are no utilities located in this south alley, has been verified, so no utility is meant to be proposed to be retained in this case. Didn't receive any objections from any utility providers. And again, these preemptive vacations are intended to save time and effort. The Planning and Zoning Commission took a look at this, and they, by a vote of six to zero, did not recommend, or recommended that the city council not vacate this alleyway. There were a few property owners who came to the planning and zoning meeting. Most importantly, there was the owner of that business. It's a car repair type business. They said that sometimes wreckers, when they're leaving the properties, like to leave out that alleyway. Let me go back to the area map. Because Spillman Avenue here, there's a barrier on Highway 72, so you cannot make a left on Spillman. And so people...
Where's the business on that map?
This one. Oh, sorry. This one over here. Spillman Avenue here, there's a barrier right here, so you can't make a left right there. And so sometimes they like to come out and make the left here on Highway 72. They say, of course, you've got to temper this with, there's not a lot of traffic. So we're talking about, you know, a handful of vehicles per day or week. But they say that they have not heard of any accidents at that location. Of course, the city hasn't really heard of any accidents at that location either. That business, you know, it's a car repair place, so if somebody did get smacked right there, they would probably be brought right there. Then we also heard from the property owner on right here, this undeveloped piece of property is currently for sale, and their concern is this access point because the city would not, A, the city owns this property right here, this frontage, Highway 72, this property right here, this frontage on 72. So the city owns the property between their property and Highway 72. And in addition, with this curve and the site distance issues, the city would not allow for a driveway access on that portion of 72 highway. So their concern is if this alleyway is closed and vacated, then this potential access point would also go away. They would like to have this access point on Highway 72. So that property owner's request is that we not close and vacate this alleyway for that reason. Anyway, do you have any questions for me?
Not that it's relevant, but I'm just curious, when was that part of town plotted?
I, it was, I can't remember the exact date. It was like 1900, 1900-something.
I have a question for Darren if I could. Hey, Darren, when we built 72, I know right in that last, however, money, 100 feet, there was a concern about people coming out from these streets and certainly trying to go west. So with that particular area, is there anything in your vision that would suggest at some point we don't want access from that alley to 72, particularly going west?
Side distance there is very poor for that speed limit. And with that grade, site distance would probably need to be 330 feet pulling out of there, even to make a right-hand turn, and you'd probably get 200, 220.
So I think what you're saying is there's a concern on your part if that traffic on that alleyway picks up.
Correct. I mean, I think the only reason we're not seeing any wrecks there today is there's very, very few cars that use it.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
And the right idea of even right turn in, right turn out might be something to do as a possibility, depending on how it develops, but even that, I think we've got some reservations on it. We'll know better if there's a development proposal that comes forward at some point in the future.
I mean, when you look at Spillman, Spillman's got right at, you know, the 330 feet of site distance for making a right turn out of there. This alleyway does not.
Okay, so keeping it open for now would suggest that you have the ability to address it at a later date.
The council would have to address it at a later date, yes.
Okay, I got it. Any questions for Darren or Tom? If not, I'd like to open a public hearing. Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet of this area that would like to speak for the vacation? Is there anyone that owns property within 185 feet that would like to speak against the vacation? Is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak for the vacation? And finally, is there anyone that owns property outside of the 185 feet that would like to speak against the vacation? Not will close the public hearing. Questions by council? First reading, please.
An ordinance approving the vacation of an alley in Cowans subdivision, sorry, Cowans Addition to the city of Ralla, generally bounded by Highway 72, Spillman Avenue, Walker Avenue, and Strobock Street.
Last item on the public hearings is a public hearing and ordinance to approve text amendments to Chapter 42, parking.
So a few months ago, we had a zoning case that came up, had us looking at our zoning ordinance in Chapter 42 on parking. When we looked at it closely, we realized that the verbiage of it said that you can only park a vehicle in the front yard on a paved surface. So in other words, if you have a paved surface in your side yard or your backyard, the ordinance as it reads right now would not allow you to park any vehicles there. So we took it to P&amp;Z for just a discussion item to see how they wanted to move forward with it, what kind of verbiage they wanted to make in the text amendment. This is the current text, and I won't read it verbatim, but it's just what I explained. So then we...
Can you go back?
Oh, yep.
Let's make sure we digest that.
Okay.
Right now, it says if you have a vehicle or trailer...
It says may only be parked or stored on an approved surface in a front yard.
And what is an approved surface in somebody's front yard?
A hard concrete cinder block, any kind of hard surface, dust-free surface.
Okay.
So after our lengthy discussion with P&amp;Z, we went back to the drawing board, and we kind of made some changes. So we did clarify what that pavement shall mean, durable, dust-free, and hard materials such as asphalt, concrete, or paving blocks. We did clarify also to apply...
So a few months ago, we had a zoning case that came up, had us looking at our zoning ordinance in Chapter 42 on parking. When we looked at it closely, we realized that the verbiage of it said that you can only park a vehicle in the front yard on a paved surface. So in other words, if you have a paved surface in your side yard or your backyard, the ordinance, as it reads right now, would not allow you to park any vehicles there. So we took it to P&amp;Z for just a discussion item to see how they wanted to move forward with it, what, what kind of verbiage they wanted to make in the text amendment. This is, this is the current text, and I won't read it verbatim, but it's just what I explained. So then we-
Can you go back?
Oh, yep.
Let's make sure we digest that.
Okay.
Right now, it says if you have a vehicle or trailer-
It says may only be parked or stored on an approved surface in a front yard.
And what is an approved surface in somebody's front yard?
A hard concrete cinder block, any, any kind of hard surface, dust-free surface. So after our lengthy discussion with P&amp;Z, we, we went back to the drawing board and we kind of made some changes. So we did clarify what that pavement, pavement shall mean durable, dust-free, and hard material such as asphalt, concrete, or paving blocks. We did clarify also to apply to one and two family residential uses because commercial and apartment uses already have parking requirements. P&amp;Z did suggest that they, they did want an exception to that. So small utility trailers, you know, that you could kind of push by hand, no, so we did no larger than 12 feet excluding the tongue that are not visible from public view could be parked grass or whatever in the backyard where you can't see it from the street. But if you do that, it can't create a nuisance like overgrown weeds, dust, or harbages of, you know, vermin. And so then we changed the location, so it's now permitted in all yards.
Beth?
And we clarified what a yard means.
I should be on it any minute.
So property lines in the front, space between buildings and-
Can you help me if the kids or somebody comes on up here? I need to have it quiet.
All right. So do we.
We do too. So, so we clarified what yard means. It means open space between buildings and property lines in the front, rear, and sides of the property. But that means it has to be paved if you're going to park there. Then we also put an, oh, sorry. Put an exception that this does not prohibit temporary parking of commercial vehicles for construction, pickup, delivery vehicles, and emergency vehicles.
Don, why did you remove the word "all" in the first sentence?
Just to make it cleaner.
Just to make it cleaner.
Is it frozen?
Is it frozen?
Sorry, we're having technical difficulties. Is the whole thing frozen? Okay, so while we were there discussing some other, another item that has come up is folks that are living in RVs on, on other people's properties. And so we decided, there, there is the option to enforce that through the Property Maintenance Code, but we decided to also clarify it in Chapter 42. So RVs cannot be used for living quarters. Temporary usage may be permitted for up to 14 days at a time to allow for guest visits. No commercial use, such as rental of RVs is allowed, or parking space rental is allowed, and no permanent connection to utilities is permitted. And then we added access to parking or storage area from the street is permitted via an approved driveway or curb cut. Continued access from unapproved points is a zoning violation if such access may cause damage to curbs, sidewalks, turf within the right-of-way, or turf within the open yard. So in other words, you know, if you have a pad in your side yard for a boat, you don't necessarily have to have it paved all the way to that pad, but you can't create any kind of nuisance in, in pulling it back there.
Well, I thought. But so much for thinking.
And then, this was already in there, continued parking or storage of vehicles on grass, dirt, or other unapproved surfaces is a zoning violation.
Yeah, the speakers that are on standby on Zoom, if you could hear this, can you mute
Okay, so in summary, the proposed text amendment is needed to better ensure the ability to enforce the city ordinances, and it does make changes to the requirements for parking in one and two family residential areas. It did move forward from P&amp;Z with a six to zero approval. Sorry for all the technical difficulties.
No, your fault, that's your fault.
Does anybody have any questions?
I do. Under Section B, where it says location, parking or storage of vehicles and trailers is permitted in all yards. So-
Front, side, rear, any yard as long as it's on a paved surface. So subsection later talks about what that means as far as paving goes. Let me look it up.
I guess my question is, does it, does it need to be on pavement?
Yes. So pavement shall mean durable, dust-free, and hard materials such as asphalt, concrete. So the Section A clarifies where everything can be parked, and then, but there is an exception that small utility trailers don't have to be parked on pavement. And so then the yard means they can be parked in any yard on the pavement.
Okay. And then, I just want to make sure that, you know, if someone were to park their trailer on a yard, that it's not going to be a continued parking or, you know, a violation where there are continued parking or storage of vehicles on grass, dirt, or other unapproved surface.
If it's over 12 feet, if it's larger than 12 foot, it has to be on an approved surface.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Last question is, the access to a parking or storage area from the street is permitted via an approved driveway or curb cut. Would a resident have to come to the city and ask them to cut out part of the curb if they wanted access to their yard?
Yes, they would have to get a right-of-way permit, if they didn't already have one.
Is that where you're thinking about it?
That's it.
Any other questions for Don? You have a question? You're supposed to just have answers.
Right.
I think actually is an answer. On Section C, the RV parking-
Yes.
So it says temporary usage may be permitted, I'm looking at the second sentence, up to 14 days at a time. Seems like it ought to say at a time within some given period, so that somebody doesn't go, well, I'm doing 14 days, and then they just do another 14 days.
We can, we can add that, yeah. That's a good point.
There's no other questions?
So, one other question. So, so one time about a year ago, there was somebody who came here from Utah somewhere, and he was talking about putting an RV parking. So where, where would that stand? And I'm not sure if he was in town or right outside. It seems like he was in town.
It's over by Blue Lake and it's being built.
Yeah, and so how will that be affected?
That won't affect us at all. So there is a section already in there about RV parks. I believe you can stay up to six months.
There's no other questions? Do we need some sort of official amendment, or can we do the first reading and do an amendment?
First reading amendment. First reading then amendment.
Amendment tonight?
No, amendment next time.
Okay, first reading then.
An ordinance, excuse me, an ordinance amending Chapter-
Oh, wait, whoa, 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 did I have the public hearing?
Oh, no.
No, I didn't. Hold on. Is there anyone that would like to speak for the proposed, not for or against the proposed Public hearing is closed. First reading, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 42, planning and zoning, Article III, general provisions, Section 42-313, general requirements pertaining to parking.
Thank you. Moving on to acknowledgements and special presentations, we have a few. At the second November council meeting, we had several presentations for and against the fluoridation of water. Council has asked for some more information via presentations, which we have tonight. Want to keep this, you know, fair and balanced, so to speak. So each of the speakers, you have up to 15 minutes to provide the information. No sharing of minutes, and council is free to ask questions after each and every speaker. We're going to change the order a little bit to put a little more balance in there. So the first speaker will be Stuart Cooper, second speaker, Dr. Lentz, third speaker, Dr. Osmanson, and fourth speaker, Gwen Solentrop. So with that, councilperson Johnson, you invited a couple of the speakers. Would you like to introduce them?
Okay, yeah. So Stuart Cooper, Stuart Cooper brings extensive knowledge and expertise and advocacy and legislative work. He's collaborated with medical experts, researchers, scientists, and local organizations worldwide when it comes to the fluoride discussions.
Hold on, did you do both of them? Do both.
You want me to do both?
Yeah, because I'm going to have the other ones, I'm going to have the other ones introduced as, at the same time.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, and so then we have Dr. Bill Osmanson. Dr. Bill Osmanson is a dentist with over 40 years of experience in general, family, cosmetic, and neuromuscular care. He is, he is also an accomplished author, researcher, and teacher. Early in his career, he supported water fluoridation. However, after thoroughly reviewing the research, he came to understand the significant harm fluoride can cause to teeth, bones, brains, thyroid, and more.
Who is Joshua Martin that signed on?
So he is with Forward Slash.
Okay, he's driving the train.
Well, I don't know if he's driving or not.
Okay, that's fine. Dr. Morcamp, would you introduce the other two speakers?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I'd like to acknowledge my fellow colleagues who have come again to support this initiative. Our first speaker is Elizabeth Lentz, Dr. Elizabeth Lentz. She is a DDS, a Master of Health, and another degree, I don't know exactly what that is. I'm sorry, Liz. She is, has had an illustrious career. She graduated with honors, summa cum laude, from Emory University in Oral Pathology Residency, a master's in health administration. She's worked with several government agencies, mostly in Georgia, for the last 25 years. She's an assistant professor of dentistry at University of West Virginia, Emory, and University of Florida. She has been a public health dentist in Georgia, as well as done some volunteer work in Haiti to create a clinic down here. She is our American Dental Association's subject matter expert on community water fluoridation. American Dental Association, we call ourselves the America's leading healthcare advocate. It's not a trade association. The elephant in the room is that if it was a trade association, we went fluoride out yesterday because we could sell a lot of fillings to people because we know decay increases when fluoride is not in the water. Our second speaker will be Gwen Solentrop, who's here in person. For the last 10 years, she's worked for our Missouri Department of Public Health. She's a program specialist. She is certified in water treatment operating and also distribution of water certification. Her devout title, her title is promote oral health, improve access to care, and reduce dental disease for all Missourians. She's been the recipient of more than one award. I'll just give you one. The Missouri Coalition for Oral Health, Oral Health Champion Award in 2021 and 2024. I'll let you get started with Dr. Lentz. Now, she said she was not invited yet by text. I don't know, Liz, Dr. Lentz?
Yeah, she's on.
She's there now, okay, good.
So the first speaker is Stuart Cooper.
Thank you. So let me share my slides.
Hold on, hold on, no, 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 that's not the one.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Stuart Cooper.
Oh, okay, Dr. Cooper's going first.
I think you mean Dr. Bill Osmanson.
Stuart Cooper from Fair Park. Stuart Cooper, would you like to speak?
Yeah, hello, can you hear me? Yep, I'm trying to speak, I'm on muted.
We can hear a lot of echo.
If somebody's not speaking, they should mute themselves.
There you go, that ought to take care of the echo right there. Everybody else is muted now.
Okay. Yeah, it was my understanding that Dr. Bill Osmanson, who has the PowerPoint presentation, was going to present first.
Yeah, he has the actual presentation.
Okay, go ahead, switch it. Dr. Osmanson?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, let's see if I can figure out how to share my screen with you. It should be on there. Can you see it?
Very small.
Can you see my screen now? Okay, and, no, I'm, it says it's sharing my screen on this end. Can you see it?
Closer. It's better.
Someone called.
Okay, now can you see it?
Closer. There you go.
Now can you see it?
Yes. Yes, sir.
Okay, great. I want to start out with a little experience I had in Missouri. I was taking a horse from Tennessee to Idaho, and on the way, we stopped in Missouri overnight, let the horse out at a fairgrounds, and the next morning, we got back to the horse, and the horse said, no, I like Missouri. The grass is green, the sky is blue, and I don't want to move. Fortunately, there were some great people from Missouri who helped me load the horse, and you know, the horse is loved by my daughter, and I love my daughter, so we had a great time. Anyway, I'm here to talk about fluoride. And for 25 years, I promoted fluoridation. So over the last 20 years, I've become more opposed to it. Starting out with the FDA, it says do not swallow. And that's very clear for a quarter milligram, the same as a glass of fluoridated water. Uh, hang on a second. Okay, also, the court said that fluoridation is an unreasonable risk at one liter of water. That's what most people are supposed to drink or more. And the EPA Union said it's borders on a criminal act. The Florida Surgeon General said it's public health malpractice. And the Washington State Board of Pharmacy said it's a legend drug. That's meaning it's a prescription drug that needs to be provided by a doctor rather than just mass-medicated. The final one here that we'll talk about is the National Toxicology Program, with 30 out of 31 high-quality studies reporting lower IQ, many of them at very low fluoride concentrations. Now, if I were a betting person, I would put my $5 onto the lottery rather than putting in that these 30 human high-quality studies are going to be rescinded or changed. I want to, many of people in my class that teach dentists, graduates, some of the best, highest-quality cosmetic dentists in North America, and they often ask me, tell us what to do Monday morning. Just give us some simple what to do. So I'm starting out with that so that you can see what I recommend, and then we'll get into more of the science. Girls and women wanting to become pregnant someday should avoid drinking water with greater than 0.2 ppm of fluoride, fluoridation is .7, or swallowing fluoride toothpaste. The half-life of fluoride in the antibodies is about 20 years. So girls should not drink fluoridated water for about 20 years prior to when they become pregnant, because the bones resorb and the fluoride comes off, and that then goes to the fetus and harms the fetus. It also harms the reproductive organs, and we're just beginning to learn about fluoride to the sperm and motility and early puberty. It's better to- It's better to have a low-sugar diet and good oral hygiene. What's the guidance for the infants? Well, infants thrive best on mother's milk, we all agree, but I know of any. A mother's body biologically blocks virtually all fluoride, protecting babies naturally in mother's milk, not the fetus, but in mother's milk. A second-best option is formula for the infant with water containing less than 0.01 parts per million of fluoride. Whenever possible, mother's milk is very low on fluoride, and don't swallow toothpaste. Guidance for youth and adults, avoid drinking water with more than 0.2 parts per million. That's the benchmark dose that we're finding is maybe safe with the evidence that we have to date. Swallowing is a reflex. You know, my daughter, 11 years old, we were late to a concert, and I stuck my head in the bathroom, and she was brushing her teeth, and toothpaste running down her cheeks, and I said, "Be sure not to swallow. Spit, rinse, spit, rinse, spit, and then swallow." And she looked at me, rolled her eyes, you know, here's dad, the dentist, telling her not to swallow. She knew that. So she leaned over the sink, and I watched her throat, and her throat went up and down, the leaves apple, and she swallowed, and then she spit. Swallowing is a reflex. Guidance for adults, don't drink water more than 0.2 parts per million fluoride, and follow the FDA's recommendations on the toothpaste label, do not swallow. Freedom changed my mind, and, sorry, this thing is, it's got its mind of its own, freedom and science changed my mind. Fluoridation is not like a vaccine where we desire herd immunity. We are only treating the individual person, and there are options. We can swallow a little bit of toothpaste. FDA says don't do it, but that's possible, and it's a higher-quality product than what's in the water. Okay, and we put in the water an industrial-grade, non-pharmaceutical contaminated product. You can read that at your convenience. Number one, the Food and Drug Administration, FDA, CDR, the FDA says the evidence for efficacy is incomplete, and I agree with them on that. Do not swallow. Read your toothpaste label. There's no substantial evidence of drug effectiveness according to the FDA, letter to 35 companies. Here's a toothpaste tube. One of the first things I did was to read my label on the toothpaste. It said drug facts. Yes, it is a drug, and it says do not swallow, and it says use a pea-sized amount. I grew up when we were using Dairy Queen-sized ice cream cone on our toothbrushes with tons of toothpaste, but it says use a pea-sized, and now it's even talking about a grain of rice-sized of toothpaste. It also says keep out of reach of children six years of age on this tube. On some, it says 12 years of age. If more than used for brushing is accidentally swallowed, get medical help or contact a poison control center right away. They are serious, do not swallow. They're talking about a quarter-milligram, the same as about 11-ounce glass of water. Now, let me talk about the quality of research that's available. Quality of research is very important. We have at the bottom of the pyramid, expert opinion, observational studies. The highest quality of study we have in fluoridation's efficacy, except for one study, is observational studies, which are fraught with many, many concerns. We do have one that is randomized control trial. It reported no benefit. We don't have systematic reviews because we only have one randomized controlled trial. So we have a lot of problems in healthcare when we go with observational studies. For example, you know, I could say that more people drowned during the summer. Yes. And more people ate watermelon during the summer. Yes. But are they related? For 3,000 years, sorry, 2,000 years, we promoted in healthcare a procedure based on observational studies that the clergy and the scientists all agreed was beneficial. It's called bloodletting, observational studies. We now know that that's almost never beneficial. A number of recent cessation studies show that stopping fluoridation does literally nothing to increase overall dental decay. Number two, the U.S. District Court in sworn deposition under threat of perjury. Third, National Sanitation Foundation, the Food and Drug Administration, the Center for Disease Control, the EPA, nor three of the major manufacturers had a single safety study. They say, "Oh, fine," but they don't have any safety studies. Fluoridation is an unreasonable risk. The court ruled that plaintiffs have proven by preponderance of the evidence that water fluoridation at the level of 0.7 milligrams, that's what most people do, is unreasonable risk of injury to health and the environment, both. The pooled benchmark dose analysis concluded that a one-point drop in IQ of a child is to be expected for each roughly quarter-milligram per liter of fluoride in a pregnant mother's urine. Now, urine and water on an individual person, you can't really relate them well, but on a population basis, urine and fluoride can be compared because about half of fluoride is absorbed in the bones, and about half of fluoride is excreted in the urine. And about half the fluoride that we drink or consume is from water, and about half is from other sources. So they're reasonably on a population basis comparable. Let's look at graphs. Below, illustrations of the effect of five IQ points. You can see on the left graph that those below 75 IQ would be about 6 million, based on a 260 million population. And gifted would be the same because our IQ is like a bell curve. When we lose five IQ points, we have more than a 50% increase in the low IQ. That's the, well, those are those that have more percentage of dropouts, more unemployed, more homeless, more incarceration, more divorced, more special education. All of those are very expensive for cities. We also lose about more than half of our gifted that are above the 125, 130 IQ points. So when we reduce IQ for the population, it is dead serious. Research has remained consistent that a half a milligram increase in fluoride intake from infant formula corresponded to an 8.8-point decrement in performance IQ. Now we're starting to look at the different types of IQ. Very important. Number three, the National Toxicology Program, developmental neurotoxicity, measured with IQ. Now, we can measure brain damage in many different ways, but IQ is one of them. Four, and we'll talk more about that in just a bit, Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA. EPA scientists, and I respect the scientists there, they said in summary, we hold that fluoridation is an unreasonable risk. That's what the court found. Now, this is 2001. The court in 2024 is using the same term. It's unreasonable. That is, the toxicity of fluoride is so great, well, I knew that in 2001. Yeah, yeah, okay. And the purported benefits associated with it are so small, and I read that, and I thought, no way, I see the benefit in my patients. Don't give me this. You guys are good scientists, you just don't know. You're not looking at your observational studies, if there are any at all. What do you mean, if there are any at all? They're requiring every man, woman, and child in America to ingest it, borders on criminal behavior on the part of government. The scientists are dead serious. This is a problem. The National Research Council in 2006 did a unanimous, the maximum contaminant level goal of the EPA's was too high, and they listed a whole bunch of things, including diabetes, including obesity, including bone cancer, and including IQ problems. And so at that point, researchers started saying, "What's happening? Let's start looking at this." The EPA's determination of harm is based on these two slides. You have to have severe skeletal sclerosis, or you do not have harm. Or you can have severe dental sclerosis, but if you don't have severe, you are not harmed. Okay? That's their threshold at the EPA. We took them to court. They're having to change. The CDC said ingestion of fluoride is not likely to reduce decay. So who knows? I was wrong. I was seeing the benefit in my patient's mouth. When we look at dental sclerosis under a scanning electron microscope, we can see it has pits, cracks, fissures in the enamel. Whoa. I then ranked the states, the 50 states, on the percentage of their whole population fluoridated, and you can see the little line that goes from the bottom left up to the top right. Every state is listed there with the percentage of their whole population fluoridated. And if fluoridation is beneficial, of course, as it goes on up, we're going to see fewer cavies, we're going to see better, good teeth with fluoridation. That's what we would expect. But I don't see that. There's no common cause with fluoridation and dental decay, good teeth. But I then saw where I had been doing a problem. I've been comparing my wealthy patients who are on fluoridated water with the poor patients out in the countryside who were not on fluoridated water and going, there's a difference. Fluoridation is making a benefit. It's similar to saying that watermelon is causing drowning. No, the two are unrelated. But social economics.
Doctor, two more minutes. I intend to have a hard stop in 15 minutes.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you. Okay.
Talking my wife or what? Two more minutes. Get to your conclusion, please.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you there. It's garbled. Okay, assuming fluoridation has benefit, at $2,021, we have about $8 per person per year of care is averted. When we look at the cost to treat dental sclerosis, the cosmetic effects. Now, if I came to your car, or someone came to your car, I wouldn't do it, but if someone came to your car and made a big scratch on your car, that's damage, and you'd want that person or me to pay for repair on it because it's damaged, but it's just cosmetic. Your car will run just fine. How much more can we save when somebody scratches your teeth or causes damage to your teeth? 95% of children in one survey said that, study, said that they did not like it, and they wanted their dental sclerosis to be repaired. And with three IQ points, and I calculated that the repair cost would be $126 per person per year, and three IQ points comes out to about $438 per person per year.
Doctor, doctor, time's up.
Time's up.
Moving on to the next speaker. Questions? Okay. Yep. Actually, let him go after that. Thank you for the presentation.
This is one of my patients on fluoridated water, yep, with fluoridated water. If I could just have a.
Laurie, can you clear up Dr. Lentz, please?
Okay, this is what we want.
You have to mute one, mute one.
This is not fluoridated. Okay? Let's look at the teeth, the fluoride bomb. When we have harder teeth, it's harder to diagnose the teeth. Okay? Fractured teeth, we have more fractured teeth, and the EPA study shows for sure that we have more cost to treat functional damage like.
Josh, we want, we need to end Dr. Bill's and put Dr. Lentz on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
And you can see my slides.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. I appreciate the time that you're giving me to talk, and I am actually really thankful that you all are taking the time to look at both sides of the story. I think that's very important. I work with the American Dental Association. As Dr. Moorcamp noted, I have specialties in dental pathology as well as in dental public health. So I wanted to talk just a little bit about, oops, let me go back. Oh dang it. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how fluoride was discovered. It was actually discovered by some dentists who noticed these brown spots occurring on teeth, and they found that brown spots were caused by high levels of fluoride in the water. And they found that at around one part per million, you really didn't get that kind of staining. So basically, they wondered if they could add fluoride to the water and get that same effect where you had little to no staining and decay protection. And so they started adjusting the water in Grand Rapids, Michigan. I think one of the things to remember here is that this was a pretty high-quality study. These were, there were three sets of cities that were involved in this. There was Grand Rapids, Michigan was fluoridating, and then Muskegon was not. Then you had Newburgh and Kingston, New York, and then there were two cities in Canada. So there was a control where they weren't fluoridating, and there was one that was fluoridating. And so it was basically a controlled cohort study. So after several years, they found that children born, once fluoridation had started in Grand Rapids, had 60% less tooth decay than the kids in Muskegon. And they found that pattern in all the cities they were looking at. And so basically, and these were long-term studies, they looked at the kids for 10 to 12 years. So they were very definitely high-quality studies. So the trial was so successful that after about 10 years, the control city said, "Uh, no, we want a fluoridate." So let me see, okay, so why is it still important? Because it continues to be the most effective, cost-effective, and socially equitable way to prevent tooth decay for both kids and adults. And it's especially important for low-income children. That's where we see the greatest effect. I spent my life working in dental public health and public health clinics. I did not work in, you know, high-income areas like Dr. Osmanson, who's from Bellevue, Washington, and which has a median income of $160,000 per household. That is not the areas that I worked in. I worked in very low-income areas, and many times, the fluoridated water was the only kind of preventive care these kids were getting. So we have about 80 years of experience, incredible research that indicate that community water fluoridation is safe and effective. Water fluoridation is recommended by us at the ADA, but also the World Health Organization, the U.S. Preventive Health Services, American Academy of Pediatrics, American Water Works Association, and more. And what we see is 25, about 25% less tooth decay in communities that fluoridate as opposed to those without fluoridation. So it's actually higher in children, it's like in the 30% range for kids, and less for adults, but it kind of averages out to around 25%. And what we do see is when communities stop fluoridating. And what we do see is when communities stop fluoridating, studies show that tooth decay and dental expenditures go up. So Calgary, Canada, they had a kind of a control city. They stopped fluoridating. And when we look at Calgary compared to Edmonton, which continued, Calgary's dental expenditures and tooth decay rates really went up. We saw the same thing happening with Juneau, Alaska. We saw the country of Israel stopped fluoridating for several years. And they realized that their dental expenses and decay rates were really going up. So they've now decided to go back to fluoridating. So how does fluoride work? So fluoride is very negatively charged molecule. And so we talk about, you know, opposites attract. So calcium is positively charged and fluoride is negative, and it kind of sticks to it really well. So it helps to re-mineralize the tooth enamel. It reverses early tooth decay. It slows down that process of demineralization. And it's also been found to have some, kind of prevent the growth of cavity-causing bacteria because we know that that's what causes tooth decay is the bacteria. The bacteria ingest the sugars and carbohydrates in our mouth, and then they produce acid, and that acid is what causes the cavity. But if that cavity gets really big, you get an infection there because there's bacteria everywhere, right? So infections from baby teeth really can result in life-threatening infections. And I know that's not what Dr. Osmondson sees in Bellevue, but it's what I saw. So this is actually a patient of mine. At three and a half years old, we actually had to remove all of his teeth because nothing was actually salvageable. So you can see where the cursor is. That's, that's an abscess, that's an abscess. There's abscesses all over here. So this kid had just, he was in pain, he couldn't eat. You know, so these are the kind of things that we see that happen when tooth decay is not treated. And so unfortunately, you know, kids are supposed to have, poor kids are supposed to have Medicaid, which is supposed to cover their costs. But Medicaid is a state-run, state-federal partnership. And it pretty much depends on how much the individual state wants to, how much money they want to put in. And then it's matched by the federal government. So in states, in a lot of the southern states, not a lot of money is put into Medicaid. And so it doesn't cover a whole lot. So a lot of these kids have a lot of problems getting care. So kids with cavities in their primary teeth or in their baby teeth, that infection can actually spread into the permanent tooth bud and damage it. And studies show that children with early childhood cavities have a much higher incidence of tooth decay in their permanent teeth. So it's a problem when they're young, and then that problem continues throughout life. There's also a really high cost associated with this. Children with a lot of decay, you end up having to, because you're too small to really be able to do all of that treatment in office, we end up having to take them to the OR and treat it under general anesthesia. And so that's scary for the kid and for the parents. You really try to avoid putting kids under general anesthesia as much as you can for safety reasons. And it's also very expensive to do. So it, the costs associated with it are pretty high. So anything that I can do for my patients to avoid cavities, I'm going to go for it. So how do tooth infections, I talked about, that can be life-threatening? How do tooth infections kill? Well, that bacteria can get into the bloodstream because the mouth is actually connected to the rest of the body. Who knew? So, and all those capillaries and arteries and veins, they go right from the mouth, which is pretty close by, into the brain, and you get brain abscesses. And so this kind of infection where the eye gets closed, these are among the most dangerous ones because that, the bacteria is right there. I mean, the brain is right there. And so they end up getting brain abscesses. So this really does happen. And I, and I know you think, you know, oh, it's exaggerated. But no, it actually does happen. So these kids have infections, they have pain, they're missing school, they can't eat, and sometimes they die. So again, anything that I can do to prevent tooth decay, you know, I'm going to go for it. And if I can prevent 25% or 30% of tooth decay, that's huge. That may mean the difference between having to take the kid to the OR and being able to do it in the chair. So Dr. Osmondson talked about the National Toxicology Program monograph. So this is coming straight, this is copied exactly from the monograph. The monograph says they, with a moderate degree of confidence, that higher exposures greater than 1.5 milligrams per liter. So more than twice what we fluoridated in the U.S. So is associated with a lower IQ in children. There's insufficient data, and this is copied straight from there. There's insufficient data determine the low fluoride level of 0.7 milligrams per liter currently recommended for U.S. community water supplies has a negative effect on children's IQ. So unfortunately, if you rely on other people's interpretation, you know, you get different things. But what it really says is that it does not apply to the low levels of fluoride used in the U.S. And it also states that none of these studies were reviewed, that none of the studies that they included in their review came from the U.S. They were from countries like China, India, Iran, and Pakistan. Now, Dr. Osmondson kind of talked about this. There's a lot of confounding factors in IQ, not just in tooth decay, but in IQ. Socioeconomic factors are huge in children in determining IQ. There are genetic factors, there are cultural differences. And none of these are taken into account in these studies. One of my cousins is an educational psychologist. She basically tests kids' IQ for a living. And she says, at the age of three and four, you really cannot test for IQ. It's, it's too soon. Anything that kids, anything that's, having the kid have a bad day, he has the sniffles, he's just bored, he's hungry. Those things are really confounding factors. And so you don't get a good IQ read. So until you start, basically nine, 10, 11 is when you get kind of, the kid is really old enough to test IQ. But, so these studies where you see, you know, the kid is only three or four years old, you can look at behavioral changes. But cognition is pretty hard to determine at that age. And there's a lot of other factors that are basically not taken into account. There's the person, the evaluator's reliability. Are the evaluators blinded? Do they know where the kids are coming from? Are they going to have some bias? So all of those things are factors that are not taken into account in most of these studies. When we look at the EPA ruling, Judge Chen handed down the ruling saying the fluoridation of water poses an unreasonable risk of reduced IQ in children. So he ordered the agency to take action. And they can respond in many ways. They can order further review. The EPA can change maximum levels, or they can appeal the ruling. So the ruling actually cited the NTP monograph over 120 times. But it went much further than the NTP's conclusion. NTP clearly stated that it did not apply to low levels of fluoride used in U.S. water supplies. I can send you the, you know, the monograph. I can email that to you so you can actually read for yourself and see what it says and not rely on other people's evaluations.
Doctor, three more minutes.
Okay, so takeaways. Basically, don't believe everything you read in the mainstream media about what a study contains. Because a lot of times, I'll read the headline, and then that's not actually what's being talked about in the article. And you're going, what? Beware of inflammatory headlines and fear-mongering. There are a lot of really good studies and reviews that were, A, not included in the NTP monograph. And the media just doesn't pick up on them because they don't, they're not sensational. It's not, you know, exciting to say, well, you know, it works and they're all no problem. You know, nobody wants to read that. They want to read, you know, something exciting. So that's kind of a problem. ADA responses on fluoride are framed by our National Fluoridation Advisory Council. And it's a team of U.S. academic experts on fluoride. And so we rely on scientists to help us respond. And we always welcome new research. And, you know, that's great. But we really would like to see high-quality research. Yeah, that's one of the things that really, the studies that NTP looked at were all what we call cross-sectional studies. They weren't long-term studies. And so they were really not that great. And so we started the ADA, look for, look at AAP, the American Academy of Pediatrics. They have great information on fluoride. So if you have any questions or you want more information, here's my email address. Please feel free to reach out to me.
Thank you, Dr. Lentz, for taking the time. Stuart Cooper is our next speaker.
Do you, we're going to wait till the very end for questions, I guess?
No, if you have a question for Dr. Lentz, go ahead.
Okay, because I know Dr. Rob had a question earlier. So I do have a question. So according to the ADA's clinical guidelines, how much fluoride can a dentist prescribe to infants under six months of age?
You know, that is actually not something I have on the top of my head, but I can send that to you. What we're really kind of discussing is that fluoride in water is at a very low level. And so we really don't worry about it too much. The only time we actually prescribe fluoride is if there is no fluoride in the water.
Okay, so, so that's unclear, I guess, on infants under, under six months of age?
I can send you that information. Usually, under six months of age, we don't worry about prescribing. And we actually are really kind of gotten away from prescribing fluoride supplements. So what we've been doing is, not so much because so many kids really have fluoride in their water. So we don't really, you know, something like 70% of the population. So we don't worry about that too much. We do prescribe for kids who are at high risk. And so that means low-income kids who don't have much access, you know, or have a high risk because they have like, you know, some diabetes or some sort of medical condition. And so then we do prescribe. But I can send you that information.
Yeah, I would, I would love to see that information when you can obtain it. Do you, do you have an idea of when, when do you typically prescribe fluoride? Is there any kind of, or it's just based on socio-economic?
So socio-economic or medical conditions that may cause the teeth to not develop well.
Okay.
And also maybe NIH guidelines on that. They just came out with new guidelines, so I'll be happy to send that to you.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, I have a question. Is there any benefit of a mother ingesting fluoride when she's pregnant? What's the benefit to the unborn child, I guess, if there is any?
Well, so we worked with the American College of obstetrics and gynecology, ACOG, and we produced a oral health during pregnancy guidelines. And ACOG recommends that women drink fluoridated water. So I can send that to you as well.
Thank you.
I also have a question. Are you, are you, are you aware that fluoride passes the placental barrier?
Yes, that's why they recommend it.
Are you aware that it passes the blood-brain barrier in the developing brain?
Yes, again, yes, I am aware of that.
And so are you aware that little boys are affected more so than girls in the studies that are reflecting lower IQs?
So I have to say that I think girls are just naturally smarter because that's my opinion.
Well, my wife and you would agree with that. Thank you. I appreciate that. Are you aware that more boys than girls are susceptible to autism and ADHD?
I am, but there are no studies that show that ADHD is caused by fluoride. And in fact, all of these studies, this is an association, it's not cause and effect. NTP monograph clearly stated that they did not find the causal mechanism.
That's a monograph. Are you, are you aware of the latest systemic? There's a study that came out this year that is called "Systemic Review of Epidemiological and Toxicological Evidence on Health Effects of Fluoride in Drinking Water." Are you familiar with that study that just came out this year?
Are you talking about the NTP monograph on neurocognitive development?
Let me see.
Because that's what I'm talking about.
This is critical reviews in toxicology. So in that, in that study, it's a meta-analysis, which is our highest level of studies. And what you've provided for us has been observational studies.
A meta-analysis is a review of studies that have been done. And so what they do is they look at it and they pull the data. But it also, the quality of the meta-analysis depends on the quality of the studies that are being reviewed. And so like when we look at Dr. Kumar's meta-analysis, he looked at communities that were actually fluoridated. So the NTP, NTP monograph did not look at that. NTP looked at areas of the world where a high fluoride was naturally occurring. It was not about community water fluoridation. And again, I'm happy to send you that so you can read that for yourself.
So I do thank you for your, I do thank you for your presentation. I just wanted to make the council aware that there are more studies out there that are relating to the drops in IQ. And this systematic review that I just cited is a recent one. And it, I think it had 89, it reviewed 89 studies, so thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate your, the information you provided. And there are a lot of great studies coming from areas of the world that are practicing community water fluoridation that showed no effect. So, you know, if you look at places where the naturally occurring levels of fluoride are enough to cause skeletal fluorosis, to cause severe fluorosis, sure. I mean, fluoride is like everything. It's like iron or calcium. If you get too much of it, it's bad. Just like, just like iron can cause liver damage if you have, get too much iron. But you do need a little bit of it in your diet. And so that's why at 0.7 parts per million, it's a very low level. And so, yeah, you know, I mean, you have to always kind of consider that dose effect, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just wanted to observe, since Dr. Kessinger brought it up about the systemic studies or the metadata studies, Dr. Osmondson's hierarchy or the pyramid of studies, he specifically said that there were no systemic studies for fluorination.
No, he said observational for the benefits. He did not talk, he was not talking about toxicology. He was talking about whether there were studies supporting its usage. And he said there were none, only observation was the highest level. That was what I. That was what I was reading, that's what I was pointing out.
Okay.
Yeah, that's not actually true, but, well, I mean, I've seen studies where there are...
You can argue with Dr. Osmanson with that one.
Yeah.
But I think we need to continue on. We've got those speakers.
Some effective studies that are not observational studies, they're...
Any other questions for Dr. Lenz?
So I'm happy to send you some of those, too.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Stuart Cooper.
Can you hear me loud and clear?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
All right. Hey, my name is Stuart Cooper, and I'm the executive director of the charitable nonprofit known as the Fluoride Action Network. We were founded in 2000 by a group of concerned dentists, physicians, scientists, and parents with the goal of educating the public about the potential risks and known side effects of overexposure to fluoride, particularly fluoridated drinking water. We're not anti-fluoride, and we have not taken a position on topical fluoride products aside from suggesting them as an alternative to ingesting fluoridated water. We're a public health and environmental watchdog group with over 5,500 medical and scientific professionals who work to protect citizens from overexposure. And I'm joining you today from New Hampshire, and I wanted to point out that New Hampshire and our neighbor Vermont are one and two in, according to the CDC in the United States, with the lowest rates of childhood dental decay. And yet we're amongst the least fluoridated states in the country. You can compare that to two of the most fluoridated states, Kentucky, which is 99% fluoridated, which has the highest rate of tooth loss in the country, and Illinois, which has overdubbed the childhood decay that New Hampshire does. So those are just some North American examples of fluoridation's ineffectiveness. But I do want to point out something that was just mentioned. The American Academy of Pediatrics, and it's crazy hearing that from a subject matter expert, but I know this because I can read, the American Academy of Pediatrics and American Dental Association's Fluoride Supplementation Guidelines contradict water fluoridation. Fluoride supplements cannot be purchased over the counter. They require prescription and supervision by a medical practitioner, unlike water fluoridation. And we're talking about the same level of fluoride. A quarter milligram can be found in 10 ounces of fluoridated water, and that's what these supplements contain. So they generally give them to children who do not, or have no other fluoride exposure. So it's looking at fluoride supplementation in a vacuum, you could say. Second, to answer that question for you, I have the ADA guidelines in front of me. They recommend zero fluoride for children six months of age or younger. Not, "Oh, we generally don't give it to them." The answer's zero, and that's because it provides no benefit whatsoever. Part of our trial was we deposed the CDC, and under a penalty of perjury, they acknowledged there was no benefit whatsoever to, no benefit whatsoever to a bottle-fed infant, zero, under penalty of oath. So, you know, this fluoridation contradicts completely what they can do in their own clinical setting, and that's because you're going to overexpose children at a time when they're vulnerable to brain harm to fluoride. So silicon fluorides are the only chemicals added to our water supply that do not improve the safety or potability of the water. Their only intention is as a form of medical treatment. The same concentration of fluoride is delivered to the entire population regardless of age, weight, nutritional status, and fluoridation does so without individual oversight of a doctor or control over the dosage administered, because everyone drinks varying amounts of water. This is why most of the world has rejected water fluoridation. We're the outlier. 95% of the world does not water, does not fluoridate their water. 98% of Europe does not fluoridate their water. They believe it's unethical, it violates informed consent. As a result, you know, here in the United States, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency data shows that fluoridated water now makes up a vast majority of a person's daily exposure to fluoride. We're talking 60 to 80% of an individual's fluoride exposure here in the U.S. comes from fluoridated tap water or beverages produced in fluoridated communities. For a bottle-fed infant, whose exclusively parents are reconstituting infant formula with fluoridated tap water, they get no benefit because they don't have teeth, and yet they're consuming 200, or at least 150 times, but up to possibly 200 times, more fluoride than a breastfed infant, because the mother's breasts will actually filter out that toxin. I mean, it completely contradicts common sense. So as a result, the CDC has been collecting data from their NHANES, looking at overexposure of fluoride. And what they found was that in the early 2000s, 42% of our teens, our adolescents, had visible signs of overexposure to fluoride from consuming it during infancy. And that's dental fluorosis, white and brown streaks on the teeth. That was in the early 2000s. That number went up to 65% of our adolescents in about 2010, and the most recent research from 2020 and 2021 shows that somewhere between 70 and 87% of our adolescents now have dental fluorosis. That's a visible biomarker of overexposure to ingested fluoride. That's at a time when the brain is vulnerable, and we're going to get to that shortly. But I'd like to point out that this isn't something that your citizens can easily remove. Fluoride can only be removed by reverse osmosis or distillation. All right, let's, this isn't a water equity issue. We're forcing this on people when it should be a choice, when they should be able to regulate their fluoride consumption, you know, in a personal way, and not have to regulate their water consumption to regulate their fluoride consumption. This should be something that's done between a patient and a practitioner, or with topical toothpaste products, and not ingesting it. So the trend right now is towards ending water fluoridation. Over 1,500 communities, according to the CDC stats, have ended water fluoridation since 2010. In fact, even though the population of the U.S. has increased in that time, the percentage of public water, of the population consuming fluoridated water has reduced, has dropped during that time period. This includes in the past 10 years here in Missouri, Branson, Springfield, Houston, Warsaw, Sullivan, Carl Junction, Waynesville, Buffalo, Smithville, Helvee, Olivar, O'Fallon, Neosha, sorry if I mispronounced that, Ozark. These are communities in your state that have all ended fluoridation in recent years. The last, this time last year, Branson Board of Alderman voted unanimously, not once but twice, to end fluoridation so that they could ensure that the chemicals were removed as quickly as possible. The Alderman studied the issue for months, toured the water facility, spoke with water employees, and held a special town hall of expert testimony. The Branson Utility Director said that disposal of the chemical would require a hazmat team and a hazardous waste disposal fee that would be more expensive than the chemical itself. That's because the chemical you're adding, the silicon fluorides, are actually a hazardous byproduct of the phosphate fertilizer industry. It's considered a pollutant or contaminant that's how it's regulated by the EPA. So you're polluting the water voluntarily, the harm is being self-inflicted. But the answer's easy, just stop adding it to the drinking water. As since our ruling, the federal ruling in court, where a judge ruled that fluoride poses an unreasonable risk to human health, over 25 communities in recent weeks have ended fluoridation across the country, with currently over 67 now debating it. We've talked about evidence of overexposure. So there is now a large body of government-funded research indicating that fluoride is neurotoxic and is associated with lowered IQ in children and significant increase in ADHD diagnosis and related behaviors in children at doses experienced in fluoridated communities. The editor of the Journal of the American Medical Association, Dimitri Christakis, said, quote, "The effects are comparable to the effects of red, and if these findings are true, there should be as much concern on prenatal fluoride exposure." And he went on to say that he would suggest that his pregnant patients not consume fluoridated tap water. That's the editor, the doctor and editor of the Journal of the American Medical Association. The National Institutes of Health have funded 10 studies on fluoride in the developing brain. Guess what? All 10 have led fluoride exposures experienced in fluoridated communities to harm into the developing brain, all 10, 100%. One of those studies from Canada, published in 2022 in the Journal of Nutrients, found that pregnant women who had low iodine levels and elevated fluoride had babies who suffered an IQ loss that was 58% greater than already significant IQ loss from elevated fluoride alone. To put this into perspective, to put this huge, and they talk about a huge, a nine-IQ point loss, to put this huge nine-IQ point loss from fluoride in perspective, studies show that a pregnant mother smoking 20 cigarettes each and every day during her pregnancy can cause less of an IQ loss for her child than fluoride, averaging only about 6.2 IQ points. In 2019, a Canadian study found nearly 300% higher risk of ADHD for children living in fluoridated areas. This one is funded by NIH. Another study in 2019, funded by NIH in Canada, found that babies fed formula mixed with fluoridated water averaged IQ points less than those mixed with non-fluoridated water. Several other NIH-funded studies looking at pregnant women here in the United States looked at their maternal urinary fluoride levels, the amount of fluoride in their urine, and it found that women living in fluoridated United States communities had double, double the fluoride in their urine as compared to their non-fluoridated counterparts. So this brings us to the eight-year systematic review conducted by the National Toxicology Program. What that review found was that there are 72 peer-reviewed human studies on fluoride in the developing brain. Of those 72 studies, 64 found neurotoxicity. That's 89% consistency. 19 of those studies were considered to be high-quality. Of these, 18 reported an inverse association between estimated fluoride exposure and IQ. That's a 95% consistency. So I would kind of flip the script here and say, they looked at all the neurotoxicity studies, 72 of them, and 90% of them, or 89% found neurotoxicity. So really, those people who are saying, "You don't have enough research, it's inconsistent," what research do you have? You have eight studies. We have 64. You have no random eyes-controlled trials, not a single RCT has ever been conducted on fluoridation efficacy or safety after 80 years of water fluoridation. So let's keep moving on. The NTP authors, we talk about that 1.5 level, you, well, I see my time is running out, but we talk about the level, in the NTP report itself, they say, they quote, that this does actually apply to women living in fluoridated communities, that moderate confidence level, because they look at all sources of fluoride, and they acknowledge that a woman living in a fluoridated community from all sources can exceed the fluoride levels necessary to reduce IQ that would be also seen at, from someone drinking fluoridated water, or water with 1.5 parts per million fluoride. And I'll share that with you, it's on page 84 of the NTP report. Moreover, the NTP report is about to publish a meta-analysis, there's a second part that's about to be published, and that meta-analysis that's coming out probably in a few weeks, found that they could not detect any safe level of fluoride exposure for the developing children, including at levels commonly found in artificially fluoridated public drinking water. I know I'm running out of time. I did want to point out that the study was mentioned about Kumar, and it was considered a high-quality study, that's what you were just told. The NTP actually mentioned Kumar. They mentioned how they didn't include Kumar because it was of such low quality and so highly flawed that it didn't meet their inclusion criteria. They also recently, the Cockney Review, the Cockney Collaboration, which actually does a meta-analysis, they look at all of research on certain medical interventions, they studied water fluoridation and found that there's actually almost no benefit whatsoever. They found that most, there's possibly a 4% reduction in dental decay just for children in their primary teeth, and no benefit for adults. In that, they, in that research, in the Cockney Reviews, this just came out a couple months ago, in the research, they didn't include the Calgary and Juneau studies you were just talking about, that were just mentioned, because again...
He says they have no...
I don't know that I have time to watch deposition videos, to be honest.
It's just like a question, do you have any data showing that...
30-second clip sounds like you're going to edit. I don't like that.
Specifically, I would like the studies that you cited and the key takeaways from those studies that you recited during your discourse here. I would appreciate that. Thank you.
So yes, thank you, Stuart, for your presentation. I did want to circle back, and this might even be a question for Dr. Lenz, but I've got you here, and I'm going to put it out here. So there's no, there's no benefit to the developing fetus for fluoride. Is that correct? So here's what I, here's what I heard, this is what I heard before, was that, this is the point I was going to go past, the placental barrier, blood-brain barrier. There's no evidence that shows that fluoride for a developing fetus actually helps the teeth. There's no studies out there that shows that. I see the face you're making at me, but I can look it up, and I see. Oh, I saw you questioning, and I wasn't trying to be rude. I did sound rude, I didn't mean it that way. But I see from my observation that, but I don't see any studies that support that. So that being the case, why would we subject pregnant ladies to a potential neurotoxin? Of course, it's not neurotoxic to all babies that are developing, but what about those few that it could be? So...
So I, I can send you the charts that show it, but the primary teeth are developing during, when the child is still a fetus, before birth. And so that's where the fluoride benefit comes in, is for those developing primary teeth. So I can send you some of those charts.
I would like to see, I would like to see studies, because the studies I read come to the conclusion that there is no benefit to the developing teeth. So we'll just leave it there. If you want to, if you can send me studies that'll show what you're talking about, that would be fine. And thank you, Stuart, for your, for your presentation. I had a whole bunch of things, but I'm going to leave it here because we're going along here.
I put a couple of things in the chat, questions that was asked, I put the answers in the chat, so, and I'll put a little bit more if you need.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Stuart? If not, our next speaker. Gwen?
I made the trip down. While I'm getting this pulled up, thank you, guys, for having me tonight. I appreciate it, appreciate your time and dedication to hearing both sides, because I think that's important. So I'll go on ahead and get started. If I have said, okay. Can you guys see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I have a lot of slides here. I'm going to talk really, really fast and probably not cover some of the stuff that's already been covered, unless there's questions about it, but just so you guys are aware. So we're going to talk about fluoridation, obviously. So fluoride is a naturally occurring mineral. It is actually in all water. It is actually in all water on the earth at some level, and you, as you can see, oh, it did not switch. Oh, I apologize. Let's try this. Oh, it's not me?
No, it's not. You'll have to get back where you want. Is it frozen again?
Yeah. It's changing on here, but it's not changing.
I don't think it likes the teens thing being up. Oops. The presentation won't work. Slide show. I will go to slide show.
Okay, well, it's not changing for you guys, and I apologize. Okay, well, I'll just talk, and then you guys can ask questions, so I apologize.
No, I think the slides are important, aren't they? Can you get Ford slash to help us out?
Maybe wrong. Well, it's weird. Okay, we'll try that. Okay. Of course. Just, I don't know, can you flip through over here? It's not up on the screen.
We can see it that way.
Oh, okay. All right, can you guys, is it going now? Okay, perfect. Okay, so fluoride is a naturally occurring mineral, it's in almost, well, actually it's in all water, comes down in rain, it's in the oceans, it just depends on what level as to where you draw it from. So, and fluoridation is actually the addition of more fluoride to the water, and that's usually based on what your natural background level is, and then you add up to 0.7 milligrams per liter. That's the recommended amount that we want to see in the water. I apologize, this has got me kinda... So, no, that's okay. So water fluoridation, just to give you a perspective of what 0.7 parts per million looks like, it's about 60 seconds in 1,000 days. So it's a very small amount. A penny and $14,000, just to kind of give you that perspective of what you're, what is actually being added to the water for the benefit to prevent tooth decay. So this is a timeline of fluoridation. This kind of talks about when fluoride first started being noticed in the water, German doctor discovered it, and then kind of goes all the way up through about 19, well, right about 2000. It was the first added in Michigan, in Grand Rapids, in 1945, January 25th. They actually didn't get to turn it on until January 31st, however, because they had complications with the equipment, but January 25th, there was about 200 people lined out up outside the water plant door telling that they had taken a shower, taken a bath, it had harmed their skin, they'd ingested it, they had stomach aches, and it hadn't even been turned on yet. So tooth decay is a largely preventable bacterial disease. Almost everybody has tooth decay, not everybody, but almost everybody. And it is actually the most chronic disease that there is in the United States, probably, possibly worldwide. It's significantly more common than asthma, obesity, and even diabetes. So it is infectious and transmissible, so if a mom has a decayed tooth in her mouth and kisses baby on the mouth, she can transmit that to that baby. That baby then winds up suffering from other things related to that. So this is why oral health matters. Kids live in pain, adults live in pain, they have difficulty chewing, they don't gain weight, difficulty concentrating, it's a predictor of cavities later in life, it is very costly to treat, and it can lead to death, and it actually has led to death as early as 2023. There was a retired Tampa Bay Buccaneer football player that started his own construction company, wound up having something fall on his head and had to be taken to the hospital because it knocked him out. Whenever that happened, it jarred loose some tooth roots that were decayed, and that bacteria actually spread, went to his brain, and he died within about seven days. Sorry, I'm trying to do this from over here and see. So study shows that fluoride works both topically and systemically. So systemically is ingesting it, it gets into your saliva, it bathes your teeth continuously with small amounts of fluoride that's in your saliva, it also gets into your plaque, and it helps repair what I would call soft spots that might be forming. Topically is, you know, continually bathing the teeth, I apologize. Systemically is when you swallow it, and it works on the kids under the gum line. So it does actually benefit children all the way through adulthood. It is a lifetime benefit, it is not just a, just for kids, that's what we hear a lot. And it is actually a preventive measure that we have in our arsenal that can be used to help kind of stave off tooth decay. Cavities are unevenly distributed, so they affect everyone, but people of lower economic status, socioeconomic status actually, and other marginalized groups actually have higher impact of cavity and tooth decay rates than other people. Low-income kiddos are actually twice as likely to have cavities, and in Rala, there's about a 27% poverty rate, and that's at the kid level. So how do we know it's beneficial? Well, there's studies that show that it's beneficial, there's over 10,000 studies that show it's beneficial, and what those benefits are. So, and like I said, adults also benefit from ingesting fluoridated water. This was a study that was done in 2016 out of Brazil, and I can send that to you if you guys would like it. And I know that Dr. Lenz touched on this. So Edmonton and Calgary, Calgary stopped fluoridating, and this slide shows you what happened. Calgary's tooth decay rate went up to about 65%, Edmonton's stayed down, and that, they stopped in 2011, the study was completed by 2018, and they actually have voted to start fluoridation again. So they will be starting fluoridation. So whenever they have to treat severe tooth decay, whenever they're little, about the only way to do that is through general anesthesia. I don't know if any of you guys have ever experienced your kids going under general anesthesia. It is not a fun thing to have happen, it's actually kind of scary, because there's a lot that could go wrong whenever they have to go under. This is a mouth of an actual patient of a dentist, a retired dentist, and this is what they would do, they would put them under anesthesia and remove those teeth. It's expensive, insurance will cover it, but if you don't have insurance, it just costs even more out of your pocket, so it makes it difficult. And preschool kiddos are actually probably some of the most vulnerable kiddos because they have a lot. They, they're eating, they're enticed by new foods, so they have a higher, higher propensity for that. So the average cost of a hospital treatment with general anesthesia ranges from $10,000 to $15,000 per child. And this is just more photos to show you guys what that looks like. So also during Calgary, their general anesthesia treatment actually jumped 78% when they did not have fluoride in their water, so they saw a dramatic increase. Edmonton stayed, it rose about 12%, because fluoridated water is not guaranteed to prevent all tooth decay, that's not its job. Its job is to help slow it down. And so after, you see the three steps, and that shows you after their seven-year stoppage where they were at. I won't dwell too much on Juneau, Alaska, because Dr. Lenz had discussed it, but after they stopped fluoridating, nine years after they stopped, they saw about a 47% rise in the cost of treatments for kiddos. So it was pretty significant. So, did you guys know that the Department of Defense actually requires that all military bases with 3,300 people or more on the base to be fluoridated? And that's because about 15% of the troops are not considered ready to send overseas because of dental issues. So they actually have to get a lot of work done before they're able to be sent over. So in 2011, they actually wrote that in as a DOD rule. So Buffalo, New York, I wanted to talk about this because it's more recent. So in 2015, Buffalo, New York stopped fluoridating their water and did not notify their community members or the city council. The water treatment plant just shut it off. They had taken a $300,000 grant to upgrade their fluoridation equipment and did not do so with those funds. Nobody knew about it until 2023, when some parents were taking kids to dentists, the dentist started a huge outcry because they said, we are seeing massive amounts of decay in kids that we've never seen decay in, we've treated these kids for years, and then they found out that it had been shut off. So the parents actually filed a class action lawsuit, won the class action lawsuit, and were awarded $160 million in damages to be used for dental treatment for all of the kids that have to have their teeth fixed. That money is gonna be, it's put into a trust, and then they're gonna build dental clinics to actually do that treatment. And that was just decided about, about two months ago, that that final ruling came in. So since then, the city council has voted unanimously, and on September of 2024, Buffalo started fluoridating their water again. Sorry, I forgot to click through the slides, I apologize. So we've heard a lot about the NTP report. I'm not here to debate, I'm just here to educate. So the NTP report actually is mostly done in areas that are high natural fluoride levels. By high natural fluoride levels, I mean above the 2 to 4 part per million that the EPA sets. There are some that are the 1.5 part, and I think one that's under, but most of them are over that amount. Having said that, the NTP report itself actually says that it's not to be used to evaluate water fluoridation in the United States or Canada at the 0.7 parts per million. It specifically lists the NTP monograph or the addendum, so that is actually in there, and I can send it to you. I know that we've heard both sides, but I think you guys reading it is probably what needs to happen, so that way you know. The TASCAL lawsuit, the EPA lawsuit, the judge did say that by preponderance of evidence that that needs to be looked at, that water fluoridation at the levels that we have need to be looked at. However, he also said, which this is usually left off, he also said that he does not think that water fluoridation at the levels in the United States is harmful. So there's two parts to that. With the amended TASCAL law, they actually go by preponderance of evidence, and if there's any possibility of harm, they err on the side of caution and say, look at it again. I thoroughly welcome everybody looking at it again, because we always need to be looking at things. So I think it will be very beneficial. And this is actually straight out of the monograph. This monograph and addendum do not address whether the sole exposure to fluoride added to drinking water in some countries, the United States and Canada, 0.7 milligrams per liter is associated with measurable effect on IQ. So the California, he did not ban fluoridation, so the California judge did issue that, but he did not ban fluoridation, and he also asked the EPA to take action, but did not specify what action they need to take. So yes, they have to do something, but he's left it completely up to them. The EPA does a six-year review of every single additive that is put into the water treatment process to make sure that they're not reaching levels of harm, to make sure that everything is where it needs to be at. That's why we have secondary maximum contaminant levels and maximum contaminant levels set, which for the United States is two parts per million secondary and four parts per million for the maximum. And this is a list of recent studies that have been done specifically on IQ, and this includes the one that, the NTP, one of the ones that the NTP was mainly based around, the one from Canada. And you could see that there's actually no difference in IQ between fluoridated and non-fluoridated communities. The Cochrane Review was mentioned. The Cochrane Review does say that there's been a decline in tooth, in the veracity of water fluoridation. There should be. We've had fluoridated products introduced over the counter, toothpaste, mouth rinses, kids get fluoride varnish treatments in school, so it should not have to carry the burden that it used to have to carry 60, 70 years ago, 80 years ago. We should see it being used less. However, one of the co-authors of the Cochrane Review actually stated that contemporary studies are still showing that water fluoridation is beneficial, and if you actually have a fluoridation scheme, that's what they call it, then you should keep it and continue doing what you're doing.
Gwen?
Yes. Not going to touch. So quickly, they mentioned that water fluoridation is not done worldwide, it is, it's in over 60 countries. However, tons of the countries don't have centralized water systems like we do, so they don't have the benefit. They may have 20 houses that are hooked up to a well, and fluoridating there is almost a near impossibility. So instead, they actually add water, or, sorry, fluoride to their milk and fluoride to their salt. And there are several countries that do this. And one of the other things... I wanted to also say, you have a really good water treatment system here, really good. They do a really good job. It's pretty significant. So I had watched the November 18th meeting, and one of the things that was brought up, and it was brought up again tonight, was that there's tons of places that are quitting fluoridation. In Missouri, we used to have a state fluoridation program, began in 1960. Dr. Dean Perkins ran it for about 20 years, and he retired in 2004 as a state dental director, and in 2006, that fluoridation program went away. The funding went away, all of the people went away that used to do it. From 1960 until 2006, the state paid for every single piece of equipment, every fluoride additive, every test, every training that was needed for water operators. And when that funding stream was used up, and it wasn't there anymore, a lot of systems had to quit, because they did not build it into their infrastructure and into their budget to be able to continue fluoridating. And about the time of 2006 to 2012, we saw about 80 to 90 losses, and that was primarily due to them not having the budget and the state not having the budget to give them. So... I apologize, this is so far away. So this is current Missouri... So this is Missouri's current fluoridation statistics. We have three hundred and ninety-two systems that either have natural fluoride levels of point six milligrams per higher or that actually fluoridate their system by adding fluoride to the water supply. Ninety-six primary systems fluoridate, one hundred and ninety-eight consecutive systems buy their water from fluoridated communities. Hundred and thirty naturally fluoridated communities are from point six one to three point eight ones milligrams per liter. We have several whole counties that have higher fluoride levels and there is not an increase in incidence of cancer, thyroid disease, IQ loss, or anything like that. We have about seventy-six point eight percent in Missouri that's on fluoridated water, which is about four million people. So public opinion, it's still supported. There's polls that have been done recently, about seventy-three percent of people think that fluoridation is still beneficial. And there's leading health and scientific groups that support water fluoridation. American Water Works Association, American Academy of Pediatrics, the ADA, Centers for Disease Control, I can go on. And then leading health and scientific groups that oppose it, there's none.
Thank you. Any questions for Gwen?
Yes, first, you had made a statement that in these communities where there are high fluoride, there's no evidence of increased hypothyroid or ADHD, something?
I didn't mention ADHD.
What's that? Okay, did you say hyperthyroid? Just curious how you have evidence of that?
So we, there are national surveys that are done and so based on looking at that data, there's not any significant.
Do you have studies or was there studies?
No, there's not studies that have been done.
I don't think you can really say that about studies. So I appreciate, I do appreciate your, your presentation, but I, I don't think that that is a, a correct point.
Okay. Anyone else?
So I was going to ask, can you provide any or a single randomized controlled trial on the safety and effectiveness of fluoride?
Can I provide a, I can probably go look up studies, yes. I would have to go back to my office and access all of that.
So randomized controlled trials, though?
I would have to go look at the studies and see what they were done.
Okay. And then my other question, I guess it's more for the ADA. Does the ADA receive money from dental product manufacturers?
I cannot answer that.
Who use fluoride, you know, in their products, do they?
That's not something I can answer.
I know we had someone on there from.
Yeah, I think they're cut off, so I don't.
Did they?
Yeah, so I can't answer that.
After you answer that question, I have a follow-up.
I just wanted.
I want to know who pays Stuart Cooper. You don't have to answer it now.
I think, I think he said he was with a nonprofit.
Yeah, I'm sure he is.
So, so I have a, on your last slide.
We know a lot about nonprofits.
On your last slide, you had on there that scientific groups that are against fluoride zero. I'd like to see if Dr. Hoffman's still on, to see if he'd like to debate that. Like there's zero in the whole world. Like there's zero anybody who is a scientist, it's zero. Just, just a curious point, just a curious point. I'm really not trying to interrupt your.
That's okay, American Cancer Society, the Diabetes Association, those are the groups that they're.
The three-lettered groups, ADA, AMA, CIA, whoever.
Okay. We'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But the feed, I guess, is cut from the people that were on.
Again, would it be possible to actually get your presentation to make sure that we all have access to that and can digest it in our own time?
Yes.
I mean, that's a lot of information and I know you had to skip over a lot of it to.
I did and I apologize.
No, it's totally understandable, but if we could just have that, that would be really beneficial, thank you.
I appreciate all the time you put into that because there's a lot of stuff.
Yeah, that's good, not a problem. Okay, anything else?
Can you, I'm sorry, can you tell, you know the NFL player that you brought up that died from that?
Mike Williams?
Yes. Can you tell me if the water was fluoridated in that area?
Where he lived?
Yes.
Well, he lived in several different areas. Tampa Bay is fluoridated where he spent about fifteen years. I don't know, I would have to go search through all of his records.
He was fluoridated fifteen years.
Yeah, like where he lived at prior to that. But he wound up opening his construction business in Tampa Bay. So I'm assuming that that's where he stayed after. So it'd be about sixteen years, I guess, that he was there. But I don't know, before that, I did not look up like his history or anything.
Thank you.
So in your presentation, you mentioned that some of the countries that don't have fluoridated water widely accessible, they fluoridate their salt and their milk. I haven't looked into milk very much, but as far as the salt, those countries, do they fluoridate all of their salt?
Yes. Yes. Yeah, it's just, it's just something that they do. Like Japan does a school-wide mandatory fluoride rents that you have to do, you know, so many times a week. It's not a choice, the kids participate and that's what they do. It's kind of like with us, you know, we fortify bread. We fortify our salt with iodine, things like that. So they treat it similarly there.
So some of the European countries, like Switzerland, Germany, have a significant portion of their population using fluoridated salt. That doesn't mean that they fluoridate all of their salt. Why could we not follow their suit and have an option, since it's such a contentious issue, have a simple, cheap option so that people can choose whether or not they want the fluoride, the fluoride in their diet?
So I can't speak as to why the FDA or some, you know, a manufacturer hasn't made that an option here. I don't know. Unfortunately, I, that's the best answer I can give you because I don't control that, so it makes it hard for me to answer that.
Gwen, I had one thought that, that came to mind, I was just kind of, I think you said that those that are lower income are twice as likely to deal with tooth decay. The only thing that struck me in that is that I would assume that, that those with low income would have just as much accessibility to fluoridated water, though. So probably what you find a big decline is actually like tooth hygiene where you're doing more topical treatments. Am I thinking of that correctly? Like that was what came to my mind as we were talking about that, that it actually may be more of like the use of proper tooth hygiene or fluoride topically. Because I'd assume that those with low income would still have access to tap water in many cases.
Yes, most of it, most of the time if they're lower income, that's probably what they have to drink is tap water. They're probably not going to, most likely be buying, I'm not going to say, I'm just, you know, they're probably not going to be buying as much bottled water or having colagin delivered or, you know, filtration systems put in their home and things like that. So, yes, that would be.
So arguably, the more important, and I'm not trying to get you to take a strong stance, but arguably the more important would be, of course, proper tooth hygiene or topical treatment on the tooth.
I can't say that, no. Water fluoridation goes hand in hand with brushing your teeth, going to the dentist, you know, twice a year, doing topical fluoride treatments at the dentist's office or at school if you have access to them. So no, I would not say that topical replaces water fluoridation, no. I think it's just part of the toolkit that we have as a prevention measure.
Thank you. Any other questions for Gwen? Thank you, Gwen.
All right, I appreciate your guys' time. Thank you very much.
So how does council want to proceed? I'm, I'm a little surprised that some of you are wanting these reports and you want to slug through them. It seems like we're reaching the point where there's a lot of repetition in what you're going to hear, but it's, it's an observation, so what do you want to do?
Well, I, I had some people reach out to me that wanted to make comments and I think that they can't really make comments till Citizens Communications. I don't.
I mean, would it be strange to allow people that are here to speak on fluoride so we could hear?
They're welcome to speak in the citizens' comments. I mean, that's where opinions are expressed.
Right, I understand that.
This, this is not an opinion part of the meeting, but they are certainly welcome to speak in citizen comments.
I think the prudent course of action here would be, you know, once we get all of the, the presentations and the, the list of studies and, and everything else from our presenters today, to then allow council some time to digest that information and then present the question back. What do we want, how, how would we want to proceed if we do anything? I know that, you know, personally, I would, you know, there, when Mr. Cooper was speaking, it was, it was just a wall of information and it was hard for me to digest all of that, just sitting here, hearing it for the first time. So I would like to personally go through that all before making a decision about, or even, you know, entering into an informed debate about whether, what we're going to do or not to.
I agree.
If we were wanting to proceed, would we also consider like a public hearing of some sort, Mayor, or John, since it's so impactful to the entire community?
I don't think so. I think, I think the public can certainly pick up the phone and call and email you, which they do for certain other things. Citizen communication's always available.
Okay. Just wasn't sure.
So, yeah, citizens should weigh in clearly, but I don't know that we need a public hearing.
Class legal, this could be maybe later if we wanted to proceed, because there was, some of those brought up about like actual lawsuit, like class action lawsuit that occurred. Do you have input in respect to that, that if Ralla made the decision to remove fluoride, do you see that as a big concern? Or a concern, I should say?
You know, I've heard, I've heard two speakers over the presentations that we've heard mention the Buffalo, New York lawsuit. I don't know anything about it beyond what people have mentioned. So is there a risk? Yeah, there's always a risk that you could be, could be sued. I really, you know, I, I, I think as far as I know, and I'm guessing since nobody else has mentioned any other lawsuits, that that's probably the only lawsuit on the subject. So it's hard for me to identify what the risk level is with one instance in the entire United States.
I'm not a lawyer, but I think where they got tripped up on was without, without the notification.
I agree.
Probably where they got.
I mean, because it sounds like a lot of communities within Missouri has been removing it and across the country, so.
So if, if we want to change, we would have to go the route of an ordinance.
Sure.
Change it.
Yep.
Okay, there's some very, very patient people here tonight.
Yes, there is.
Moving on to old business, the first item is an ordinance to enter to an agreement with Institiform, Darren.
So the last meeting, council awarded the bid, a low bidder on project number five eighty, the, for the Gail Bowman Storm Surveille Rehab, to Institiform Technologies. So tonight, staff is requesting the final reading and the ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter the contract for five hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and eight six cents. Again, this is a seventy-thirty match from DNR using offer funds. Is there any questions?
Any questions for Darren? If not, final reading, please.
An ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute a certain agreement between the city of Ralla, Missouri and Institiform Technologies USA LLC.
I'll make a motion.
Terminal second. Motion made in second, any further discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Welch?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Steen?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Jackson?
He stepped out.
Hawn?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Bradley?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Here he comes.
Jackson?
Will we vote on it?
Not fluoride. The awarding of the bid to Institiform for the lining.
Aye.
Love and ice.
Warrants is proof. Next item is an ordinance to amend both chapter forty-two and chapter twenty of the code pertaining to overnight shelters and soup kitchens to allow an exception for existing facilities.
Mayor, I don't know if I need to go through the summary again. We reviewed this all two weeks ago and so the write-up in the packet pretty much gives the history on this particular bill that's been submitted before city council. They held the first reading at the last city council meeting. Of course, this is regarding overnight shelters, soup kitchens currently regulated in chapter forty-two. The proposal, of course, to move it to chapter twenty under a licensing provision. In that language is exception, an exception specifically for the mission facility in existence is of January one of two thousand and twenty-four. With the changes from tonight's view from what you saw two weeks ago, is that there was a motion by council to reduce from five years to three years, a period in which time the mission would need to install a sprinkler system in the facility. And then there was a suggestion to add the redundancy of the wording for the exception, not only in chapter forty-two, but to also include that in chapter twenty. So in section twenty point oh two two subsection F, that language has been added, basically the same language that was already proposed in the previous draft, other than the five years to three years. So this is submitted for city council's consideration for a final reading and happy to answer any questions about the history or what got us here tonight or any actions that council would like to take.
I'm going to accept the motion as written.
Okay. I was.
Motion on the floor.
Yeah, that's fine.
You made a motion to do what?
Accept as written.
Okay, is there a second?
Josh will second.
So motion is exception.
Exception.
Second. Discussion, Megan.
So discussion, part of the discussion, I know that the Downtown Business Association has asked the two, two, two meetings, for two meetings now, to be able to weigh in on this topic. And they did submit a sampling of the incidents that they have gone through in the downtown area. And so I'm going to go ahead and read those because they are people that need to have their voices heard. So the sampling of incidents submitted by the Ralla Downtown Business Owners and Property Owners, which continue, which they continue to endure, had someone arrested inside the mission because her backpack was filled with merchandise she stole from my business an hour before. She stated that it was my fault because I did not search her backpack before she left my business. Several hundreds, several hundred dollars of my merchandise was found. Had an exterior steel back door busted through, the interior back door busted through to break into my business. Came to work at nine thirty AM to have my permitted parking spot, which cost a three hundred dollar fee to have, be filled with six homeless men sitting in a circle, drinking hard liquor and breaking glass bottles so that I could not park in my space. We had camera footage of drug deals happening in the, happening in the night next to our dumpster. One person planted, one person plants drugs, one person plants the drugs in my dumpster. Within an hour, another person came and removed the items from the dumpster. The police immediately knew who they were from the camera footage. They were individuals who came to Ralla to be at the mission. I was told that they were evidently kicked out of the mission, but then they had just stayed on, but then they, but then they have just stayed on the streets of Ralla. Had a window valued at two thousand dollars broke and had to replace it. A twenty-year-old staff member at nine AM had two homeless people follow her, less than two feet away from her car, all the way back to the, all the way to the back door of our business. She turned around and said, what are you doing? They then backed away. The staff member thought that they intended to push past her once the door was unlocked and rush into the back of our building. Okay. A, a fine event for families with children was planned on the sidewalk in front of my, in front of our business, only to be interrupted by a homeless woman dressed only in a bra, panties and unbuttoned jacket, yelling, screaming and punching the building. The Ralla Police Department had to come and remove her, but the child, but the children were very scared and the families left. Our event ended. Someone at night set a fire in the alley behind our building. There was a stabbing at Sixth and Pine Street in the middle of the day. We had to lock our doors and keep our customers safe until the issue was resolved with police cars and ambulance sirens all in the middle of the day, not great for shoppers to feel, to feel safe. A contractor working on our business during the day had his workbench and tools stolen while he was working in our building. The Ralla Police Department knew immediately the homeless man was someone who frequents the mission. the mission when they saw the camera footage. The man was, the man was found, the items collected, and our contractor had to chain all of his equipment to keep it from being stolen during the day again. I had to pay $1,200 on approved engineering plans to allow that construction project on our building. We had installed panic buttons at our checkout counters because our staff feels unsafe. There was a point-blank shooting from a drug deal where someone died in the alleyway of our back door. We had trash, we have trash and needles around our building and property on a daily basis. Our client, our clients constantly are being approached or intimidated by homeless people as they walk in the public parking lots across from the mission. We lose revenue from people not wanting to come to our business because they do not feel safe. Homeless people are doing drugs, smoking marijuana, and defecating on our sidewalks and alleys. Homeless people are sleeping on the benches and under our benches. The sheer number of ambulances, police cars, and fire trucks constantly in our downtown are directly connected to the mission. It keeps, to the mission, keeps remaining residents that are downtown not safe. We constantly have homeless looking into our cars, breaking into our cars, and especially customers' cars left for service overnight and stealing idle items from them. Our clients report seeing drug deals, making our downtown feel very unsafe. This negatively impacts our revenue. All of these incidences are making it more difficult to run a business downtown. People don't want to go to a place that doesn't feel safe. Ralla is turning into what St. Louis and Springfield have in their neighborhoods where these homeless shelters are located. Instead of being an asset to the community and actively making it a better place, it's becoming a place to crash and party with no respect for our property. As a business owner, I have had multiple encounters going to the post office early in the morning and being cornered by a homeless man. He was yelling at me and, he was yelling at me and keeping, kept backing me in the corner. I was fortunate enough to get away. I had to look around, I have to look around before I entered the post office and feel very uncomfortable each trip. The homeless often sleep inside the post office if it's cold. We had a homeless lady come into our business yelling at us, crying and active, and acting very distressed. She became very scared. We tried to help her. We had to call the police, but no one showed up. There are needles on Pine Street, poop in many different places, such as our planters, at our front, at our front and back doors, behind cars, it's everywhere. We have seen homeless having sex at the van shell and on the hoods of parked cars next to the mission. One man was offering sex for anyone for a fee in our downtown. We had a staff member trying to park her car by our business and being confronted by three homeless people yelling at her and coming straight towards her. We have gone as far as having more cameras installed around our property due to the issues we are dealing with. This is adding, this is adding to our expenses that we already have from the continuous damaged property, from the continuously damaged property. We have had to change our hours because we do not feel safe. We should not have to close early because of these issues and feel this, and feel this way in our own office. It is a disservice to our customers. People going through our dumpsters and throwing trash all over our property, this is a daily occurrence. Had a homeless man break in twice while we were under construction, had someone living under our stairs and didn't want to move, saw on camera a lady walk up and take a concrete block that supported our gutter drain, paid $4,000 in repair to our drain with teeth flossers after the homeless stuffed them in the drain. Homeless, the homeless stole copper from my HVAC system. Yes, we have that on camera. It never feels safe in the early mornings. The homeless pace up and down the sidewalks all day and yell at each other. We have those little alcohol, we have those little alcohol bottles everywhere, thrown everywhere. At 8:30 a.m. last week, a homeless man was standing at the start of Pine Street peeing for everyone to see. Not great for attracting visitors or customers. The homeless allowed their dogs to poop on the sidewalks and alleyways. They don't pick it up. We have to do that. They leave clothing and trash under our stairwell daily. We have multiple instances of breaking and entering, both from kicking in doors and breaking our windows. We frequently have to remove used needles, whippets, human experiment, and many, and old manners of debris from our alleys and blind corners or adjacent properties. Over the past four to five years, our downtown is being destroyed and our property devalued. Repair expenses from damages are constant. One of, one of my staff had over $1,000 in fraud on a local store credit card. The shipping address for items the staff hadn't purchased was tracked to the mission address. It was determined after the investigation that the only way the fraud could have occurred is that her mail had been stolen from her mailbox. We had a call, we had to call the police on someone shooting up in our restaurant bathroom and passing out. There are frequent camps set up in our alley when people, with people sleeping, eating, drinking, or doing drugs and pooping. An employee's car, an employee's car was hijacked after an aggressor pulled a knife on the employee. It is hard enough to own a small business, but the homeless are destroying our investments. These are from many businesses downtown. These are things that they're experiencing. And so, you know, we can try to shame them and shake our heads and all of that, but this is people's real stories that they've experienced, and we can't invalidate that. That's something I, I wanted to add there, just to make sure that they, they are heard. And I would also, while I'm at it here, since there is a motion to approve, I guess I would like to ask, when it comes to enforcement, with this exception, who, who's going to enforce it?
City.
Oh, the city is. So the city has had a decade to enforce.
That's not fair.
No, it is, it is absolutely.
No, it's not, not because the city did not have.
You set a precedent the last decade, decade of where you don't enforce. So tell me, tell me how, you know, you say the city's going to enforce. So is the city going to go to the mission and verify that there's only 46 people there? How often are you guys going to do that? And who at the city is going to enforce it? Is it John? Mayor, are you going to go enforce it? Are you going to go and check and see how many people are at the mission? It's a valid question.
I'm not going to answer it. John, if you want to answer it, you could.
We drew codes and fire.
Okay, so codes and fire, but we haven't enforced it before. So how routinely are we going to check and make sure there's only 46 individuals at the mission?
I don't know yet.
We don't know. So we're asking council to vote on this exception, but we don't know. What about the, the three years to come into compliance with fire code, which we don't do for anyone else? We, we, if people aren't abiding by fire code, we shut them down. That's what we do. We don't, we don't give them an exception. So here we're going to do three years of an exception. Do you have goals of when, what do we do at the year mile, mile, you know, at the year mark? What's at two years? Are they supposed to be at a certain position with this fire, you know, with the sprinkler system? None of that's in here. This exception is not okay. It's just a blanket, here you go, we're making an excuse, you know, we're going to go ahead and make this exception, we'll never do it for anybody else, but we sure as heck will do it for you. This is not okay. And all the, all the, all the things, everyone on this council, I think that you're all very good-hearted, but think about the exception and not having any kind of detail. Don't know who's going to enforce it, don't know, you know, are we going to say, be at this point at the year mark, be at this point at the two-year mark? We mentioned 1,600 square feet. John, did anybody go measure the mission?
No.
No. No one went and measured the mission. The 1,600 square feet that we got was.
I think we got a floor plan.
We did measure it.
We, you got, you got a floor plan, but the 1,600 square feet, where did that come from?
The diagram, floor plan.
Well, whenever I asked before, it was Ashley gave us those numbers. No offense, Ashley, but I think somebody should probably make sure that the 1,600.
After that, when you complained about that, they went down and measured it.
I didn't measure it.
The staff created a floor plan.
What staff member went and measured it?
Floor plan was from the mission, from their architect.
So no one from the city has measured?
No.
Okay, all right. So those are my points with the exception, and I, I pray to God that the council understands that there's a, there's a big, there's a lot of inconsistencies there with that. I will also go ahead and mention the table since I'm talking on this. The table we don't mention, we haven't talked about it. Back on June 11th of this year, planning and zoning recommended for council to deny changing the table in any way. Our advisory board mentioned to, or recommended, they recommended unanimously, recommended that we do not change the table. Their advisory board, they're recommending we don't change the table. Mr. Fredley, Councilman Fredley had mentioned it before. There is a lot of, a lot of problems with this, and so I will absolutely vote no on this. I just want to tell everyone that. I mean, I'm sure you assumed it because I've brought up many of the concerns, but I want you to seriously take the emotion out of it and seriously weigh those things in. That's, that's it.
Any other council discussion?
So in the event that if this were to pass, I would want to make sure that this document is as close to what we can do right as possible. Obviously, we'll come down to that point here soon, maybe. One of the things that I had concern on is in both Section 20.022 and 42.209. It's in those two sections because it's duplicate language. I was concerned because it just blanketly says any, I'll just read it, any facility that contains both an overnight shelter and soup kitchen, which was in operation prior to January 1st, 2024, shall be allowed to continue operation in the C1 district. My concern was is that it doesn't actually say that they have to remain in that location in the C1 district. So I was going to make a motion to amend that it adds the language that would be only at that current location, so that they would can, that they would be allowed to continue in that current location, not just any C1 district, was what my concern was. So I'll read it whole as I have it, and then, so I would make a motion to amend that any facility that contains both an overnight shelter and a soup kitchen, which was in operation prior to January 1st, 2024, shall be allowed to continue operation only at their current location in the C1 district, this provision of this section notwithstanding.
We have a motion on the floor as written, so.
I made a motion to amend.
Okay, just making sure we're following through.
There's a motion.
Is that doable?
Yeah, you can amend.
No, I don't mean that the process of amending is what they think suggesting doable.
Well, it's doable, I will say, and I think we've kind of discussed this before. We did not find that to be necessary because if they move to another location, then it's now no longer a facility that was, you know, established.
It says that the entity was in existence, not, not necessarily in that location.
No, it's a facility.
Facility. So the facility has to have been, you know, located, has to have been in operation before. So if they start somewhere else, they won't be a facility that was in operation before that date. It'll still be the same entity, it's just in a different facility, so it, it doesn't pertain.
I wanted the extra clarity. I ran that, I emailed that, I, I remember I ran that by you last time, Nathan. I, I know you felt it was duplicate language. There's been so much not clear leading up to now, I wanted things as clear as we move forward from this point, so.
Nathan, could you restate what your amendment is, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
So my motion to amend the language in Section 20.022 and 42.209 would state, any facility that contains both an overnight shelter and a soup kitchen, which was in operation prior to January 1st, 2024, shall not be allowed to continue operation, shall, shall be allowed to continue operation only at their current location in the C1 district, the provisions of this section notwithstanding.
That's a motion.
That was my amend, my motion to amend.
And we can act on that if they second it, right? Okay. Is there a second on Nathan's motion?
I second the motion.
Motion made in second. Any further discussion on that?
Just to be clear, you're, so you're only adding the word only?
No.
Only at their current location. So it's only at that current location would be the added language.
Any further discussion on that proposed amendment?
And that's to both sections, correct, Nathan?
Yes, sir.
Just wanted to make sure.
So I just want to add a little bit more here to Megan and what she had to say, and more to the very latter of that. You guys know this has been going on a way before we ever walked in these doors, and nothing has been, I think, up to this point, ever been made clear, clear, clear. Megan brought up some good points at the end of the pieces that she read that do need to be clear, that we all need to be on the same page on and all need to understand our direction going forward. Where that takes this amendment or ordinance, I'm not sure, but I think those things do need to be addressed and do need to be talked about. We're, we're making a major decision here, and we need to make what we feel is the right one. So I think all of the pieces need to be included in whatever we do.
And just to point a clarity here, if we, if this is passed as written, we're allowing a facility to go in less than 750 feet from a daycare. Am I correct? We're also giving an entity the right to operate and not follow fire code for up to three years. What happens if something happens to that facility? What is the liability on the city? I worry about those pieces. I also worry about what you said, Megan. I know that I ran the last council meeting and I gave every person three minutes, and I understand the Downtown Business Association represents a far more, far greater number of people, and, and I was certainly not trying to be rude by cutting them out, but I felt like it was the right way to run the meeting. I appreciate the fact that you read those concerns. There are many business owners that have reached out to us that do not want to speak in public, and I understand that. It can be a challenge. My biggest concern with this is no matter what we do today, we're going to end up in court, and we all know it. So we have to make the decision based on what we think is the right thing for our city.
Absolutely.
And that's, that's where I am.
So I want to add to that. Part of what I just said is, is in my mind protections for the mission as well, because no matter what happens going forward, if they're still open tomorrow, just as they were today, they're going to get picked apart. They're, they're going to, everything they do is going to be under a bigger microscope, and it's not under a huge one now, but under a bigger microscope than it already is. So we need to have things clear and understood as we move forward.
So Kevin, to that, oh, sorry.
Let me just ask a question. Go back to this issue of inspection, which I take exception because what was done over the 10 years with not having clarity with things beyond building codes and stuff is debatable. But let me ask John for him to say right to the public, if this is enacted, is it clearly our intent to enforce what is on this piece of paper?
Yes. The whole idea of moving into licensing kind of elevates it to a process that has got the same process as any other business license.
Okay.
So it's going to require finance departments, development, fire departments, community development, code inspection, all of that.
Okay. And the staff knows what's expected of them?
Well, subject to whatever gets approved, but yeah.
All right. Go ahead, Kevin.
So, so back to what you just said and back to what John just said, give us a very, very, very short, if we vote yes, this is what happens at 8 o'clock tomorrow, and if we vote no, this is what happens at 8 o'clock tomorrow.
If you vote yes, with the exception, just as it is.
Yes, sir.
With amendment, then they become subject to licensing and we'll, we'll start the process for the issuance of a license for them. So I can't remember if it's, I think it runs Nathan's calendar here, if I remember. So I can't remember if it's, I think it runs Nathan's calendar here, if I remember. So that would really gear up to do it for 2025. If council votes no on it, then it's a legal issue. Council's got to make some decisions and give some direction. If they don't take any action here, we're back to where we are today with a gray area on all of this, and any formal action's going to be, have to be authorized by council.
You got two choices. You either turn a blind eye, or you take legal action to shut them down.
Okay, but again-
Hold on, let me, we'll come back to you, Kevin. You asked a question.
No, you, you answered my question. I just, I want to make sure it's clear.
So, so when you say shut them down, again, who's, who's going to enforce that?
The court.
Okay, because, I mean, the city has shown-
I'm assuming it's the court, right? We need an injunction?
We would need an injunction to have them thrown out of their building.
But, but the city has shown that they've never, they've never enforced, so it's, it's really hard since the history has shown-
Who's the city? Are you, are you part of the city?
Administration. I'm, I'm, I'm an elected official by the, by the people of this community, and I'm being a voice for them, so, you know, since fire code and all these other issues have been turned a blind eye to this whole time, what's-
I know you don't want to hear this, but prior to a certain date-
I know, you're going to be offended, I get it.
That fire code was not an issue.
Okay, well, it's strange because they were, they were in C-1 zoning this whole time before the ordinance even-
In C-1 zoning prior to the new ordinance being enacted-
Right.
Would allow a restaurant. So a soup kitchen is going to certainly meet all the same requirements of a restaurant, so that was an issue.
And we had been over that part of, you know, I asked Nathan, does C-1 zoning allow for an overnight shelter? The answer was absolutely no, it does not. That was prior to the ordinance.
Correct, and that was seasonally done.
Right, well-
So what the, what the staff administratively did was allow the overnight shelters a part, I'm sorry, the soup kitchen is a part of a initial church ministry that became a 501(c)(3). Then they allowed the seasonal winter use of the overnight stays in chairs. Once the request became to do something more than that, we said, there's no more, there's too much gray in what we're trying to apply here. This is going to have to be a subject that the city council takes up, and that's quite frankly what we've been doing for the last four or five years, taking up those issues. The issues of codes of the suppression system over the, over the stove was enacted, adopted, recognized by staff, enacted, the exits enacted, the bedroom that was in there was removed. So the only gray area is the-
The bed.
Is, is the sprinkler, but the gray area in the sprinkler is in the 2000 code, which was in, in effect until 2019, has an exception for overnight stays. So there's a lot of gray still that comes into play in all of this. So the, the, the new code was adopted in 2019, the new building code. Now, when they went from seasonal to year-round, I think that changed the interpretation of whether that's assembly or whether that's residential.
Well, I know-
And that's where we've sort of been ever since then.
I know when, you know, Councilman Fredly had asked, you know, the, the very simple question, is what's going on currently? Is that putting lives at risk with, by, due to fire safety issues? And the answer was yes. Yes, it is. So every single day that goes by, you are putting somebody's life at risk.
I don't know if I would word it that way. We've got lots of places, commercial, residential, multifamily, that don't have sprinkler systems. So what you do in the alternate is you put in smoke detectors and other systems and checks that are in place to sort of minimize risk, but you're right, there is risk there.
I respect you, John, but I do think that's an excuse, you know, I-
We are making excuses, quite frankly, it's a-
And so I just want to go back to you, Kevin, with, you know, you said detailed, that we need detailed things and that this is a big issue to vote on. So again, going back to what I said, why in the world, why in the world would we vote on an exception that there's so many questions? You know, and again, planning and zoning for the table, they recommended that we denied, unanimously recommended that we denied the table.
Any other council persons that want to speak?
Mayor, can I ask the fire chief to come up here?
Sure.
Just want clarity, is this all under the conversation, under the amended motion?
I know.
Yes.
Yes, we're still under the amendment.
So does the discussion have to surround that, or does it matter? It can just be open for discussion?
It really, it really, it really should be just about that amendment, but we've kind of crossed that along.
Wouldn't be bad to vote on that amendment, isn't it?
I don't want to be, I don't want to be accused of anything, so there's a motion, stay right there. There's a motion on the floor and a second.
Yeah.
Want to repeat the motion before they vote?
Or is there any more discussion on that?
Is there any more discussion on that?
I just don't want to get lost in like, we're moving to kind of the next thing, we haven't really voted on the-
The amendment.
Read your motion.
Just trying to keep it organized.
His motion was to amend it, to say, to amend 20.022 and 42.209, to read, any facility that contains both an overnight shelter and a soup kitchen, which was in operation prior to January 1st, 2024, shall be allowed to continue operation only at their current location, which was what was being added, right?
Correct.
In the C-1 district, the provisions of this section notwithstanding.
And to be clear, we're only voting on the amendment, we're not voting on the motion as a whole.
Correct.
Okay, so we don't have to, but let's do a roll call vote.
Johnson?
No.
Fredley?
No.
Steen?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Hunter?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bulch?
Yes.
Grevan?
Yes.
Kessinger?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Now, we'll be back to you.
I, I would like to make an amendment to remove the recommendations by administration for the table.
That's our order. Josh has the floor.
Chief, is the mission up to fire code?
So are we considering no sleeping quarters like they have now? Yes, they're up to code as an assembly. If, if we're going to say that there are one, which I think that's, you guys have to determine that. So when you guys determine that there are one, that they're going to stay in place, then we kick in the, the sprinkler system. So, so then they would not be in compliance.
Okay, so-
Chief, define R1 now.
Yeah, it's not a-
So it's not, I'm not talking about zoning, I'm talking about-
Okay.
In the fire code, it's, it's considered a residential rather than an assembly.
Right.
So I don't do zoning.
So if this, if this passes, they would be in, considered in your book, fire terms, R1, and that you would require them to have a sprinkler system. So in effect, right out the gate, they would not be up to code.
So if, if you guys, if you guys both vote for this, you, you vote for them to stay as, as your document says, as the ordinance says, then you're giving them permission to operate as a R1. So with that as an R1, you also have a three-year timeframe for them to get the sprinkler system. So there is provision and code for that, and it is recommended and used by the state fire marshal's office and is used by the city of Ralla Fire and Rescue. When we have an occupancy like a motel, that, let's say the alarm system breaks, isn't working, the sprinkler system isn't working, we don't go in there and just kick out all their, all their occupants. We, we require them to have a documented fire watch. That is approved in code, it is part of code, it's in IFC, there's an approved form, they have to document, you know, somebody has this, has this stay up, and they have to document a fire watch. That documentation comes back to my office, in this case, because of the duration, it'd probably be once a month. Those are all details to work out, that's, I mean, I'm telling you that for the first time, and everybody's hearing that for the first time, but those, those are elements that have to be worked out within the system as far as how often they, they come. But, you know, we did the same thing with Kroger Grocery Store had put in a new sprinkler system, so they were without fire protection, so they had to do a fire watch. They had to document that and had to take, bring that documentation to my office. Happens in motel rooms, it happens basically any place that has that, has to have a sprinkler system if that system is down. We don't make them cease operations. So as that, there has to be a plan in place that is a, is, because this isn't a long-term situation, this isn't a forever fix to have fire watch, so there has to be a designated timeframe in which to get this done. Your, your proposed ordinance has that, it has that designated timeframe. The designated timeframe has to be, in most cases, outside of this ordinance, has to be agreed upon by the HJ. So the fire chief is the authority having jurisdiction, so the fire chief usually makes those provisions.
So Chief, are you done?
I was just going to say, so what, I was, if you could just kind of explain what a fire watch is.
So it means a lot of different things depending on the occupancy, depending on, on what the use is. So in this case, we're talking specifically about the mission, they would have to have staff personnel that are up, and they have to do, they have to do physical fire watch. So they have to document who did it, they have to document the time, the date, and that has to be done every single night. So it would really be in their best interest to have the sprinkler system done quickly as possible to not, not have to do that, but that document puts the onus on them as far as the safety component of their building.
I've got a, I've got another question. If they don't fill that document out, what happens?
Well, it'll be in violation, and so, so then there, there are a couple different things you can do with that. I, I would say probably what I would do is, at this point, because of this conversation, I'd give that to my boss, and my boss would probably share that with our, our law firm, our lawyer. But typically, what that happens is, is that's, that's a breach in that plan. So that's a breach in this three-year plan, so that would have to be either reassessed or pulled.
Okay, and I just want to reiterate real quick that the fire watch is a contingency plan that was put in the code books in case something like this or an existing business whose fire sprinkler systems or alarm systems have failed, they can still operate.
Correct.
Not even necessarily have failed, but have been taken down for maintenance or are being upgraded for other reasons.
Sure.
For some reason, whatever, the system is offline-
Right.
So then there's a required extra watch, and that's to mitigate the risk.
Correct, so, so-
Between S and T and, and the businesses in Ralla, I'd say at least once a month, somebody's in a fire watch.
Okay.
And that is documented back to me.
So I guess I would ask, I know there was, and I don't know the details of, of this, but there was a building that was downtown that did not have, I guess their sprinkler system, something malfunctioned, and I think they were given 30 days. Does everybody get the opportunity for the fire watch?
So we typically don't, it, it's hard to give a timeframe. So in the wintertime, when, when it gets super cold and we, we end up busting sprinkler systems all over town. So what we usually do is, is listen to what the plan is. So they have to get with their sprinkler company, the sprinkler company gives us a timeframe that it would take to fix that, and that is that plan. So it's not a one-size-fits-all, it depends on the duration of the, of the repairs.
Okay, so it depends on?
So, you know, if it's a Walmart-sized building and there's a lot of destruction of the system-
Yeah, longer.
It's going to take a lot more time to, to repair that.
No, that's understandable, but I had heard that it, that happened to a business where they had gotten, it was like 30 days to figure it out type of thing.
Possible. A, a lot of it is how well the owner of the business is working with us, too.
Okay, so essentially, if somebody's really kind and they have the sprinkler system, or they don't have a sprinkler system, they could just fire watch it until-
So kind has nothing to do with it.
Okay, no, I mean, I mean, if, if they, well, you said it, it depends on how the owner works with us.
Yeah, in terms of the plan, so they have to have follow-through. It's not like things that, yeah, we'll call the repair guy and we'll get back with you.
Yeah. Yeah, that was kind of my, my issue with the exception with the one-year goal, two-year goal, so, you know, having something in place there.
So in, in a lot of this stuff, and this is stuff that is usually taken care of on our end, so it's, it's really nothing that we've really explained to you guys in, in great detail, but, you know, for instance, if you're looking at a three-year plan, then they're going to have to have a permit within that first year to make that happen. So there are, there are timeframes that, that are going to be into that plan.
Yeah, no, I understand that. I just know this doesn't say permit by this time, this by this time, there's no steps there, it just says three years, so.
So if you guys-
But that's not your fault.
If you guys would like to go with the ordinance, if you like to go with this, then that will start our work, because we'll have to start meeting with the owners of, of the building, I mean, you know, administratively, we'll have to discuss what these timeframes look like.
Yeah.
And so you would develop that, the owner of the building would develop that plan in concert with you?
Between building codes and the fire department, that's, that's typically how it's done with everybody else.
And then you told us when you were here last time that, you know, it would take, you know, if they started tomorrow, it would take about three years, just given, you know, yeah.
The unfortunate part of, every time I come up here and talk, people listen to it, but, but they cherry pick what they want to hear. They're picking little pieces out of what I'm saying, and, and they're taking it out of context.
That's fair.
Thank you, Chief. Well, we appreciate you nonetheless.
I was just going to add, the only other, the section that talks in the ordinance about what is the process for enforcement or notification is subsection K. So if you look at 20.022, subsection K on Roman numeral 3B5, the same thing's over on the chapter 42, but that's the section that at least lays out the general parameters for inspection, compliance. If there's a failure to meet a requirement, there's a 30-day posting. Ultimately, if the operator fails to correct the deficiencies, the administrator, and again, this is both the administrator and designees, authorize to terminate the permit, but the operator may appeal the termination to the Board of Adjustment. That, there is similar language in all of our business license regulations that would allow us to revoke a business license, and it virtually never happens because we end up working through those issues to get resolved. Ultimately, we could, and that appeal in those cases, I think, come to city council, but in this case, it was laid out for Board of Adjustment, but I just wanted to point that out because we had, there's at least some elements of it. Now, it doesn't lay out the detail as to what's the frequency of that, that's going to be systems we're going to have to adopt in working with the, the mission is in compliance, but it's at least guidelines.
John, I got a question on that section right there. It says, if the director finds any deficiencies, who's the director in this case?
It's going to be the city administrator or my designee. The director would be community development director or the fire chief, depending on which of those two areas it would fall under.
Chief, this three-year timeframe, is that unheard of for this type of building, the situation that it's in, the state that it's in?
So that was one of my recommendations, you know, the first time I was called up here, and, and the reason being is, so they have to, they have to hire an engineer, they have to get the drawing of, of what the system looks like, they have to submit those plans to us to do a, a plan review. We, we cross-reference everything they do with code to make sure that it meets our, our, our code, and then they're issued a permit. And then from there, they have to get into a bid process, they have to pick their contractor. Some materials might take, you know, eight, nine, 10 months, just, just to get some of those materials in. So three years is, I mean, there, there should be zero problem in achieving this in under three years. So three years is so that we don't, we don't like to set people up for failure, so likely can do this way before that. I don't design systems, I'm, I'm not going to, I can tell you likely, compared to a lot of businesses like this that, that have had to put a systems in, it's going to be a residential-type system. Residential-type system actually costs quite a bit less money, and, and they should be able to get that installed much quicker, but we're talking about a remodel, not a, not a new build, and remodels have challenges that are unseen. That's why we put, put that kind of timeframe in there, because there, there might be something that, when you start doing a remodel job, sometimes they start small and then huge, so.
So this kind of timeframe, you've seen something relative to this that has taken this long?
I've, I've seen, I've seen issues lately with, with buildings this age and older at S and T when, because they're retrofitting a lot of their buildings with new sprinkler systems, and, and I'm definitely getting firsthand experience in some of the issues that they can come up with, or come against. It's, it's a challenge. In, in this case, I don't anticipate any, any challenges like, you know, you'd have like in the Ralla building or, you know, something that old, but, but you'll definitely have challenges. It's a concrete building, concrete walls.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
I have a question for Chief. Thank you. That's a good answer.
So I'll go ahead and now, since the questions have been asked, make the amendment to not accept the recommendations of changing the table.
Megan, what would that be in practice?
What would that be?
Yeah, what would that be in practice?
Okay, so it would be...
What sections would you actually change and what verbiage would you actually change?
So the table that's in your packet, the zoning table. So planning and zoning recommended on June 11th for council to deny any changes to this table. They're the advisory board to council, and I believe that we should take their advice. And so with that being said, I would like to make an amendment to not accept the changes to the table that administration has put in front of us.
And the changes are marked in red, correct?
Yes.
So anything in red is a difference from what we had before? Is that correct?
Yes.
I'll second that motion.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
So we have a motion.
Let a lawyer answer the question.
Okay.
So if you take that chart out, to Williams' point, it effectively does what? It renders this back to the 2022 ordinance?
Yes, but the table, okay...
Is reflective of the various sections. So it's just a summary of all the things.
Deleting the table or taking the table out doesn't change anything. What you have to do, do what she's talking about, is delete sections four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
So what does all that do? That effectively...
That's all the zoning changes. So that would leave the zoning the way that it is now.
And that's what Plating and Zoning had recommended unanimously.
And what would the, how do the exemptions tie into that?
They would still be exempt.
They would still be exempt. Okay, so there's your answer to your question.
But if it, if the measure fails, then that goes away.
Well, if the measure fails, it all goes away.
That's right. That's why I'm just making that point.
So just to speak for planning and zoning, I'm not weighing in on my view of the charter, advocating for it or anything. But I will say, a lot of this got brought up again when Nathan Nicholas, his new legal counsel, came and made new recommendations. I will say, planning and zoning did not get the benefit of the conversation with legal representatives, legal counsel in that case. So whether that means anything or not, them kicking it back to us was a, we've argued, you were recommendation, which is what it currently stands as with none of this. And so when it went back to them, they're like, we're not touching this. We'd have to go through these things one at a time, one at a time, and we're not doing that. So they said, we just, we motioned to deny it all. You know, if you guys want to change it, then change it on your own, was essentially what it was. But they did not have a conversation, is my point, with legal counsel, to my knowledge, John. At least, they weren't here publicly, as far as I know.
Yeah, that's correct.
But Nathan, did they, they weighed it all out and went through each individual?
No.
No.
No. Definitely not.
When they looked at it, they said, leave it alone.
They said, we already gave you our recommendation. Why are you throwing this back at us again?
We told you the first time to deny it.
That was our recommendation, yeah. And we're not going through this one at a time.
Because they've already done it once.
Let me just add, also, just for a little bit of historical context, on the chart that was enacted in 2022, I'm not even sure what council finally adopted, just what went through P and Z at the time. I can remember, we were doing, I know we did it on the first reading, it seemed to be on the final reading of that ordinance when the council acted. We, council was still making amendments and pulling things out. So our legal counsel at the time had advised, we need to have some areas with permitted uses. And I can remember there was sort of like a series of motions made. Now, we can check out the timing of that. I'm pretty sure that all occurred after P and Z's review of that ordinance even prior. So I agree, I think what Nathan's point is, I'm not sure that P and Z had a lot of discussion over the districts and zones. Now, it came back around the second time on this revision, and they said, look, we passed this thing on to you, we don't want to deal with it again.
We already discussed it once, made the recommendation, and now you bring it back.
I don't know that the P and Z recommendation originally is what got adopted by council in the ordinance in 2022. Because council was making changes at the very end there in some of those districts. And we didn't send it back to P and Z for a comment. So we'd have to go back and kind of find that. But I'm always saying, I'm not sure that P and Z was engaged in the final version that was adopted in 2022. And we can verify that with the minutes and whatnot.
Well, and the concerning thing that comes up is really, in my opinion, the whole reason that a lot of this got brought back up was the major concern of not having a permitted use in some of these zones. Like, to me, it's one of the biggest reasons this is sitting back at our table today is continually being told by legal counsel, like, there needs to be a pathway, there needs to be a permitted pathway. I didn't like that answer originally. I made motions against that to everyone that may feel that way. But at this point, there would be probably three sets of lawyers I'd be disagreeing with, and I'm just not comfortable doing that, even if I personally have a problem with that. So it's just where I am, is what I feel legal counsel is telling us at this point.
Agreed. I know it was pointed out a few different times that we do have different types of businesses that are not, that are not by right, that there's no by right, that it's conditional use across the board, so.
But at least then there's a pathway. But at least then there's a pathway.
Right, but there's no, there's no by right, which there was, there was a pathway prior to.
So that is, that is true, and that's not uncommon in cities. But I would say that most attorneys would say, looking at that, that's not the preferred way to go. Because unless, you have to have a substantial government interest to say that this should not be permitted anywhere.
So do you think...
Except by permission. And the other problem really with conditional uses is that they're badly misunderstood. Okay? People think that conditional uses means, and I think P and Z honestly thinks this, that conditional uses means that it's a subjective decision. That's not true. Conditional use means that it is based on certain conditions have to be met, and those have to put that out in advance. So if I was coming in and somebody was marked as a conditional use, I'd say, you're gonna have to grant this to me. And they'd say, well, no, we want to put conditions on you. And I'd say, that's not in the ordinance. So you must let me in.
Which, if you say, oh, you just must let me in, that's by right?
Which is why conditional uses, if they're not written correctly, as the ones in your existing ordinance are not written correctly, essentially create a by right. So if I was an attorney representing somebody trying to get in on a conditional use, the way that they're written right now in your code, I would argue that they are essentially by right.
So I know when it comes to zoning, and I've said this before, that, you know, the purpose of zoning is to, it's to protect, you know, if you open the Bible of zoning, the front page is gonna say, you know, it's to protect the general welfare and safety and morals of the public. And so what I was gonna say real quick is that, with that being said, if you have a business or nonprofit that is at risk, puts a higher risk, that's safety. You know, you can say it's conditional use, because there are these safety issues. And I think we've heard a lot about all the safety issues.
Okay, I don't think you're listening to me. I'm not saying that you can't have conditional uses. I'm saying is, you have to set out in advance what those conditions are. Your ordinance doesn't say what the conditions are. That means there are no conditions.
So they don't come to you and say, this is conditional use, and then you make up a set of conditions at that point?
Right.
You have to have done it via ordinance prior to them actually ever coming to you.
Right. I mean, talking to you two, you know, who I know have very strong feelings on overreach by the government, that is the most gross overreach by the government, that a board can just decide whatever reason, whatever requirements that they want, you know? They can say, okay, if you want to have a conditional use, you're gonna have to make a donation of $100,000 to, you know, the planning and zoning recreation fund.
So closer to a conditional use would be us saying that you have to be 750 feet away from certain things. So there's, there are areas in a zone that they could belong, but if you are within a certain distance of school, playground, whatever, that would be a condition that you can't actually be there.
They would have to be...
Am I understanding that correctly?
Yeah, exactly. So you'd set out what the conditions are. If those conditions are met, then it would be acceptable at that location. I also want to point out, that's not really what planning and zoning is about in the first place. Planning and zoning is designed to allow different uses to be compatible with each other. Until 19, late 1920s, early 1930s, zoning was unconstitutional. It was considered to be a taking. You couldn't tell people what to do with their property. And it wasn't until the US Supreme Court case of Euclid, City of Euclid, that finally, they said, okay, yes, it will be allowed. But even now, because zoning is considered to be so borderline unconstitutional, the courts all say that you have to follow zoning statutes very strictly. And that's why, is because there's really a presumption against zoning.
Well, we have an ordinance that has guidelines, and so if our, if our table did have conditional use...
It does not have guidelines. What are the, what are the conditions for putting a shelter in, right now they're allowed in...
I mean, it's been butchered a lot over the last, they've brought back and brought back and brought back and...
I was telling you, I looked at it, and I'll tell you what it says. It just says conditional use. It doesn't say here what the conditions are.
Right. So you're saying that it needs, that the ordinance overall, even though it has the purpose and all of that, it would need to add those features back, like the 750 feet?
Whatever you think the conditions are. But for instance, you know, on this table, okay...
What we originally wanted to do?
This table says, for instance, that severe weather shelters under the new will be permitted use in every, every zone, okay? Under your current code, severe weather shelters aren't mentioned at all, okay? So in theory, under the laws that is now, you can't have, you can't shelter people in the winter.
So...
So that has to be changed.
So you're saying we would have to fix it? I mean, obviously, we had a lot of things in there prior to that have been removed throughout this two-year process.
I looked at the zoning code as it existed when I took over, okay? So not two-year process, we're talking, well, now it's probably been a year.
Well, the original motion that was made, was made on February 22nd of 2022, is when we made the motion to adopt a ordinance that would have, that would pertain to overnight, or overnight shelters. That's when that motion was made, and it was based on...
That was before my time.
Yeah.
And that's what's in code, that's what's been in the ordinance right now, what you reviewed.
Right. Took us nine months to get through that, to get there.
Which is nothing.
Is a motion on the floor. We're gonna restate it?
So the motion is to, the motion is to leave the table, the zoning table alone, leave it completely alone, and accept the recommendation of planning and zoning, which was to deny any changes that was done by administration.
That wording is completely different than the original motion. Can I read with the original motion, please?
Read the original, please.
Motion to amend to not accept changes to the table that the administration has presented.
Okay. Is there a second to that?
I seconded earlier, so yes.
The only thing I would add to that, and council certainly can vote on that, if they vote on it, we shouldn't take upon a reading, because we're gonna have to go back into this ordinance and make all kinds of changes then. So I think it's fair to take on that question, but we still have to go back and then reflect the actual wording. But this would give us the direction to do that.
So a no vote does what? Motion to amend?
A no vote keeps the table as is in the presented ordinance.
Right.
Keeps as is in what?
As is in our packets. A no vote...
No motion.
A no vote keeps the table as it is in our packets.
But then in the end, we vote on your motion and we could negate everything, correct? Could potentially, or could not. Okay. Okay. Any further discussion on the motion and second question?
So if the original motion passes, and then this goes, then this would reflect any other mission, or any, not mission, but any other overnight shelter, because the other is exempted. Is that correct? So this is just for, is an outline for that or expansion, correct?
Talking about the exemption now?
No, no, no.
The table?
Yeah, this table right now would apply to either expansion or future entities.
Yes. So if an entity was existing in a zone now, and they were in compliance, and they were expanding in such a way that they would not be in compliance...
Then they have to...
Then they'll have to meet what's in the table. But I want to make it really clear. The table is just an illustration. It's like a graph, okay? What you have to do is delete all of the sections. If you delete the table, or leave the table out as it is, in fact, if you leave the table as it was before, and leave these sections in, the ordinance now contradicts itself.
Yeah. And so Nathan, what I'm suggesting, if council votes to go back to the previous classifications, we need to go back and redo the ordinance and resubmit that. I don't think we should, on the fly, make those motions to pull sections out of this ordinance.
But the motion is just taking the table out. Table's not even necessary.
Yeah, the table is...
But it gives the guidance for the, for the sections that are in there. Here's a visual of it.
Section four through 13...
Is the code.
Are is the code. The table's just illustrating what those sections say.
It's just summarizing.
So the motion is to not act on this table, not to remove the sections out of the ordinance.
It would be removing those sections that were seen to those...
No, your motion is to remove the table, not the, not the sections.
Well, that's...
So just to put, I seconded it. And I want to clarify before we move forward. The intent was to go back to the 2020, my thought was, we were trying to go back to 2022 ordinance, to go back to the table as it was written in 2022.
Yes, absolutely, which is the recommendation of planning and zoning.
I would retract my second, because that's what I thought we were voting, that's what I thought we were trying to say.
We weren't just taking out the picture. That's not what was happening. We were going off the recommendation of planning and zoning. It's a cute analogy to say, hey, let's just take this illustration out of it.
It's not a cute analogy, Megan, but I think it's a little bit actual standard.
But that was your motion, Megan.
But I mean, my motion was to go exactly off what planning and zoning recommended, because there are advisory board.
And Lori, could you read back the motion, please?
So motion to amend to not accept changes to the table that the administration has presented.
So changes being the things that were changed from 2022 till today?
Exactly.
So did you, did you...
My intention was to go back to the zoning that essentially telling you, I mean, my thought was we...
To the original plan.
Which was 2022's ordinance.
Is your motion withdrawn, or are you just saying you would have?
So I can, I can restate...
If it's not clear, I'll withdraw it, but I want to make sure it's clear what we're voting on.
I can restate my motion, just because I think some people have a hard time understanding it. So let me go ahead and restate that, Mr. Hahn. I'll restate it for you. So I'm gonna withdraw my original motion, and then I'm going to state that I would like to amend the ordinance to reflect exactly what planning and zoning had recommended. So that would be the changes within the ordinance and the table.
So Megan, just so we're not, we're all clear, you're...
It's a hard time. I can't...
Let me help you out.
Thank you.
What you want to do is delete sections four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11.
Which is exactly what I was gonna say, which is exactly what Stephen pointed out.
The table will fix itself.
So I want to go back to what Councilman Fridley said. I just want to go back to the ordinance from 2022.
So then you want to remove sections four through 13?
No, not 11, not 12 and 13.
Just 11?
Or 11?
Yeah, stop it.
What's 12 and 13?
12 is severable, it's only put in every ordinance, and 13 is it'll be in full force and effect on its passage, which you have to have an effective date.
Okay. And Nathan, just to clarify, if this passes to remove all of those, that would go very much against your recommendation of there being a permitted use in each of the zones?
Yes.
Or for each of the entities in, at least in one zone?
Yes.
Okay.
So it is now a motion to delete sections four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, and 11? Yes or no?
I just, I want to go back to the 2022...
And I don't want to nip that, but I'm gonna go back.
And the reason I say it that way, because there's been a lot of, you know, pulling here, taking out of this, so I want to go back to more...
We didn't do it.
Yeah, okay.
But let me go back to what John said. He's not 100% sure what Plating and Zoning did recommend. So I think the safe thing is, you either default to that and live with the consequence, or you do it and take out the sections that are in front of you. I think you're leaving yourself at risk if it turns out...
I I think you're leaving yourself at risk if it turns out that that's not what Plin Z actually did.
So again, I just want to make a motion to go back to the 2022.
So you didn't hear a word I said?
Yeah, I mean.
All right.
Go back, okay, so your motion's to go back to the 2022 ordinance that we had in place.
Is that clear to you?
I don't think that's a valid motion.
No. It's not clear.
You you have to amend it, say, I want to change this in this bill.
Okay, so.
What do you want to change in this bill?
Okay, so I want to, ready? I want to amend it to remove the table and anything that pertains, or I'm sorry, I should say. So anything that is in red in the table. I want it to go back to, back to what we currently have, I mean, it's, I don't, I don't think it's hard to understand.
There's a second to that motion?
So my challenge with seconding that, and I'm not seconding here, but is that it's not clear enough, and I'm making, I'm not trying to be rude, but I think tonight's moot, our vote on this could very well do exactly what you're saying. If this does not pass tonight, we essentially say we go back to 2022's ordinance. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So pulling this apart and taking everything out, I think, is is secondary to to the final vote. And I I hope that whenever we get to that point, we'll see what the outcome is.
And that was, that was my thought process, is that doing both of these things, I think, are very detrimental to the community, and so I thought, you know, it might be best to address.
It it's easier, if that's what you want, then it's easier not to vote on what's in front of you because you will naturally default back to the November 2022.
Right, I understand that, I just hope that there's there's enough people willing to do what's right by the people they represent.
So a no vote on the original motion made by Mr. Hahn effectively puts us back, unless someone brings up something else, back to 2022 ordinance, am I correct?
Yes.
Then I have no desire to.
We'll roll the dice, then I'll remove my motion.
Sorry, question, maybe John, maybe Nathan, so say this does pass, if you go back to the page I was on earlier. Say this passes, there is instruction for things like security cameras, outside property, shelter free, free of trash, have to maintain within one block of the property, how quickly does that? Well, two questions, one, do they, do they fall under that requirement?
They did.
Okay, two, how quickly is that expectation, I'm assuming, unless there's an exception given, that expect, so if they didn't, they may, I have no idea, have security cameras in the places or whatever they're specified. They would have to start, they're currently would not be in compliance if they didn't have security cameras instantly.
I would bet that the staff would have to develop like an application of some sort.
Sure.
And the staff would go over with them and have to apply for a license and either granted or denied.
But unlike where we're giving three years for fire code, this would be something that they're in, not in compliance, who need to start working immediately with to come into compliance, am I understanding that correctly?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is there any deadlines on that?
There's not, because I don't know. I don't know how long it's going to take staff to come up with the forms, or how long it'll take them to fill out the forms.
So we have no clue what the deadline would be.
Nathan, the first.
I disagree with that, you know, I think you're wanting to micromanage, you know, the the, you do have a clue, and I want to get back to your statement earlier where you said, you're not the city, you are absolutely the city. This council is the city.
Yeah, I guess I should say I'm not a city employee.
You all speak for the city, all right? So if you don't think the staff is moving fast enough, that's on your all's shoulders.
Right, that's a good, that's a good point, and it kind of goes back to the, you know, the guidelines. What do you do in one year, what do you do in two years?
How long do you want them to have to fill out the forms?
Nathan, would you want to put something in here that says that staff has to have all of this implemented within so much, so many days after its passage? And that's, that's, that's fairly standard, that like, you know, all right, it's it's going to go into effect on some specific day, and then that gives staff time to put the, put the pieces together so it can be implemented.
I have no problem with that, I hate to arbitrarily create dates when I don't know.
Yeah.
Like I told you, we spoke to the fire chief, I had no idea if 90 days for for sprinkler system or three years was reasonable. Same thing with, you know, and I don't know how long these things should take. I mean, to some degree, it's, it's, it gets put into a position where they have to start to file for coming into compliance. At that moment, they wouldn't be in compliance and have to start making a process to do so. So again, you know, we we can discuss whether we want dates involved or not, but I I don't know what those would look like specifically.
John, is there a a standard or a regular amount of time, or like, just something that we could say, this is about how long it normally takes to to put these things into practice?
No, I'm not sure that there's an easy standard, and I'm looking at the very, under the definition of, under an adequate safety plan, which is a requirement that they have to supply, which includes, the plan must include the following information, contact information, floor plan, security, exterior lighting plan, health and safety, I mean, that's something that we're gonna.
So it's probably in their insurance anyway.
Right, but that's gonna have to be kind of flushed out, so in my mind, that seems like a 60 to 90 day kind of thing, so let's say council adopted this. We would, I think we would take this into effect January 1, just from from a functional licensing period. We'd start to meet with them about, these are the requirements that are going to be here, so 60, 90 days would seem pretty typical for that kind of thing.
Would would section K, would have to be in each section, or would the fact that section K says 30 days to come into compliance be the one that would take effect for all of them, unless if I was specified?
I think K's really focusing on if something's out of compliance, but.
Right, so if if we pass this, like, it says you have to have security cameras and they don't, would that give them 30 days to do so?
Yeah, but under, under the development of the adequate safety plan.
Okay.
So there first has to be a safety plan that was developed.
It'd have to be that.
Yeah, and then if that isn't met, then that's where it would trigger the 30-day period. So 60, 90 days is about the best suggestion I could offer, without having put any work into that checklist or the application itself.
So Nathan, before you ask about the security cameras, I I missed it, you said something else. You were, were you talking about cleanup or your, did you mention something else?
I, not really. All together in the in the ordinance.
Yeah, I'm familiar with, I just wanted to.
I wanted to clarify that they weren't exempt from coming under the expectations, which would be like your, it's, you know, it's it's kind of throughout it, but like GH and I, our subsection, prohibiting alcohol, illegal drugs, security cameras, trash-free, my question was, they would have to come into compliance with those things. They wouldn't be exempt from that.
Right.
So what we're talking about is an exemption for them in certain respects, but it's not an exemption from them for everything. Also, they're being moved into chapter 20, which should have higher, like, it gives more ability to actually enforce the codes that we're actually putting within this document also.
Got you.
So I want to make sure that we were putting what we wanted to in this, that there's actual enforcement that occurs.
Thanks.
So you would say, John, to put in, you know, enforcement of this, or that city staff will put together forms, procedures, mechanisms to implement and execute on this ordinance within 90 days of its passage?
Yeah, yeah.
Nathan, does that sound all right to you?
Say it one more time.
How much wood would a woodchuck chuck?
Exactly.
That, you know, if we make an amendment, I move to amend that we add a stipulation to the ordinance, let's say, section 20.022, actually, probably.
In section 42209? Got the other one?
I'm not even sure what section I put in.
I know, but I gotta find it again. Okay, I would put it in 20021 between maybe A and B or somewhere maybe.
20021.
Yeah, that's page 3B4.
That's for severe weather shelters.
Yeah, so that.
Oh, you're gonna have to, yeah, you're right.
For 20022.
Yeah, 022. That's overnight shelters, that's what we're talking about.
That's what we're talking about, isn't it?
Well, really, we're talking about the whole ordinance.
Well, you'd need the same, you'd need the same language for all.
Do you need it in the ordinance, or can you just give?
That's what I was gonna ask.
City administration, the direction to say, get it done.
Yes.
But if you don't trust us, then.
I mean, if that, if that works.
I think it's okay.
And the history shows.
Yeah, I know, I assure you, that's the way you feel.
I'm sure it's done.
Just my suggestion, I I would put it under the definition for an adequate safety plan. All the language is there for what's required, that spells out that an adequate safety plan must be approved by the city within 90 days, then it seems, whether that applies to the emergency shelter, the overnight soup kitchen, all of that.
They're talking about more than the safety plan, they want the full application process to be stood up and operational within 90 days.
Seems like there's a lot of details to go through.
20.026.
Yeah.
Implementation.
So where are we at?
Just. He's thinking.
Yeah, just talking, just speaking with Nathan, just.
Okay.
You know, add section 20.026, implementation. Direct city staff to have policies, procedures, and mechanisms to implement this ordinance within 90 days of its passage.
So the intent of that is that all other sections, unless it's specifically exempted, would have to become under compliance within 90 days? Or would have to begin the process within 90 days?
They'd have to have it all done within 90 days.
Can you say your motion?
No.
Direct city staff to?
Count the woodchucks, so 20.026, implementation. City staff shall implement processes, procedures, forms, and all the mechanisms necessary to implement this ordinance in whole within 90 days of its passage.
Is that your motion, or that's what you're telling Nathan to do?
That's what my motion is.
Nathan, do you have any legal issue with that? Will that achieve what we have said we're trying to achieve?
All right, I'll second.
Motion second, would you like to keep discussing it? Roll call vote.
Roman?
Yes.
Jackson?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Turbus?
Yes.
Friedly?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Cussinger?
Yes.
Hahn?
Yes.
Bulge?
Yes.
Nice.
Okay, so we're, we're back to the original motion made by William and seconded by John.
Why don't you? I'm not done. To me, this is the important part of what we're actually chopping at, instead of just talking about the entire history that we've gone over five times.
Yes.
Nathan, I had a question about, so right, one of the suggestions was in the R3, and I know, like Megan was talking about kind of removing the whole, you know, moving all back to the 2022 version, but in the event that this does pass, I I had a thought of moving R3 from permitted to either conditional or not, not allowed. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, for overnight shelters.
Well, I mean, that's up to you guys.
Is there concern in doing so, it would still be printed in R4, which is your highest density type areas?
No, I don't, I have no legal up here, I couldn't do it.
Just, just a suggestion, Nathan, it might be good if Tom, unless you happen to have that, three, R3 and R4 was revised with that revision, the overhaul of chapter 42 might be worth reviewing what those zones are.
Okay.
They're still multifamily, so Tom or Dawn, could you comment as to what R3 and R4 under the current ordinance is?
I've got my hand in any book, what was the question?
Well, the R, we're proposing taking the permitted use for overnight shelters to a conditional use in in R3.
With R3.
So can you just give a quick overview of the distinction?
And by right in four?
And by right in four, I think.
And permitted in four.
Yeah. You can draw a distinction between what R3 and R4 allows.
Okay, so R3, I mean, they're both multifamily districts, allow a lot of the same things. The biggest difference between the two is that R4 doesn't really have a maximum density as far as the the units, so it's sort of a, the R4 says, here's your setbacks, here's your maximum height, build as much as you as you can fit, as long as you can fit the parking. The R3 has setbacks and height limits and parking requirements, but also has a density limit of 26 units per acre. Other than that, the uses are 90% the same as far as the allowed uses, then the conditional uses, they're a little different, but, does that come close to answering it?
Tom, how much R4 do we have and where's it at?
R4 is, basically, the area is kind of near the university, up north of of about 14th Street, stretching close to almost to Pine, and then from the university, then basically almost to the railroad tracks, to the, basically, the Schuman neighborhood around Schuman Park, that area, almost entirely over there. We did rezone a property south of the downtown recently, but other than that, it's it's up that way.
Under that scenario, we're putting them still relatively in the city, in the center city?
Sure.
Just north of the center city, okay.
And Tom, where's the ballpark of R3?
Lots of places, they'd be, there's a big, there's an area kind of south of the downtown, kind of between, the buffer between the downtown and the neighborhood to the south, and then just, pretty much any other apartment complexes you can think of around town.
Would you say there's, so the R4 is concentrated?
Yeah.
In in the downtown, the R3 is not, I'm not leading you anywhere, is the R3 a broader area?
I would say so, yeah.
Is it possible for you to bring up the city map of the zoning?
That matters, Nathan, but.
I can try.
By doing that, you're sort of paving a way.
Just so we all have it on our monitors, make sure we're looking at it straight.
Unless they apply for rezoning, I suppose, would be the only, but it's not already in that area.
Nathan, can I ask what your thought process was there?
That's the higher, like, your highest impact of density, is there, something like a shelter could have a high impact on on that as far as population numbers, so my my thought is that your areas are most designed to have your very high density type structures would be kind of like a overnight shelter.
Thank you.
It's the brown, brownish colored one that's R4, right?
R4 would be over in this area where the mouse is kind of hovering, and then R3 is this orangey color, you can kind of see it in just random places kind of around town.
So Nathan, what you're saying is you you would want an opportunity like this to be in a more dense population?
That those zones are made for a high density. I think my thought was, is that when something is going there, these are the types of things that are made to have high density, and I would think of a overnight shelter as being a very high density impact. I'll make a motion to, well, again, you guys more want this section, I think it's section 5, so I apologize, because I was kind of like, Megan, I'm, I'm a dummy and look at pictures and charts, I, Nathan, am I looking right, it's section 5?
Yeah, presidential district.
So to amend section 5 for the overnight shelters to be moved. So to amend section five for the overnight shelters to be moved from permitted to conditional. That's what my motion is.
Yes, it would be section five.
Is there a second?
We're good there, Nathan? Section five?
It is section five.
Second.
Any further discussion?
So I'm just wanting to make sure I understand what your motion is. So where currently it reads to that overnight shelters are by right?
In R3.
In R3.
Correct.
Well, it says R3 and R4.
And I'm not making a motion for R4.
Okay, so it's just R3 that would be conditional use?
Correct.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood. Thank you.
Just to make sure, you were encouraging something to go in an R4, which is primarily downtown?
My notion had to do with more of your density impact.
And if you look at the map, I mean.
I'm okay, as long as you understand where R4 is.
What'd you say, Megan?
Well, and again, Mayor, I also want to point out, I'm not encouraging it to be in R4. It's already, like, it's already reflecting for it to be in R4. I would only be removing it out of, not removing it, moving to conditional in R3.
But you're taking a pool of locations and you're tightening it down, which is why I'm saying you would be paving the way.
Correct. I understand your point.
I'm okay with, you're okay, I'm okay.
There's some R4 that is around the downtown area, way further down in the Schuman Park area as, but again, the park area.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Fredly?
No.
Cessinger?
No.
Penner?
No.
Reven?
No.
Roman?
No.
Steen?
No.
Turbin?
Yes.
Bulge?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Hahn?
No.
Jackson?
Yes.
Nine eyes.
Nine no's.
Nine no's.
Nathan, I also wanted to ask, see.
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. Two guys.
Sorry, interrupted. Soup kitchens was put as a conditional use in manufacturing. I want to know if there was an explanation that felt not in place. I was leaning towards making a motion to have it not permitted. I didn't know if there was any thought process to a soup kitchen being allowed in manufacturing. Is that standard?
Well, I mean, I could say I've seen soup kitchens in manufacturing areas. I think the thought was is that manufacturing is where we often put some of our difficult uses.
Okay. While we tend to think of manufacturing as being the industrial parks, we do have some other areas like out on St. James Road and 18th Street. A lot of that area is manufactured, light manufacturing. So there are some pockets around that are not industrial, that have the manufacturing zone.
Would a restaurant be allowed to go there?
Wouldn't be in, well, would be, oh, a restaurant? That's a Tom question.
Tom, is a restaurant allowed in manufacturing?
Don't need to open the book for that. Yes, commercial uses are allowed in manufacturing district.
Okay.
Any further discussions, amendment, changes, questions?
So just to point it clarity, when we get ready to vote, if we vote yes on the motion that has been made, we are approving the conditions of the changes we made tonight, and in fact, giving conditions to one entity that they can stay where they are and do what they're doing within reason. If we say no, we revert back to the 2022 ordinance. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to clarify that.
We don't revert back, we stay.
We stay, that's right. We stay, because we never changed. Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
You're welcome, Mr. Fredly.
We're so cordial at 10:25.
That's usually, you're usually more gratsy at this time, but you're doing very well.
Well, I feel coffee at 09:00 and the porch isn't going to bother me tomorrow.
Nice, nice.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor, there's a second, there's been discussion.
Hang on, I see Nathan working. This was the original motion to accept as amended?
Yes. And for point of clarity on this, more for their sake, how many votes would it take for this ordinance to pass?
Seven.
Because it's an ordinance being.
Right, you need seven for an ordinance.
Seven for ordinance.
Are we ready? Okay, roll call vote. Oh, wait, oh, sorry. Go ahead and read it.
Oh, wow.
Your turn.
An ordinance amending chapter 20, housing of the ordinances of the city of Rolla, Missouri, to establish article three, shelters, and amending chapter 42, planning and zoning, article two, zoning districts, article four, special regulations, and article seven, appendix regarding overnight shelter, soup kitchens, and transitional housing uses.
As amended. Would that be correct? As amended tonight.
I don't say that, but it is. But if we hadn't done amended, should have had an S after overnight shelters, but.
Okay, roll call vote.
Steen?
Yes.
Turbin?
Yes.
Penner?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Reven?
Yes.
Bulge?
Yes.
Johnson?
No.
Cessinger?
No.
Jackson?
No.
Fredly?
No.
Hahn?
Yes.
Seven eyes.
I guess one side should feel like a winner, one side like a loser, but I don't know. I think to some degree we all lost with this, but it is what it is.
That's easy to say.
Moving on to new business, first item is a discussion, a motion regarding an RFP for drug prevention.
Yeah, I think it was maybe six weeks or so ago, council asked us to draft a request for proposals for opioid drug prevention, treatment, and abatement strategies. Of course, council is aware of the opioid settlement that was done to it under Attorney General Eric Schmidt, $958 million throughout the state of Missouri, but very little of that is finding its way down to cities. Rolla Zesta received somewhere between $20,000 and $25,000. Counties are a much larger recipient of that, based on estimates that the county might receive as much as $590,000. To date, Rolla has received about $13,000. There are very specific allowable uses, and I've included some of those in the council package, mostly just from the DHSS or the opioid settlement language. Again, to be used for treatment, prevention, and other opioid abatement strategies, and I included several pages that go into a bit more detail of how those could be done. The thought from council, I think, after hearing the presentation from prevention consultants, was the opportunity to expand some education and drug prevention strategies. But rather than try to identify a single user, to prepare a document that would go out, that would allow any entity that might be able to provide some of these services to submit a proposal. We're proposing the proposals be submitted sometime in February. We'll change these dates based on council comments. So I'd be happy to answer any questions about the draft of the RFP.
Any questions for John?
So just to point of clarity, the county is going to receive $590,000, is that correct?
And this is over, you know, 20 years.
I know, it's not a lump sum or anything. Okay. So, thank you.
I should mention, and certainly while council can do this and issue an RFP and award a contract for services, $20,000, $30,000 worth, there are two other options provided for and anticipated in some cases in the settlement itself. Rolla could have deferred our receipt of this to the state of Missouri, that would then use it for their much more significant programs across the state. The city could also merge our funds with Phelps County, who has appointed a board to oversee that. But it seemed like council's direction was, well, we're going to have some dollars here, let's see if we can add some influence on some local options. And so that's what the drafting of the RFP is about.
And just because we, if we go forward with, you know, drafting an RFP and putting it out there, doesn't necessarily mean we need to act on any of those.
Correct, just to authorize the RFP.
So you're looking for a motion?
Yeah, and really don't want to issue this without, you know, council being comfortable with it, so if there was anything in there that you saw that was a concern. I put in there a period up to two years, so $30,000. It doesn't have to be a two-year contract. That would be what the proposal would include, is what they would be providing over up to a 24-month period of time. If you are comfortable with it, we'll fine tune it and distribute this to local providers.
So Fredly makes a motion?
I'll second.
Just a quick question on this. So we budgeted for $30,000. Does that mean, if we have $30,000 in there, does that mean like one entity that requests for proposal gets that much?
You could spend all of it, some of it, or you can spread it around.
Well, that's my question, is how does that work? Do we?
That's to be determined. The only thing, it's to be determined. The only thing you're authorizing here is to allow us to send an RFP out.
I was just curious.
And the people could submit a proposal that would.
So you might not like any of them, you like like four of them, you might give it to three different people, you may say, I don't like any of them, we're going to keep the money in the bank.
Okay.
Yep.
Or you might not get any.
It's government money, you kidding me? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I made it. I made the first, and there was a second. So a motion and a second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mayor, can I make a comment real quick? I just saw that Elton John came out and said that we should, we should not legalize marijuana, just as a, I mean, it was just. So anyway, I just thought maybe it would be, what's that?
Hot off the press?
Well, yeah. If you didn't know about it, it must be. No, it was, yeah, it was pretty, pretty hot off the press. Pretty interesting article. Sorry, continue. Sidebar, I'm sleepy.
All right, moving on to claims of our fiscal transactions, we have a, we requesting a resolution to enter into an agreement with Image N.
Yeah, and so the council knows we've been televising city council meetings for a long time. We've been doing that in cooperation with Fidelity, which is now Sparklight. That was done, Brad Hayes in particular has been doing this work, both for the city of Rolla and the Rolla School District. But frankly, gosh, I just forgot the name of the company, Fidelity New Group. Sparkline. Sparkline is getting out of running the channel entirely, and so we were paying them, actually, the new company hadn't been billing us for it, but $1,300 or so a month, to keep that going and to operate it off of a YouTube channel, the city's YouTube channel. There's a proposal in here from the same operator, Brad Hayes, through his LLC, to do that work, including city council and P&amp;Z meetings, for $1,050 a month. That's a savings of about $3,000 that we would have otherwise been paying, had Sparklight been aware that we were actually still receiving those services. So we'd like to continue doing it. We don't, there's not a lot of people still getting cable. Channel 16 is going to go away. This would just be pushing this out to our YouTube channel.
Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
That's a resolution. So if there's no further discussion, you want to read the resolution?
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute on behalf of the city of Rolla, Missouri, a contract for video production services with Image N LLC.
I would like to make a motion. Thank you, Josh.
I'll make a second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Next item is a motion to approve the appropriation of the balance budget for, well, there's two actions here. One is to approve the appropriation in the budget for the center, and a second one to issue an RFP for physical therapy services.
And just, you know, some background, and I know council is aware of this, but for the public's benefit, the city council adopted the $40 million city budget in September. In that ordinance that enacted it, they appropriated 25% of what was budgeted for the center to be revisited specifically on December 16th. And that allowed us then to get through the months of October and November. Doesn't allow us to get through the first full quarter of fiscal year '25. But, you know, we're bringing this back for further consideration of additional appropriations. As council knows, and we've included lots of the information, most of which you've seen in the monthly reports, the budgets, the trends on the charts, the general information is in there, but some of the things that have been taking place over the last several months is we continue to try and meet sustainability, or at least reduce the amount of general fund subsidy needed to the center. Let me just touch on some of the things that we've been doing. Of course, you're familiar with the MiFitRx program that went live in March 2022. But in the last couple of years, last two years, we've had 114 participants of that creating, that led to 55 new members. The Torch Grant is a relationship and a collaboration we have with Phelps Health and a countywide initiative. It includes programming through the center, fitness floor renovation, of course, council remembers that in December of 2023. That was really, did a couple of things. It expanded the fitness workout area from 4,000 square foot to about 12,000 square foot, added a lot more equipment. It allowed for sports performance training that can be done on that space, geared specifically for individuals and high school teams and other organizations. So that was all done sort of in preparation for expansion. Of course, we had to form the medical advisory committee. That's a group of five, I think it's five physicians currently serving on there, that sort of advise on all things health and safety related at the rec center. That was a key component of the Medical Fitness Association's certification, which we received in September. There was a physician, and we all remember where we had a wellness navigator position. She's since left us and took another position here in Rolla. We're currently advertising for a either full-time or a part-time liaison position, slightly different, scaled back kind of position, more of an external-facing position that's currently being advertised by Power Wellness. Epic Integration went live by Phelps Health. That really allows them to have doctor referrals, sort of push the button, so to speak. It allows them to, rather than have to fill out a subscription and have the member bring it to the city, they can actually, the doctor can actually, in the office, prescribe the MiFit program, and allows them to get the data back all through the electronic records provision of Phelps Health and Epic Integration. I think council is aware of the MiFit Scholarship Program. There was $5,000 that went towards oncology and $5,000 for other pathways. That was a donation from a local, a couple of local individual and out-of-the-area individual that funded that. That program is in place. We've been working with Phelps Health on how to bring that scholarship program to people that would qualify, either in the oncology rehab program or in the, what we call the seven, I think it's seven pathways, diabetes, those kinds of things, weight management. And the idea was to do a 50-50 funding on the MiFitRx program. So it allowed people to kind of enter into that under an eight-week program, and we know through Power Wellness' success, over 60% of folks that go through MiFitRx end up taking on a membership as they've seen the benefits for the first eight-week program. And then lastly, what we propose, and we talked about this a couple of months ago at the council workshop, I think in September, this idea of utilizing some, some underutilized space, our meeting rooms quite frankly, to see whether or not there's some interest in physical therapy. We've been having these conversations with the rec advisory committee and Power Wellness, and there has been outreach to a number of physical therapy providers in the area, in the region, and a couple of them even beyond, and there is some real interest. Now, we don't want to imply that that means that we're going to get proposals, but there are current providers and potential providers, particularly in physical therapy, that really like the idea, and quite frankly, there's been success across the country in sort of bringing those kinds of services into a rec center. And so we think that there's a market for that, but much like we would do on the opioid treatment program, this would be the distribution of a RFP to see whether or not there's some real interest. Under the proposal that we've prepared, it would have those submitted by February 11th, and then brought back to council after we've done some screening and consider some best options. best options. Not only is that a lease arrangement, but more importantly, it brings a lot of foot traffic through the facility. It allows them to offer potentially ancillary services. And, you know, ultimately, the goal is to lead to more members at the rec center. So I just kind of wanted to review all that. I'd be happy to answer any of the specific questions. A good chart to look at, and I know council's been right on top of this because you ask about it almost every month with the council packets, but if you look at Roman numeral five B or V, five V six, in particular, you'll see the members and the, where those numbers went. And really from December, from the time we did the fitness floor expansion, we really grew from 1,868 members to our high in May of 2,100 members. And then the rate increase went into effect. It really went out in June and July, and we saw really about a four-month decline in members. But for the first month, at least November, saw the first uptick in membership growth. And I think it was Dr. Kessinger that kind of made the comments, and this is kind of true in fee structures. It's not unusual to sort of see a dip and then hopefully see that rebound. It's early. I don't want to overstate that, but we seem to have hit the bottom of that and potentially on that upswing. And I think with the things that we've sort of laid out, that potential of growing for these next several months looks really promising. I would also say that January through May are the best months in rec center operations. And so we want to certainly take full advantage of that opportunity and knowing that the community is going to have a facility that they can get behind and support. So be happy to take any questions or comments from council on any of those issues.
Questions for John?
So this would be approving the remaining 75% of the budget for the center?
Yeah. And again, council can do anything else. It could also include other stop points where we report back next quarter, next two quarters along that line.
Well, so when we did the 25% last time, I knew it was going to be too small of a, of a window to look through, especially with going into the end of the year. A new January New Year's resolution would play a big role. I'd be interested in repeating the 25% again, that essentially we have the same conversation, which will get us to the halfway through the year point, is after 25 more percent that we're allotting the budget and then have that conversation again. That would get us through the New Year's resolution, halfway through the year. Are they on target? Are they growing? Are things kicking in and getting some traction or not?
Would you want to have the March data in that discussion then? Or would you just?
Say that again, what'd you say?
The March data.
January, February, March. Yeah, would you want to, would you want to look at the data from January, February, and March?
The first quarter.
So if we approve another 25%, when will we, we have to move to?
Well, we talked about this in the last time, really April would be a time where we would have the data. Council didn't want to do that in January, and so they specified off that December 16th. It would certainly help to do it in April. My only appeal I think I would make is why I think that's a reasonable thing to do based on the last practice. It would tell us a lot what's going to happen in the key three months. It doesn't do much about the physical therapy RFP. If those are due in February, and at this point, alls we can say is the council's appropriated funds for the first three months. I'm not saying that you have to go beyond that, but if we're going to do that effort, I think we got to be committed to at least getting through more months of that year. So that they, because these firms are going to put a lot of effort into submitting a proposal on that. So whether that's six months rather than the full nine months, I don't think that's three months is going to give us enough time to really effectively engage PT services. But I just want to offer that out.
And the PT services, as I was reading the packet, if I understood it correctly, if they wanted something changed for their use, they would be responsible for the actual cost?
They'd put up the capital.
Yeah.
Which makes sense.
We would have, we would give them an empty room, if you will, and they would provide the capital to put their programs on.
And so you, council would still have time to decide whether you want to do that when you look at proposals. Again, anticipate in February 11th, they would come back to council probably in early March. So council could then say, yeah, we really like these, or we see some real success here, or we don't like these, they're not, they're not doing it. So I'm not saying you have to go a lot further than that, but we need to give some assurance that they're going to put through that work, they're going to get a fair evaluation from the city of entering a contract.
Yeah. I think we, we clearly understand you don't want to write a blank check. I get it. But in order to play out that, but we have other things. I mean, let's put this thing in perspective. You're asking physicians to recommend people to a program. And, you know, if that program is only 90 days out, are they going to do that? We have people in key positions that have to be hired. And when you go send out a, a call for somebody to apply for the job, particularly if they have to relocate, what are you telling them in the interview? You're telling them, well, we may only hire you for 90 days or something like that. So just be mindful of those things. So on one hand, we get what you want to do, but on the other hand, if you make it too restrictive, you're hurting the costs, so.
It's also, sorry.
You take that for what it's worth.
I was going to say, it's also concerning to me that, if I understood your summary, that liaison who met with us that was kind of painting this pretty picture for everything that was going to grab traction, and she was going to kind of be the outreach point, she's gone. And we're not rehiring that position exactly?
Well, they're advertising that and a part-time. So the idea is let's just see what we can find.
Oh, that position and a part-time person?
Or.
Or, okay.
Right. And there's not a lot of applicants.
Well, it's just concerning to me because, you know, that person was supposed to be a part of this outreach, get traction, get to the doctors, and kind of create this relationship. And she said a lot of the right words, but now she's not here, so.
Yeah, she did a lot of, she did a lot of good things, but...
I was going to say, is she not here because?
She got a good offer, but let's be honest. I mean, she, she looked around and see what was being said as well. And she's not the only one that's asking those questions as far as an employee.
So I don't see any harm in coming back in three months and having a discussion. I don't think anyone on the council thought tonight we would look at this and close the center down tomorrow.
No.
So having the conversation is a good piece. And reallocating the budget, I mean, I understand your perspective. If you say we're only reallocating another 25%, it looks like we're short-term in it and we could easily pull the plug at any time. But I think everyone of us realizes we can't just tomorrow go shut the door. So I understand your perspective, Mayor, but I don't think there's anything wrong with coming back, say, the first April meeting and having a conversation about the budget again. Would that be a timeline?
Yeah, but that's not 25%.
Okay.
The city's budget is, is not on the calendar year, so.
Okay. So...
So 25 more percent would go January, February, March?
Right.
So it'd have to be presented to us before getting into April is what, is that what you're saying, Josh?
Right, which we wouldn't, we wouldn't really have March numbers then.
And/or we allocate, you know, through the end of April and then?
You could do that calendar, could you not?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, again, just, let me get greedy. I'd think if we could get six months with it, we're still doing a full review at the first meeting in April, first or second meeting?
I think the review is the key piece we want, more than anything. So we want to show the public we're seeing progress and that we're doing the things. I don't think the budget is much, I mean, although we've put that stipulation, I think just having the conversation in, at the beginning of April is a smart move.
So I agree with Matt on that. The, you know, I would be good with letting the budget go 50% or whatever, go six months. Because even in April, if, if the worst-case scenario, we're not going to be like the next day this place is shut down. Anyway, I, I've actually been, you know, we, we have to watch what's going on, but I do want to cautious, caution us of like feeling like we're breathing down their necks and kind of watching all the time. I think we really have to give them an opportunity to continue on and keep a mindful eye, but I don't, I don't like this, I don't like the idea that, that they could feel like we're going to pull the plug any moment. I really don't want that out there at all because I think that that's not helpful for anyone. But I mean, we do have an accountability. We have to take care of things, but, but I don't want that to be, you know, I think it's a, it's a fine line, so. So I'd be good with six months. I, I would...
I didn't make a motion, but I would make a motion we approve another 50% of the budget, just to keep things going in the right direction.
50 more percent?
50 more percent. So we'd be at 75% funding.
And I would, I would second that.
Would that be acceptable?
Yeah, that's because with the report.
But with a full council report in April, beginning meeting in April. Do you need me to reiterate that, or is that okay? Laura, it's late.
You made a motion to approve 50% more of the budget appropriation.
No, I don't think it's 50% more, is it? Is it 50% more or 50%?
50% more.
50% more because we're still, yeah.
With a full council review in April.
Yes, Mayor.
The first meeting of April.
That's my motion.
And there was a second?
Second. Kessinger.
Open for discussion? So, so we just added an additional 50%, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so why don't we just go for the full 100%? Just fund them, and then we just won't? Because administration is going to continue bringing stuff to us at these intermittent times when we're dumping over half a million dollars into the center and then telling us that we, we need to be careful how, and we're just going to continue wasting tax dollars from the general fund, dumping it into the center without actually having any real discussion of what we can do to change that.
Josh, let me stop you for a second.
So let's just go ahead. No, no, I want to make a motion to just go ahead and fully fund the center for the rest of the year. That way, we don't have to worry about it. Nobody has to worry about us breathing down their neck. That's my motion.
I love everything you said except one thing. Wasted taxpayer money. It, it's wrong to sit there as a civic leader and make that statement. You could have, you could use, use other words than that, but when you say wasted, that sends a message to the public. And that's, that's the concern.
What are we doing with $900,000 for this budget?
You're spending it, you're investing it, you're doing certain things.
Oh, I'm sorry. We're bailing out the center at the tune of $900,000. It's not wasted.
You just proved exactly what I'm saying. Words matter, and when you, and, and yes, you, you give us the leeway and you make statements like that, and somebody looking to come to Rolla, Missouri is going to say, why the hell am I going to take this job? Because the city council feels they're wasting the money. Why is somebody going to make six-figure investments to put equipment into the center when they're sitting there saying, well, some of the council feels that they're wasting the money? It, it's those words. I'm not asking you to open up a blank checkbook. I get it. But choose your, your words a little careful.
Has there been someone come and want to give a six-figure?
That's what the RFP would be for.
I mean, do you think that they're going to actually? No.
I have a motion on, sorry. Sorry, I do, I do have a motion on the floor.
There's already a motion.
There's already a motion.
I understand that, and I just, I second.
Your, Josh, your motion is what the original proposal is in the agenda.
What, to fully fund it?
Yeah, maybe the rest of the year.
Yeah. Why not?
I mean, that's what's in the agenda.
Right, that's true.
But so you don't need to make a motion because that's what's on the agenda for tonight.
Then I misread it.
But there was another motion.
You'll just, you'll vote this one down and then?
There's no second of Josh's amendment.
Okay. I misread it.
Second to Matt's.
Matt's.
So not to Josh's. Right. So we got to act on Matt's first.
Clarification. That, that amendment would give 50 more percent, which would be a total of 75% of the year that the center would be funded within that period of time, will be past April, have more numbers, things to kick in for the physical therapy program that you guys are trying to get going and such.
Yep.
And there'd be a comeback at the first meeting of April to review all that stuff, right?
Yeah, I was thinking April.
Probably second meeting of April, realistically.
Because we all have elections on the Tuesday right after that first one, and it might be, I don't know which way to go, whether you do it before people leave council or you do it with new people coming on. So in my mind, it makes more sense to do the second one, second meeting in April, so that you have a full month of March, you have a full first quarter of 20, of '25.
So I made the motion, and I don't have a problem with it being the second meeting in April, if I need to clarify that. That way, the newly elected council members could put themselves in a seat and understand where the progress is. I don't think that, do I need to amend that? Do I need to say that? Did I even say it? That was not even, I don't...
We just said April, it was your motion.
Yeah, you did. I, I just, I wrote in.
That cost you.
Second, I got it.
Thank you, Laura.
You're welcome.
That's a motion to amend, I suppose, correct?
What?
No, it's just a motion.
Okay.
What you have on the agenda is essentially a recommended motion.
That's not the motion.
That's what?
So what do you get?
Motion and a second.
Would a, would a yes vote also include, because there's the RFP, so there's...
We have a separate vote.
I'll make sure. Thank you.
So motion second on the floor, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Mayor, when can we start having a discussion, an actual discussion about fixing this project without you guys?
We had two workshops.
But yet you didn't? When we talked about the auditorium, you told us what we were going to lose, but you never came back with what it could be if we did something different.
We gave you a plan. So I don't know what you, what you mean when we said we didn't do anything to fix it. We gave you a plan.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is, is what you gave us with the auditorium was if we get rid of the auditorium, this is how much we're going to lose. But administration didn't have the foresight to add any ideas into this as to what, what it could be.
That's true. We're a bunch of idiots.
What it could be...
Josh, we laid out a plan, okay? Now, if you want to accept that plan, that's fine. If you don't want to accept it, it's fine. But we laid out, I want to say a five-year budget or a three-year budget.
Yeah.
We gave you a three- or a five-year roadmap.
I've got that roadmap sitting at home, and what I'm telling you is that under the auditorium portion, the only thing that you told us is how much we would lose if we shut the auditorium down. You didn't give any options, any ideas, nothing from your guys' thought processes of what it could be if you transitioned services.
I think we gave it and you don't accept it.
No, there's nothing on the...
What we told you is, what we told you is, these are the potential savings if you close an auditorium.
Correct.
Okay? And these are the potential repercussions. You're going to lose membership, you're going to lose potential programs, you're going to lose the possibility to integrate it with the outdoor, outdoor pool, so on, so forth.
Okay.
Okay. What you want is you want to close it.
No, the swimming pool, the auditorium part.
You want to close it. So let's talk about what closure means of an auditorium. You're going to lose members, okay? You're going to have to repl, you have to keep water circulating. So you have to replumb the heating system. So you're going to spend money to save money on the, on the energy, but you're going to have to circulate the water. And you've got all of that air that you're going to keep have to circulate. So you're going to have to spend some money to keep it on idle. Now, let's just keep it on idle. Now, let's say your point, which you've said multiple times, let's do something else with it. So now we're going to have an engineering firm come in and probably spend $100,000 to say, geez, what can we do with the pool? All right? That's a special purpose-built area. So what does that going to entail? That's going to entail some significant amount of money to retrofit that. Those are possibilities. Those are, those certainly can be looked at. But council has to be realistic as to what that means and you're going to have to prove some money. You're going to have to spend money to, to study that.
Correct. We would have to have a one-time.
If you want to spend the money, we'll go do it.
We would have to have a one-time capital expenditure. I understand that. I get all that and that's what we've been asking. You guys have not come back and told us anything about what it could be afterwards. After it shut down, after we could do something else.
You have to, you are, you're going to have to have time and money to do that.
But it's better than dumping almost a million dollars into this place a year.
Josh, I don't think everyone agrees with you. If, if that were the case, I think there would be more of us on the council that would be saying to close the facility.
I'm not asking to close the facility.
But Josh, when you keep saying dumping money into it, there are some of us that believe it's an entity that is important to our community, that it brings people to our community and there, there's value in it. So I, I don't know that you speak for everyone on the council and I'm certainly not of the mind that we need to shut the doors.
I'm not asking to shut the doors. That's not what I've said. Those words have not come out of my mouth.
But Josh, we could come up with all kinds of ideas how you could repurpose that space. It's a big space.
Correct.
Big concrete area, right? But it's going to take serious engineering analysis. We could brainstorm all day, put a cord in there, put climbing wells in there, put in a mini football field. I mean, you could do any of that, but someone's going to have to spend a lot of money doing the engineering. Now, I don't know if that's 100,000 hours or 50,000 hours or what that amount is, but it's not going to be cheap for somebody to really tell us what is the cost to do what you're talking about doing.
You're going to have to tell them what the purpose is.
Well, you're going to have to figure out what can you even do with this space for, you know, as part of that. The question, it's both. You got to first, first, figure out physically what you can do and then operationally what can you do and what the stack will look like as well. So I'm saying we can do that, but it's, you and I or any group of a council committee could brainstorm all day. But it's, until we have numbers of design fees to modify, we really have no idea what the options are.
We can't have numbers until we brainstorm and that's what Josh is trying to get at. We need to move forward with an op, with a secondary plan. There needs, needs to be options for what we can and can't do.
How much are you going to give us?
Not just, not just one plan. You came up with one plan for us.
How much are you going to give us?
So Josh, you could make a request for proposal be prepared, just like we voted on and brought back to this council to, for the engineering fees and the design.
So that would give us an idea of what it would look like.
That's what it would take is to authorize the money.
Do we negate our contract then with, with power wellness on the?
No, it doesn't do anything with power wellness.
They use the facility.
I've already, we've already discussed this, that the swimming pool has nothing to do with power wellness or the MyFit RX.
Really?
So.
There is a ther, there is such a thing as a therapy pool in there.
Well, that's what you're wanting to bring in with this RF.
There is a therapy pool in that facility from day one.
Okay.
So. We're still, we're still discussing. Can I say one thing? I just want to say. Josh, do you care to come up and just tell us how often the pool's frequented? Because I feel like the pool is one of the major assets to the center. I feel like it draws in a lot of people.
Sorry, Josh.
The pool is, is heavily utilized. From 5:00 AM until 7:55, the lap lanes are booked that entire time. And then from 8:00 AM till 11:00, there's water therapy classes in there on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday. And then the therapy pool is, is heavily utilized as well.
So you'd say, I guess, that the swimming pool portion of it or the pool area would be the biggest asset of, of the center, the biggest draw? I mean, it seems like it to me whenever I've went to the center.
It's, it's a big draw. Yeah. Absolutely.
So essentially.
I don't think it would be as, the big draw for the facility is still going to be the fitness exercise space. That's where most of our members come from. There are plenty of members.
I guess I should say the big draw for people of the community, the people of Rolla.
Yeah, that, that might come in for the day passes. I think that's a safe thing to say. For day passes, it's probably disproportionate to, not for members per se.
Does the pool actually make money or does it lose money? That's what I want to know.
I don't know that we can give you a precise number.
Then how can you tell me it's an asset worth keeping?
Because at the workshop, at the workshop, we gave you a projection with an answer.
Again, you did not give us projections of what we could do with the money that doesn't, if the money did not continue going to the pool, what we could do with that after the fact. We only got, oh, we'll lose this, we'll lose that, not, oh, we'll save this much money every month or, I'm sorry, every year and can spend it on something more important. Gee, like, I don't know, like the crime we're dealing with downtown that everyone keeps talking to us about? Maybe we should spend the money on that.
If it was easy as this or that, it could be done. I think it's more complicated than that. But we gave you an assessment on what we thought the cost would be, the cost savings if we shut down the pool. We gave you that. And we gave you an estimate on what we thought it would be impacting the members. That was there. Maybe you didn't see it, maybe you didn't read it, but it was there.
No, we didn't, you know, and back to Josh's point, we didn't give them an option of what else we would do with that space, but that, that's as much as an engineering decision and an operational decision.
It's more, timeout. It's more than an engineering system, okay? Because when you sit down and engineer, they're going to have to say, well, what is it that you want to do? I'll engineer this to do what you want. What are you going to tell them to do? Frankly, because the power wellness, the people that are experts around the country will tell us repeatedly that you want that pool. But what do you want to make out of it?
Mayor, what I'm trying to do is stop, stop bailing out the center. I'm trying to figure out a way to utilize the funds that we are consistently dumping into the center to get it back into the general fund.
I think that's the problem, Josh.
So we can move forward.
That's the problem.
And you're not helping figure that out.
I'm not because I'm coming from a different perspective, okay? Let's go back to what the people voted with over 60% margin when they built that facility. Over 60%, a huge win, okay? One of the things, go back, pull the language, pull the, pull of the, what do you call?
Ballot language.
Pull the ballot language. And what did that ballot language said? An indoor pool. There were four things on that ballot language, one of which was the indoor pool. So right off the bat, you're going against what the voters voted for.
Now, how about the tax increases that got voted down to support the center?
Twice.
Yes.
I'm just saying, that's what the community voted for. Now, here's where I'm going to challenge you, all right? At the end of the day, you're not viewing this. Others in this community view this as an asset. Because I could say the same thing with the airport. If I had my way, I'd shut that damn thing down in a heartbeat. Let's talk about the outdoor pool. How much does the outdoor pool lose a year?
We're not talking about the outdoor pool. We're not, we're not talking about the, we're not talking about the airport. We're talking about the center. So let's stay on track with the center.
Selectively, let's talk about the airport. Let's talk about.
Those are different revenue streams. Let's talk about the center.
Okay, so not to talk it.
So, and I say this every time, I think that, you know, the center in itself, it is a community building. We own it. The taxpayers own it. It's your building. And I think that it needs to be geared towards the taxpayers. No offense against power wellness, but again, I think it needs to be more of a rec center that offers things to the community that is something that, you know, similar to the library in a way where it's something that people can afford, that people can, you know, there's youth in the community that can afford to go there and they have nothing to do. And it would be great to have this, it's our asset, but yet it's only an asset that certain people can afford. And so I would like to see it thrive. I would like to see it thrive. I just don't think that a medically integrated facility is, is the path. And I've said that multiple times. I just, if you want a medically integrated facility, then the medical community needs to step up and they need to be paying for it instead of the people bailing out, you know, bailing them out. And so I want to keep the pool. I think that, you know, the facility is an asset. If you get rid of the pool, then they're definitely going to go under quickly, I would imagine.
We could switch. We could do exactly what you're saying, Megan.
Let's do it.
But, but the voters, the people have consistently voted multiple times not to do that. So in order to do what you're saying.
No, 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 no. Hell, hold on. Okay, the people voted, I, I've lived here my whole life, so I remember these things. You can't change, you can't change the, the narrative on me here. So the people voted to have a community center. That's what they voted for, for a rec center. They did not say, you know what? We want a medically integrated facility.
Megan, I'm not going to argue with you. Read the ballot language.
That's only, only for the friends of, of the elite status people in the, in the community. That's not what they said. They wanted something that was available for all people, something for teenagers to do, something that we were all, you know, being, being a part of. But not everybody gets that benefit of the.
The ballot language was clear. By virtue of having a sunset tax means that that facility was not going to get taxpayer money, which is the problem we're in. If you want to make it a rec center, community center, that can be done. But be honest with the citizens, you are going to go to those citizens and you're going to put a tax on that to, in order to do that. That's what you want to do, do it.
There's certain things in the community that, you know, I'm, I'm all for less taxes, but at the same time, there's certain things and certain initiatives in this community that is beneficial to our community. Prop P, absolutely beneficial. You know, I, I, you know, told people all about Prop P, promoted Prop P. I think it's beneficial. I think our parks are amazing. And I, I do, I, I would love nothing more for us to go the route of a rec center. And I, I think that it would be amazing. Right now, with power wellness, they've gotten rid of, unless it's changed, they've gotten rid of homeschool PE, they've gotten rid of silver sneakers, they have gotten rid of noon ball, which all of those things were, were very popular. The people of Ward Two that Nathan and I represent, when I went and door knocked when I first ran, that was the biggest thing. When I asked them, you know, how do you feel about the center? It's such a controversial issue. They were like, well, we, we love it because of silver sneakers. Like, they were so attached to silver sneakers and now that it's gone, they're, they're not wore that anymore.
Megan, I don't, I don't dispute anything you have to say. I just have a, a simple question. If it did turn into a rec center and it was not, you know, part of an integrated wellness thing.
Right.
Medically integrated, I think that's the wording. And it was turned over to parks, let's say, because it's a, it's a rec center, it's in the park. We just turn it over to parks.
Right.
Would it be okay that, that it continue to lose money to the tune of $900,000 a year as Josh has quoted a few times?
I mean, I.
Would that be acceptable still?
I think what you would do is you would, you would come up with a plan, so like.
Well, I mean, that's what they've done, right?
I mean, like John had mentioned, do you go, or the mayor, you go to the taxpayers and say, hey, you know what? We've decided this isn't going to be, medical, medical integration is not for us. We want to make this a community center. This is your building. This is your facility.
I'm not disputing that. I'm asking, I'm asking, on the other side of that.
Yeah, so what's the plan?
If it continues to lose, you know, near a million dollars a year, is that, does that continue to be okay?
So if it was, you know, if you promoted it to the taxpayers and the taxpayers decided to go ahead and do a certain, not, not us promote it, but if it was, if it was promoted in some capacity and it went to the taxpayers and they overwhelmingly wanted to support it through taxpayer money?
I'm not even saying supported in taxpayer money. I'm saying right now, just, you know, full stop, you know, turn it over.
So what to do at this moment?
Turn it into a rec center tomorrow and it continues to lose near a million dollars a year? Is that okay?
It's not losing a million dollars.
Well.
So I don't think that you can, I don't think you can night and day just, you know, feel like, okay, now it's the Parks Department. I think that you would have to have a transitioning period. And that's, you know, that's what we would, we would discuss with the Parks Department. We would discuss with experts what would be the best way to do it. But it is, it's, it's our facility, you know? It's, it's the youth facility, like, they should be allowed to use that. They should be able to utilize it. We have nothing else in town that, you know, kids can go and utilize. I would, I would love to see that. So that's, that's the thing that I say all the time about how that's the path I would like to see it go.
And I'm not, I'm not disputing any of that. I'm, I'm asking about strictly the, the fiscal side.
What to do, what to do tomorrow?
The very next day, if it, if it continues to lose, you know, to quote Josh, $900,000 a year, then does that continue to be okay?
So one, one thing that I, and then you can't go in the, you know, back in time, but, you know, when we were using the ARPA money to bail out the center, I think that that would have been a great opportunity to rethink our path, but you can't go back.
I mean, yeah, so, I mean, we can't do that.
You can't go back in time with it, but I think if we say as a council body, you know what? Power wellness is not for us and we can end our contract at any time. I could send everybody the contract if they want.
Six months.
Isn't it, it's, it's, end it and then you have, what is it, a six-month grace period? So then we can discuss that and find a path. I mean, we have a lot of smart people.
Megan, I'm not disagreeing with you on whether it's a rec center, community center we have, okay? All, all I'm saying is, if that's what the community wants, this is what it would take. And to sit there and say, well, let's talk to the park board or the park, you're wasting time. It, it's real simple. If you want to turn it over to a park-like entity, a conventional rec center, community center, that can be done. But be honest, you're going to have to go to the taxpayers and get that through.
Okay.
So.
But see, that's never an option anytime that's mentioned. It's like, oh, no. It's not. I think that would be a fantastic, I think it would be a fantastic thing and, and future generations would benefit from it.
The, the city council, the city can't advocate that. But if there's a group of citizens that want to organize, spend the minimum of $10,000 having a ballot initiatives, go for it. Go for it.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that if it was a ballot initiative, it wouldn't be put on the ballot through us?
Somebody has to, you have to decide to put it on the ballot. The city can't promote it.
Yeah, we can't promote it, just like Prop P.
Just like the citizens group that built the place is going to have to promote it. And if it passes, then you get a rec center, community center.
So I guess this is a call out to everybody in the community that would like to take the center back and, and have it be, you know, something that is really for the community to organize and, you know, get a, get a group together to try to advocate for that.
Lori, can you tell us where we are in the motion, please? I've lost track.
Sorry.
First and a second?
Yeah.
First and a second to appropriate 50% more of the budget with a full council review in the second meeting in April.
I move to close debate on this subject.
You want to do what?
I move to close debate.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Do a second? Fred Lee's second, but I can't, can I? With my motion?
Ballot's a second.
Confused right now?
Ballot's a second then.
Okay. I don't know that we need that. We'll just call for the vote. There's a motion, there's a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All opposed?
No.
Let the record show one, no. There's a second motion request for us to be able to mail the RFP. There's a motion to mail it.
Move to mail the RFP.
Is there a second? Fred Lee will second. Any discussion?
I'm, I'm lost. You just moved to call for the vote. So this is.
No.
Yes.
No, we threw that out.
You threw that out? So what was just voted on was to appropriate the budget?
Yes.
50%.
Which was 10 ayes and one?
No.
No.
The second motion is to issue the RFP.
And John, would you sit outside just briefly what that is again? That's, that's for the physical therapy portion of it.
Solicit interest to partner with somebody to bring in physical therapy services.
And specifically the two-meeting room area. And then they would have access to the quarter of the restrooms, still access the fitness floor. Other space can be kind of shared, co-shared, but it's that, it would be dedicated space in the meeting rooms for physical therapy.
I guess if I should ask legal beforehand, should I abstain being a massage therapist? Is that?
That's next. We're going to go for massage therapy after this one.
Oh, that's not a part of this same one?
It's in, it's in the RFP.
It's in there.
It's in the RFP, but it-
That's what I'm asking.
But the target is physical.
Right.
The room is not really conducive.
Be the same thing as I went and got a massage, going to abstain.
If you did-
Yeah, it would be that.
Then you'll have to abstain.
I think we could all use a massage.
There's a motion made in second, any further discussion?
Who was the first and second?
I think I was the first.
Is there a second?
I was first.
I made the motion to approve.
I was second.
No.
That was another.
Yeah, take it.
No.
Somewhere in there, one of us.
All, are there any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, we got one more quick one here, then if anybody needs a potty break before we get into the citizen communication.
Yeah, we've been talking about a desperate need for updating, upgrading our website services, the council had appropriated up to $25,000 of ARPA funds, we issued an RFP out in October, received 20 submittals, they ranged from $8,000 to $180,000, which is, scratch your head, and with annual hosting fees, it ranged from $1,000 to $51,000. The one that we really liked, after, really, we've got packets for all 20 of them, some of them were a couple of pages, some of them were 75 pages, but Revise is a company that's done a lot, kind of in the areas, done a lot in Missouri, they're really a crisp, clear facility to work with, I included not their entire package, but a lot of the pages in there, even though you're going to be familiar with lots of these cities that use them, if you were to look at those websites, they're very different, they're unique to those communities, and not only is it attractive, easy to use, it's easy to editorial or edit on our end, so this would be a ward to revise, and then we'll negotiate a contract and bring that back to council for approval.
Make a motion to award the design and hosting services to Revise.
Second.
Any further discussion? It'd be good to see that antique go away.
Sure.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Should we take five minutes?
Do a chair in for five minutes?
This young lady patiently waiting to speak, so let's consider 11:30.
She's smart, she gets up and gets in first.
Five o'clock tomorrow morning is awful early.
Yeah.
Okay, citizen communication.
Is she ready to go?
Yeah, let's pull people back in.
Okay, citizen communication.
All right, you're ready for more people to talk, I'm sure.
Well, I don't go to sleep at night anywhere anymore.
Thank you for your time. I'm Dr. Jenny Pennycook, I'm a board-certified obstetrician and gynecologist here in town, and I've been a practicing physician for nearly 12 years. I want to talk to you today about the possible city ordinance to regulate reproductive health care.
Can you get a little closer to the mic?
Yes, I don't, I have grave concerns about the proposed ordinance and what it could mean for the citizens of Ralla and surrounding areas. Being unable to access reproductive health care is harmful to families and sustainability of communities. People should be able to access the care they need without medically unnecessary barriers or restrictions. Criminalizing care puts physicians in the difficult position of having to weigh criminal charges against providing necessary and life-saving care. Frankly, it makes us fearful. Most pertinent to Ralla is how these restrictions in care can lead to workforce shortages. Within the past 10 years, Ralla has gone from having eight OB-GYN physicians to now only two full-scope OB-GYN physicians. We have had challenges in recruiting additional physicians for at least three years. Wait times for patients to see me can vary from three to six months. It is a constant source of stress trying to create more time in a day to care for the needs of the community. As of 2022, 35% of U.S. counties are maternity care deserts, meaning there is no obstetric, sorry, no obstetric care available. That includes Dent and Mary's Counties. Texas, Pulaski, and Crawford Counties are also severely underserved. 11.2% of babies born in Missouri were born to women living in rural counties, while only 3.7% of maternity care providers practice in rural counties. Since the Dobbs decision, there was about a 30% reduction in applications to obstetric residency training programs in states with abortion bans. Trainees were also eight times more likely to change their intended practice location to areas without restrictions in practice. With the passage of Amendment Three, Missourians have helped to shield us from some of these harms, so let's not make Ralla a place where doctors don't want to practice. There's a real and present danger of losing access to obstetric care in Phelps County. If you create burdens on providing reproductive health care, you are not just restricting abortion. The proposed ordinance also requires additional administrative burden. When I have already passed national licensing exam, undergo annual state licensing and annual maintenance of my board certification. There are restrictions on providing contraceptive care within this proposal that contradicts state law. Your ordinance also states that all providers must be licensed by the Missouri Board of Healing Arts, which would mean that our certified nurse-midwives who are helping to sustain maternal care in the county could not practice in Ralla. Born Alive protections are unnecessary, as abortion does not occur after a pregnancy has already ended. There are already laws against murdering infants, which is not something doctors do. For infants born with lethal or life-threatening conditions, perinatal palliative care is an important protection. The pain and suffering experienced by families in these situations is absolutely horrific. Parents should have the choice to offer comfort and love to their dying baby, rather than be forced to watch futile, painful interventions be performed. This ordinance is not necessary, given the state and federal laws that already exist, and it is harmful to the citizens of Ralla and surrounding counties. Supporting access to medical and maternal care is the best.
Jenny, and I'm sorry it was loud at the very beginning, where are you with, Jenny, are you with?
I am not representing anyone but myself.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
It's a good one, huh?
Three minutes.
Yeah, three, come on now. The fluoride people got 15. We spent an hour and 37 minutes on fluoride, hour and 37 minutes on fluoride, and I come up and talk about drugs for three minutes and nobody cares about that.
Get on special presentation.
I know, right? Well, I mean, I got, I am credible, I've got 30-plus years- True story, I mean, hey, having 116 pounds of cocaine drug trafficking illegal in Missouri, loophole, he got caught in Ralla. So, now his record's wiped clean, no case on casenet, no case number, or if you even look up his name, it's not even there no more. Isn't that the craziest thing you've ever heard? But hey, it's a loophole, you get caught in Ralla, you can go scot-free. And I sent Dr. Bob and William the case reports, because I like to, I watch people, like that 116 pounds of cocaine guy, I looked up his casenet and I downloaded the documents, so I still had them on my phone, I printed them off, I even emailed them those case numbers, and if you want the case number, it's 24PH-CR009. No longer there, which is just so crazy to me. That guy got away scot-free with 116 pounds of cocaine. Isn't that crazy? That's not the only one, I've found others. So the prosecutional laws is if, in this city, is where we fail. It's not the mission. If we would actually stand up as a city and say, hey, we don't want drugs in this town no more, you would cut the homeless population in half, I guarantee you. Maybe get that opiate money and send it to the prosecutor and bribe them and tell them, hey, actually prosecute the laws. Here's another one for you, so I'm a felon, and Ward Four is coming up, but I can't run. Is there a loophole that I could run? Probably not, huh? The last guy that was a convicted felon that got, they crucified him.
Mr. Mayor's primary.
But hey, last meeting, Megan asked me if I would ask the homeless to pick up their trash after encouraging them to help. Are you asking the police officers that kick them out of their campsites to help them pick up trash? Hold on, I'm not done, I got my three minutes. Side note, for all the people that think that there's no homeless in other towns, there's homeless in Crawford County, I have a team in Crawford County that works there, and we're about to start a crew in Salem, at Dent County, if you didn't know. So, and as for leaders that are about to step up to serve the next city council seats, if service is beneath you, then leadership is beyond you. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, David.
Thank you.
It's been a long time.
Hello.
Hi.
So my name is Jerome Beck, I live outside the city limits, 13850 South US Highway 63. All right, so, so there's a couple quotes, so one from Mark Twain, it says, "A lie can travel halfway around the world while the truth is putting on its shoes." Mark Twain wrote that, right? So the, "Facts are stubborn things, whatever may be, whatever may be our wishes, our inclinations, or the dictates of our passions, they cannot alter the state of facts and evidence," that's John Adams. So I was looking, I'm trying to figure out like the situation, and it's kind of like, we always, we talk about crime, we talk about property values, so it's like, how do you actually, like, really get the numbers on those things, right? So you go to, you go to the sources, you go to the Ralla Police Department and you ask them for the crime stats, and you get to start to really get the facts on things, right? You go to the city assessor's office, I think, you can get the property values, you can get them from the years, like, pre-mission to, you know, all the way till the most recent one was just recent. All the property values seem to be staying steady or rising, right? I think we're at a place where like property values are like a crazy all-time high or something like that. So it's kind of an interesting idea that homelessness is impacting property values and it's not, it doesn't seem to be doing that. You could ask the people who actually do the assessment on that, and you could get some real facts on that, right? So I'm thinking, what is it, what's really happening is- So I'm thinking, what is it, what's really happening is we're working off of emotions. So there's a lot of passions about what's going on. There's a lot of real stuff. Crime is real, it's going on. But there's fear about homelessness. And I got this idea, I think, so I'm gonna read this little section of this. It's about scapegoating. And it's very relevant. So did you know the history of the word scapegoat? It was first coined in the 16th century to describe the ritual animals that the Jewish community placed their sins onto in preparation for Yom Kippur. Today, we use the word scapegoat to describe people who symbolically take on the sins of others. So let's look at its origins. The word was coined by the Protestant scholar William Tindell in 1530, when he undertook the task of the first translation of the entire Hebrew Bible into English. He found he needed to introduce some new words into the English language in order to make sense of the Hebrew as he understood it. And where the Torah describes Yom Kippur, he met with the problem. A key part of Yom Kippur, as described in the Torah, is a ritual slaughter of two goats, one for the Lord, and the other is designated for Azazel. Azazel? Azazel? Azazel. Jewish tradition takes Azazel as the name of a rocky headland off which one goat, having the sins of the community symbolically placed upon it, would be thrown. Would be thrown. The other goat, the one for the Lord, would be slaughtered as part of the general Yom Kippur rituals. The slaughter would bring atonement to the community. And I think that's what's happening with the homeless people, is that they're being scapegoated. And scapegoating is a real generational thing that goes on. So I look at the numbers, and the numbers for 2023, so there's a citywide calls for services. 2023, the citywide calls for services were 32,967 calls for services. Of those services, of those calls, 500 were for citywide homelessness, and 159 were associated with the Ralla mission. Like, this is facts that you could get from the police department. And so that means that essentially, like, over 90% of all the crime happening in the city is not from people experiencing homelessness. Is that time?
No.
So it's, so there's this huge, like, they're causing all this crime, and you got real experiences with people downtown saying that they're experiencing the crime from homelessness, and that's happening, but it's not happening to the extent that I think that we're putting on them. Crime is a real thing, but homeless people are not causing the majority of the crimes. So it's like, it's a hard sell when you look at the facts to try to, and I think what's happening is scapegoating.
Thank you, Jerome.
Thank you, sir.
I hope you're spending the night.
Maybe. Good evening. My name is Brian Westbrook, and I'm a citizen of St. Louis County, Missouri. You may have remembered me from a month ago. There was a motion made specifically for the city attorney to meet with myself and Mr. Dixon here as well. I am just here this evening, that deadline was today or maybe yesterday. I'm not quite sure. We have not, either one of us, been reached out by the city attorney. We have not received an email, phone call, text, or letter from the city attorney per that, by, or per that motion that the city council has made. So we're here to discuss the issue of the Sanctuary City for the Unborn, which is this ordinance here, which we were able to offer to you a month ago. Specifically, the city attorney had made reference that absolutely in no way, shape, or form can this, in fact, be passed in any way, shape, or form. Interesting, I happen to know a lot of attorneys, so I had a chance to speak with no less than 10 other attorneys, one of which is slotted to be the next U.S. Solicitor General in the Trump administration, and other former Solicitor Generals as well. And I asked them, I said, "Does, in fact," and I have copies of this for the city council as well. I asked them, "Does 188.010, does that prohibit a city council from passing an ordinance related to the one that we had?" And all of them said, "Absolutely not. There's no way, shape, or form that that language would say that." And so I looked a little further, and there's 188.125, which is a part of the same section, which specifically tells subdivisions that they cannot do certain things, and that is regulating things with regards to alternatives to abortion. And so I'm just kind of putting this to a contrast. In fact, 188.010 specifically calls out subdivisions as being a, quote, "sanctuary for life." It actually asks you to do the opposite. It asks you to protect life there. So I had to somehow figure out how to realize this conflict between your wonderful city attorney and these others. And so I called the attorney general's office and asked if they had an opinion. And in fact, they believed that you can, in fact, pass the ordinance that we are proposing. In fact, they wanted to send a representative for a long, beautiful city council meeting. So I would invite, with your permission, the attorney general's office, Dominic here, who would like to speak to the city council as well. And I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's from Jeff City, but he gets three minutes, too.
St. Louis, actually. So two minutes, then, right? Yes. Hi, I'm Dominic Barso. I'm from the attorney general's office. Thank you for the time. I'm Mr. Mayor, council members. So I'm just here to state the AG's position on whether state law would prohibit a city like Ralla from enacting an ordinance like the one proposed by Mr. Westbrook and his colleague. And the attorney general's position is that state law does not prohibit cities from regulating abortion in a way that is consistent with state and federal law. I think specifically.
Say that again.
So state law does not prohibit cities like Ralla from regulating abortion in a way that's consistent with other state laws and federal law. So specifically, we were asked about Section 188.010, which says that, I think, part of the statute says that it's the intent of the legislature to regulate abortion to the fullest extent of the law. The attorney general's position is that doesn't prohibit concurrent municipal regulation that's also consistent with the legislature's intent to regulate abortion. And specifically, like Brian mentioned, if you look at the, I think it's subsection two of .010, it says that it is the intent of the General Assembly of the State of Missouri to declare that the state and all of its political subdivisions are a sanctuary for life that protects pregnant women and their unborn children. So that language expressly contemplates municipalities could regulate and be also sanctuary cities for life. And then similar, as Brian mentioned, 188.125 also explicitly contemplates municipal regulation of abortion. So it's the attorney general's position that 188.010 is not meant to preempt the whole field of abortion regulation for municipalities. Thank you.
I have a question for you, but I think, do you want to make any?
Well, my next question is, so you're saying that this is the official opinion of Attorney General Andrew Bailey?
On this specific issue of whether the proposed law is prohibited by 188.010? Yes.
Field preemption does not apply here.
The Section 188.010 does not preempt this statute.
You understand field preemption?
I understand what field preemption is.
So you're saying field preemption does not apply?
In this, yeah. The field of abortion regulation is not preempted.
My question is, I've asked this a couple times, but it's not clear to me. And that is, what are we trying to accomplish? So either I don't understand it, or my Northeast background, which doesn't trust people too much, is telling me there's something else that's part of this. What is it, if you said that Ralla has, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, Ralla has the ability to write an ordinance, but it must be consistent with state and federal law? So what are we trying to do? If there are state and federal laws, then what is it that we're gonna do?
So I'm not here to speak on the attorney general's position on.
I don't care about the attorney general.
Policy.
I'm trying to ask, we're having this discussion, but its purpose eludes me.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I understand. I'm just here to speak in my capacity as Representative of the Attorney General. I'd encourage you to ask Brian or Mark more specific questions about what they want to do. Yes.
Somebody come up and tell me, what is it that we're trying to do?
Thank you.
Thank you, Dominic.
Very much. Dominic.
I don't want a lot of Leeger talk. Give that to somebody else. I'm just trying to understand, what is it that we're trying to do?
So Markley Dixon here drove up from Texas. We have seen 70 cities across America pass these ordinances, and then eight counties. What this particular ordinance would do is require compliance with federal statutes relating to abortion. Specifically, 18 U.S.C. 1461 and 1462, which prohibits the mailing and receiving of abortion-inducing drugs, and the partial-birth abortion ban. So the purpose of this is we are living in a day and age where, of course, Missouri right now is the same, essentially, as Arizona, and New Mexico, and other states, where there's a right to abortion that has been stated in the Constitution, with Amendment Three coming about. Now, what this does is, this is saying here in Ralla that these federal statutes are in play, and that Amendment Three must work within the confines of these federal statutes. The attorney general's office has been extremely clear. In fact, he's been leading the way for the past several years on these federal statutes. In fact, the attorney general's office wrote a letter that 19 other attorney generals joined on to. Another letter, I think it was up to 22 joined in on, including my attorney general, Ken Paxton in Texas. And those letters were to groups like Walgreens, Walmart, Kroger, Albertsons, CVS, because what they said they were going to do is start distributing the abortion-inducing drugs in their pharmacies. Well, so it's not just Planned Parenthood we have to worry about in post-Roe America, it's places like Walmart, and CVS, and Walgreens. Now, Walgreens and other entities have said that they are going to comply with all state laws and local regulations. And so when cities do this, it really is doing as much as we possibly can to push back, to align ourselves with the attorney general's office, and to put tools in our tool belts to really address, to prevent this from getting out of hand. Because what the Biden administration has done in a multitude of different categories is create mass chaos. What's happening right now on the border with the selling of some of the parts of our wall, it's ludicrous.
Yeah, same point here. So let me, and again, I'm not disagreeing, I'm trying to understand. Amendment Three passed, and it did this, this, and this. Are we saying that we don't agree with that?
Actually, what you're saying is that you're recognizing Amendment Three did pass, but you're saying that these federal statutes trump state laws and state constitutions, and that Amendment Three must work within the confines of these federal laws.
So we're questioning, I think, the legal status of Amendment Three?
Actually, no. Basically, you're just recognizing this reality that these federal statutes are in play, and that.
I understand, but I'm a dumb voter here, I guess. It was on the ballot, and it passed, a constitutional amendment. Are we questioning the legality of that amendment?
No, sir.
Are we questioning that those federal statutes are in play?
Y'all are, in this ordinance, you are recognizing.
Has anybody said they're not?
Well, the Biden administration put out an Office of Legal.
Has anybody in Ralla said that they're not in play?
Well, the Biden administration put out a legal opinion from their Office of Legal Council that takes a drastic view, departure from where y'all attorney general stands on this issue. And so what you're doing is you're lying with the AG's office instead of the.
No court say about attorney general opinions, Solicitor General opinions, that they're not any more valid than anybody, any other lawyer's opinion. Okay? Don't tell me that. My question to you, which you're dodging, has anybody in Ralla questioned the application of federal law?
Well.
They think yes or no question?
There have been people that have gotten up here and said that these federal statutes are not in play, that the Biden administration's position is what many have taken, but that is bizarre interpretation. Those are the words of y'all's attorney general. This is lining up with y'all's attorney general's opinion on these issues. And I'm not the one that's dodging here. You had a month to contact me and Brian, and you didn't. Jonathan Mitchell also said he was not contacted either.
My bad.
Well, it's your job, sir.
Fair enough. But, I mean, you got 10 attorneys that, in the meantime, you contacted that have a different opinion than mine. I can get 10 attorneys in a heartbeat to say the exact opposite. None of the attorneys, I'm guessing, that you've contacted practice municipal law.
Actually, yes.
And it's sort of dodgy whether, given the attorney general here, you know, he seemed to kind of hesitate on what field preemption was. I just don't see, tell me again, how the language that says their intent is to, to the fullest extent permitted by the Constitution of the United States, regulate abortion, how can that not be field preemption?
Well, sir, did you read the ordinance that we gave you since?
Yes.
Okay, so you have read the ordinance since last time?
Yes.
Because last time you were pining on an ordinance that you had not read.
Well, because you handed it to everyone. You handed everybody a 10-page ordinance moments before you decided to speak on it and tell everybody what it meant. Yeah, of course I hadn't read it. No one had read it, and you designed it to be that way.
That's not the case.
Oh, really? So you sent it out to all the council in advance?
Okay. Mayor, I'd like to point of order. This is a citizen comment section for three minutes per presenter. Can we dispense with the back and forth?
That's fine.
And just have the comments, please.
I guess I still don't know what people are expecting us to do. It sounds like to me, look, half of these things start in Jeff City because those son of a guns haven't done their job on a lot of issues, okay? Should have been resolved, didn't have to go to the root of a constitutional amendment, but it did what it did. It's not clear to me why Ralla needs to carry this banner, when the problem, whether it's the attorney general, the governor, whoever the hell else is up there, they need to sort this out. I don't think it's Ralla, Missouri's responsibility to lead this charge. That's my own opinion. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
I'm sorry that you had to wait so long tonight.
Hey, it's perfectly okay. And one other.
But you know everything you need to know about fluoride.
One other complaint, guys, and this is really serious as well, I mean, I think it's part of the reason why the AG's office is here, is that y'all's drink machine, it says Dr. Pepper, but that's an imitator in there.
It said Doc.
It needs to be Dr. Pepper.
Oh, is it the cheap version?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I thank all three of you gentlemen for sticking with us tonight. We broke a record.
We did.
It is midnight, by the way.
Anybody else would like to speak?
It's tomorrow now.
Okay, just to close that chapter. You're gonna do something, I presume. You're gonna read this, and you're gonna tell counsel.
No one on the council has introduced it.
Well, I would like to make a motion to bring this ordinance requiring compliance with federal abortion laws back on January 6, 2025, for discussion.
And I will second.
Motion and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Nay.
Nay.
The record showed two nays. The record showed two nays. Is there expectation of the conversation between them or is there any point for that at this? Do we need to direct that? They're big boys, let them figure it out.
We tried to let them figure it out and Nathan never.
Well, sometimes you say we have to be directed to like, because there's fees in paying him to go do so. I didn't know if there has to be that direction to occur or not. I think he's riled up enough, he might do it for nothing.
Nice.
Hey, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Do you have that digitally?
I'll get it.
Bet you could send to us.
I'll get it.
Thanks, sir.
Any other citizen communication? Mayor or city council comments? Whatever I had, I forgot. Steve?
I just want to say that we passed this thing to give legal status to the mission tonight. It does nothing to address any of the concerns that Meghan raised tonight or any of our business owners. What we really need is a community-wide effort to tackle homelessness. We cannot do, we are in a small box up here, we have no resources, we have no subject matter experts. We need a coalition from the community to get together to work on this issue.
Amen.
And so that is, that is what is happening here. There's nothing that we voted on tonight that is going to address any of the issues that were brought up. All this was, was a zoning code. So that is where we're at and the community has to come together. Someone has to lead that charge to get a group together.
Thank you, Steve.
Any other council comments?
I would actually like to, since we, you know, have talked about the fluoride discussion.
Back the microphones.
Okay. I just feel like I'm really loud today, so. Since we have talked about the fluoride discussion and we've had presenters on both sides now, I would like for council to look over this information for the next month and come back and discuss how we proceed from there. And I would like to make that into a motion. So a month from now, I would like council to come back to discuss what we're going to do pertaining to fluoride in the water systems.
Meghan, do you mean a month from now or the second meeting in January?
Second meeting in January.
Okay, so let me make sure I understand. Basically, you're saying you want the topic back on the agenda?
I want the topic to be discussed and action to follow through, so in the meantime.
I mean, city administration is not going to do anything. We're just going to put it back on the agenda. That's what you're asking?
Right, to put it back on the agenda. It will give people time to discuss it. And so one month from now, I think it was January, whatever the second, second meeting is in January.
Okay, it'll be back on the agenda. It's a request, if you want to vote on it, fine. If not, we'll just put it on the agenda.
I'll make a second just to officialize it.
It's actually January 21st. It's a Tuesday, just as a reminder to everyone. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I got a question, just one. Nathan Nicholas. So because David Dukes keeps bringing up these gambling machines, just real quick, so the city of Springfield is suing Torch, right, for them being gambling machines, correct?
So not suing Torch, the city of Springfield filed cases against the gas stations or whoever that was doing it as well as initiating criminal prosecutions against the employees working there.
So my question, so are they trying to, are they trying to figure out if they're gambling machines or not? That's my question.
Well, the city of Springfield's position is that they are definitely gambling.
Okay. And Torch is saying that they're not?
Torch is saying that they're not.
So my question is this, is if they're not gambling machines, do we have the authority to tax coin-operated machines?
You do.
So.
And I think you already have that taxed.
Could that be something that we tax if they're coin-operated machines?
If they're coin-operated machines, they should be paying sales tax.
Okay. So what can we do about that?
Well.
Because then it would put.
Mr. Duke is going to be mad at me. So.
Well, hold on, are we sure that they're not paying it?
I.
Or we don't know?
I have no idea.
Oh, they're, I guarantee they're not paying it.
Well, hold on, just. It would be DOR that has to enforce that.
Okay, do we know that they're enforcing it or we just don't know?
I don't.
Okay.
Can we find?
Is that an answer that we're entitled to get?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's where I'm going with it, because then at the same time, it would, it would probably force Torch to say either they're gambling machines or they're not.
Oh, they've said it. Torch has already been involved in numerous litigations. That's a good grammar, but they filed a motion in the Springfield cases and they filed one previously.
Okay, so we can look into that?
To, yeah. I mean, we're happy to have fun in the job.
Okay, yeah. I give you justice department revenue. Please, taxi. You can just send it back in an email.
So when it comes to that, I've heard a lot of different clever ideas that other cities have done from being on the Intergovernmental Policy Board through the MML. Their states, or not states, sorry, they're, it's the next morning right now, but there are towns that have decided instead of, you know, getting rid of them, that they would find a way to tax them. And so there's, and they've used zoning and all kinds of different things to, to try to.
So.
And I can't think of the towns off the top of my head right now because it's.
If you have specific ideas, send them to me, you know.
Okay.
I'm happy to look at whatever you've got.
Why, why wouldn't they be subject to sales tax?
They are subject to sales tax.
Okay, so if they're subject to sales tax and we rely on Jeff City to collect that tax, they're not doing their job?
We don't have that information.
Okay.
It may be easy not to report.
That's the root.
Yes. That they're not collecting.
Yes, cash. I didn't see.
So then why is the burden on municipalities? When we pay people in Jeff City and we send them their money because they collect taxes, why isn't the Department of Revenue running with this?
Different kinds of issues are enforced at different levels. So typically, gambling has been treated as a criminal issue that the prosecuting attorney, the county prosecutor forces. But the county prosecutors, not just ours, but across the state, have been unwilling to prosecute these cases because of the litigation costs. So the cities, though, are still feeling the pain and so the cities are like, well, okay, if we can't get our prosecutor to do it, is there some way that we?
Are you saying that gambling is not taxable? The casinos don't pay sales tax?
No, no, no. I'm saying is, his question was, if it's a coin-operated machine that's not gambling, if it is not gambling, then it would definitely be taxable. If it's gambling, then it's just illegal. So although you do, you do have to pay sales tax, I don't know how you do it with gambling. With drugs, there's actually a state agency that if you are selling drugs and wish to pay your sales tax, you can pay it into this agency. You're not surprised to know that very few, if anyone, has ever paid. But the reason they have that is so that you, they can go after you for sales tax evasion or tax evasion, but you can't say, well, there was no way I could pay.
Right. Al Capone didn't want that one.
Report, even father, children, you're responsible for.
That's how they keep everyone.
Register with them, too.
You can get a, you can get a back four.
So the issue of whether they're not, whether they're paying sales tax or not is a moot point because it hasn't been determined whether or not they're gambling.
There is one county that successfully prosecuted them and they got convicted for gambling and it was shut down in that county. I can't tell you what county that is. I might have been able to earlier today.
But the law is always based on precedent, so why wouldn't?
It never went up to the court of, they got a verdict at the circuit court level and having lost, they kind of were smart not to appeal it because then there's no residential value.
Got that, Josh?
I'm just listening to you guys talk. I already know what John's going to get, but.
John, I think you should go straight over to the radio.
I drew the short stick for tomorrow.
Ah, that's great.
Before we adjourn, I just want to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
There's a lot of spirited debate that goes on with these things and everybody has the best interest of the community in part, so let's not forget the Christmas.
I would like to say we're 11 minutes into my 30th anniversary.
Happy anniversary.
Motion's adjourned. Well, you should get home quick, Steve.
Meeting adjourned.
Meeting adjourned.
You know.